I'm here. I hear a little lull in the room, so I'm gonna go ahead and kick us off. We're gonna try to keep you on schedule and hopefully I'll be the first to keep this in front of the schedule. So we're gonna do a few things today. The bulk of the work is gonna be this afternoon where you're really digging into the strategic plan, in the comments and the suggestions that you all put into your worksheets. Thank you all for doing those, that's really valuable information for us. As you've seen in both the PowerPoint and in one of the spreadsheets, we've really synthesized all of that. But we wanna really start the day with some things that our facilitator, Nick Kittle, who is with us today, that I'll introduce in just a moment, wants to go over in terms of roles, both staff roles, council roles, as well as just some council development that like we all do, professional development, some team building. We'll have a break about 10:25, and then the folks that have items that are in, either in, not in progress, the in-progress items in the strategic plan are not being covered. The things that have been completed or things that are delayed are gonna be covered by the leadership team members. And then we will have lunch, and then really start digging into the council strategic plan. So I do wanna introduce our speaker today, Nick Kittle. Nick is the principal, founder of Sustainovation. We've worked with Nick quite a bit, this group, council has worked with him, is this the second year or the third?
Third.
Third, oh it is. And then he's also worked with the leadership team a couple of years ago, just really kind of trying to get us refocused. He speaks at conferences for city council members, for city government folks all over the country. He is the author of the book Sustainovation: Building Sustainable Innovation in Government: One Wildly Creative Idea at a Time. He's been in, was in, city government for about 15 years, both as a chief innovation officer for Adams County, as well as public works director for the city of Colorado Springs. So very lucky to have him, and I think I will turn it over to him, so.
Thanks, Tim.
Don't want this day to end early, so.
Yeah, but you know, as long as somebody's video recording it, we can get hilarious in the hearing, so that's always good. And thank you, Sean, for the great introduction. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate everybody being here, your time on a Saturday, and for those of you that I've worked with before, it's great to see you again. For those of you that I haven't, it's a pleasure to meet you. So really excited about what we've got today. We're gonna do a little bit of a review for some of you in terms of some of the stuff we discussed last year, just in terms of council roles and some governance items, because I think these are really great spaces for us to understand each other a little bit better. We're gonna get into a little bit of team building, so that's gonna be fun and a little bit weird, and I always like a little bit weird because that keeps us off balance and enjoying ourselves, hopefully as the game plan here. And like Sean said, we're gonna get into the meat of it this afternoon and really kind of hopefully get a little bit of a better focus on the big ideas and where we fall on those big ideas, and that's kind of where we're at. So I wanna start off with this, some of you may remember this from last year, but we had this discussion about counterbalancing forces and some of the things that we deal with in governments in general. And there's these two spaces that we end up seeing a lot of push and pull between each other, and it's just one of those things I wanna acknowledge and maybe just have a little conversation so that we can just kind of recognize this. But two of the things that we find balance and difficulty in are those things between efficiency and responsiveness. You could do both, you could be efficient and responsive, it's just really expensive to do that. But typically, we're making choices between those two as staff, and sometimes in this room, we're making these kinds of choices too. Which would we rather be? Would we rather be more efficient, or would we rather be more responsive? And efficiency and responsiveness are counterbalancing forces, because we gotta find the spectrum. Like I said, you could do both, it's just really expensive to do it. The other two are individual rights versus public good, that's part of our responsibility to weigh out as well. We have to make choices that sometimes aren't in maybe the best interest of individual rights, but they're for the public good. For example, when I was a public works director in Colorado Springs, I was one of those unfortunate individuals that had to use eminent domain. That is, that is a four-letter word to most everybody, and I totally understand why, but in the public good, we couldn't allow that roadway not to be built, it would be irresponsible for us not to do that. So we're constantly in this push and pull between these forces right here. And so we'll talk a little bit about that kind of balance and maybe where we fall in the spectrum of those, but I just wanted to introduce this because that's one of the struggles that staff works on all the time, is when it comes from you all, it becomes an issue of responsiveness. As soon as you say something because you're the council members, it has a high level of priority for staff. That's just the way that it works. And so the goal is to have a strategic plan where we can make those determinations about where we fit on this spectrum as often as we can. The other counterbalancing forces that we wanna kind of draw attention to are this, last year I introduced this, it was called, it's called the Eisenhower model. I still don't know why it's called the Eisenhower model, I really need to look that up. I'm sure Eisenhower had something to do with it, but I don't know why he got this model named after him, but here it is, right here, and these are the things that we're also trying to figure out, which is, is it important and is it urgent? And that's kind of how we should frame things out, is is this important or is this urgent? For example, a phone call on a weekend from a constituent related to a pothole. Well, if the pothole isn't swallowing the whole road, is it really something where staff needs to drop everything on a weekend, come in, fix the pothole in order to do the responsiveness element of this? Or is it something where it's like, okay, it's maybe not urgent, but it is important, so it's not urgent and it's important, therefore we gotta make a decision about, is this something where staff needs to come in right now and get this fixed, or is this something that we can give a little bit of time to? So we're trying to weigh out these kinds of things and understand where things fall. Anything that's important and urgent, we do it immediately. So anytime we've got something where we've got a public safety concern in the community or those kinds of things, we have an event crop up on the weekends, whatever that kind of thing may look like, we might decide that it's urgent and important, in which case we gotta get it done right now, and that's where we gotta be at. But I ask you to just kind of weigh in with yourselves, recognizing that anything that you say becomes urgent and important, just by the nature of your roles. So it's really tricky sometimes for staff to weigh that out, which is an important filter that Sean and Tim and some others try and put on, it is, okay, where does this fall in the relative ranking and priority of things? If it's urgent and not important, we try and delegate that task. So the idea is we're gonna go ahead and delegate that task, and if it's not urgent and not important, we try not to do it. I can't think of anything that falls into that category, usually, those are usually the hardest things, because usually staff is already trying not to do those things. But let's recognize that that pocket exists too. Is this urgent and is this important? Once we answer those questions, we kinda know where things fall in terms of allocating staff resources and being able to get done the most important priorities of your role. And that's the case. So I just wanna, I just wanna ask a question related to this real quick. In this space, where do you fall more? Do you fall more in the individual rights or the public good, or do you have any thoughts related to the balancing of these forces? Anything as the council members that it kind of pops up when you take a look at this? How do you think we do with this, right here, weighing individual rights versus public good as a team, how do we do it? The coffee is right outside.
I know, I know.
I think it depends a lot on the issue. I mean, our residents right now are facing a heavier tax and fee burden than they have in the past. And part of that is because for so long, we deferred asking for money and getting things done that needed to be done, and now we're facing a place where they have approached more of crisis level. And so we're addressing those, and we have over the past five years, but it's taken time for us to get to that place, and money as well. So individual rights versus public good right now, you know, we're accomplishing a lot of public good, but we're dipping into our residents' pockets to do it.
I appreciate that, that's a great, that's a great framework for how these two balance each other out. It's challenged too, I mean, that's the thing, deferred maintenance like that leads to these kinds of moments where we have to make tougher decisions. Other thoughts related to that, individual rights versus public good and kind of how we?
I would say, I mean, this probably captures the entire last year of this council and this city in many ways. One of the challenges that I think we hold in this position is when we think of public good, we're not thinking just of the current, you know, 35-ish people, thousands who live here, I'm thinking about it as 50 years of the people who live here as well, in terms of public good responsibility to that, that an individual is just inherently, maybe doesn't have to consider in the same way, or their role as a citizen in the community doesn't require that of them in the same way. And so when we're making decisions, maybe an individual says, "I don't like that decision", and we're thinking about the larger whole and also the future, I think it's a hard balance to weigh, and I think the question is, how do you acknowledge this person's desire and whether they're thinking it really matters and need to be responsive to it? And also, we're weighing a different level of responsibility.
I love that, I think that's great, and I think the point is, you're looking to the future, and that's part of the role of this group, you know, what is it that you wanna accomplish 20, 30 years from now? Time is the judge of what you do, you know, and that's, and that's the great part, which is to say you have the chance to go ahead and weigh this out, and you all may land in different places on the spectrum, but I know you all have a deep commitment to Inglewood and you're, and maybe we all approach it differently, but our goal is to create a beautiful community, not just today, but 20, 30 years into the future too. So I love that, great, great synthesis. Other thoughts related to individual rights versus public good on that one?
I would just say as a new council member, like, obviously we wanna have the public good at the forefront in our decision-making, and so like, learning when those moments might be correct, where an individual right may weigh a little more heavily over the public good, or does that ever occur? Just dicing through some of that, and also like learning council as a whole, and how each of the individual council members feel about particular issues, and you can see those individual mindsets popping forward, and so how do we continue to have the conversation to get to that public good piece? I think that's a big growth point for me as a council member.
Great, I appreciate that, that's a, this is tricky stuff, and I'll say this is every community in America deals with this. I travel the country, and everybody's dealing with some form of balancing in this space. It's a really tricky thing to do, it's also kind of the thing you don't talk about as much, and this is the stuff we gotta talk about in order to be effective of what we're trying to get accomplished here. We'll get the chance to weigh in on efficiency and responsiveness here in one of the exercises that we're gonna do, a little team building here coming up, so we'll get the chance to weigh in on this one. In this one, I just wanted you to be aware that this is the type of exercise that staff is going through every time something comes in, you know, so when we have you all weigh in on something, it automatically sort of falls into that urgent and important category, and I just want you to be aware of that, because you hold that kind of sway. So the question is, help folks understand, is this urgent to you, or is this important? And urgent means different things to different people, and so I ask you to be very cautious about that too, because if I say, "Get this done ASAP," what do I mean by that? Do I mean today? Do I mean within the hour? Do I mean within the week? You know, so urgent means something different to all of us, and it's really helpful to have that clarified, when you, you know, if you're like, hey, if you can get this to me as soon as possible, I don't know when that is, but if you say, "By the close of business today," it's like, okay, I know what you're after now. And maybe that's not as urgent as this other fire I'm dealing with, whereas if you're like, "I need this within the hour," totally different field, totally different field. So just wanted you to be aware that this is the kind of exercise that's happening behind the scenes every time we're trying to weigh out those priorities. These are some of the council governance guidelines that I like to lay out there in terms of how this works. One of the things I like to emphasize is really that the role of council versus staff, and try to help understand where we weigh in on this. And actually, you all have put together a great graphic that you might be familiar with, I'll show it to you here in a second, but I think it does a great job of explaining this. We talked about this last year, but you represent the ownership of the organization. So you all represent the people who own the organization, and in this case, that's the residents. So your job is to represent and be that representative of residents. So you're a downward extension of ownership, not an upward extension of management. And there's a difference in how those function, the idea being that you're setting those goals, you're setting that vision for where you want the staff to go, staff is coming back with the ways that they'll go about achieving those ends, and you are holding staff rigorously accountable for achieving those ends. So the idea is, we want you focused on the strategies and those goals, those focus and outcome areas, and then staff will come back with recommendations on how to get where it is you're looking to go, and then you can say, okay, we agree with that, we don't agree with that, or here's where we need additional input in order to be able to do this. But I just wanna clarify that role, because when we get into this slide, right here, I think this does an excellent job at this. This is sort of, maybe you've seen this before, it's labeled "The Plane Slide," which I like as a thing, but this is great, because I think it really hammers out a lot of what we're in. This is where we're at today, this we're not touching. We know our purpose, we know our vision, we've got that adopted, we like what we've got. This right here in strategic goals is where we're gonna spend our focus today, this is what we're after. The goal here today is not as much to get into things like wordsmithing, specific projects, those kinds of things, there'll be opportunities for that, because this is not the last time we'll be. The goal today is to be able to get large-scale decisions related to the strategic plan. So we're looking for some thumbs up, thumbs down type votes on whether things move in or move out, or get moved in the plan itself, but this is where our focus is. And then, as I said, this is some of the role of staff, right? So we get into a hybrid role right here, but these projects and initiatives and that day-to-day work, you'll get some updates about that as well. So the directors will run through some of that update as well, so you'll get a bit of sense of what happened in '23 at this level, but the goal is to keep the conversation for us this afternoon focused at this level, so that we can get the big decisions made, and then hopefully be able to synthesize that in February or March from that next opportunity to weigh in comes. So I wanna pause right there, that was a lot. It's eight o'clock in the morning on a Saturday.
It's nine.
It's nine, oh yeah, shoot. I'm so far, that's why I need the coffee, yeah. But I just wanna pause right there, any comments, significant objections, anything that gives you consternation, or any comments you'd like to make about these as we go forward? Feeling generally okay about it? One of the things I used to tell my teammates was, if I get to a point and you get what I'm saying and you just want me to move on, you just say, "Yep, yep." I give you permission to yep-yep me today if I'm just doing something and you're like, "Nick, get over it and move on," okay? So yep-yep me if you feel the need to move on, but we'll press, but I'm just gonna refocus the efforts at different points, back to this point right here, which is, our goal is to get the high-level stuff. Sean? In the absence of council making a comment on this, I do wanna say that when a council member in the worksheet said, "I wanna be working on this and it's something new," that's really in the vision category. If there is something new that this council decides today, I just don't wanna say we're only working in the second column, we also are working in the first column, you know, with, particularly with new council members who say, "I'd really like for us to consider moving, you know, starting this work in this area," so. Thanks, no, great edit, I appreciate that.
And I guess as being a new council member, the important and urgent, if a council member's coming to staff with something like that, is it need to be a consensus of all council to move forward on something, or is staff just, you know, working on it? If I come to Sean and say, "I need something," and it's something Nick does that need to come to council, or is staff working in the background, like, doing it? Does it become a whole web of staff working on seven different projects ultimately? I guess is a question that I have.
I'll let, Sean, do you wanna weigh in on that? Because I'm happy to go ahead and put my two cents in, but if you had a thought, because that question's a fair question. Yeah, I'm gonna give, I'll just give an example of something that you and I were. It was a suggestion that's really on the, it's kind of a hybrid between kind of council, it's your council agenda, you had a suggestion on the agenda of how to change the council agendas, but it's a staff, like, here's the way we present, you know, produce this agenda. And you said, you know, "I've just heard negative feedback about the recommendations being on the agenda." You and I were in total alignment on that. When I interviewed for the job, I said, why, I asked the council in that interview, "Why are you all, it's interesting that you have recommendations on the agenda, I've never heard that." So when you suggested that, it reminded me, I've never liked it anyway, and I just took it off. So that's something that, you know, I think if it's, if it's a suggestion that, you know, moves the needle, if it, you know, reduces a pain point, if it's something that's, you know, low impact, you know, to the organization or staff, then I just go ahead and implement and go set it, because I'm delegating that implementation, in this case Stephanie here actually included that. But, so yeah, I mean, it just, it kind of depends. If it's something that's like a change of direction, like, "I don't wanna have any recommendations in the staff report" or something else, then I would say, "You're gonna need to get your rest of council to confirm that."
So like an emergency process of notifying people, string whether something's the homeless process, that would be some where we'd get everybody involved.
Right, and that's urgent, because it's time-sensitive by its nature.
Right.
And so, yeah, that needed an immediate response.
If it's seven, they're too big. Okay, I gotcha.
And for me, probably the most important part about that discussion that you're having right there is, I work with some groups where, and this is bad practice, but not uncommon, where you'll go in and folks will, you'll have council members or commissioners directly going to staff and having staff do work. And so what happens is, you'll have seven council members pinging everybody in the room for different things, nobody knows where anything's at, and the city manager or assistants can't filter that versus other important priorities and tasks. And so that becomes that, that's really where the sticking point comes in, is it's like, okay, if we have seven different folks asking for seven different things, and now all of a sudden they're going outside of Sean to get answers or whatever, like, that's poor practice that we don't wanna encourage. But yeah, Sean can help provide that clarity when it comes up, it's like, okay, this is obviously an urgent issue, let's just get it taken care of, as opposed to, we need everybody to kind of weigh in on this. Yep.
Got you. Thank you.
Moving along, I talked about this one too last year with you, and I wanna reemphasize it. We use the word consensus a lot, and I wanna clarify that term versus the term consent. Consensus means agreement or accord on something. I don't believe there's pretty much anything in the world that we can get agreement on anymore in terms of this, so agreement means that we build overly long input processes to gain consensus, when in reality, that's a really difficult thing for us to achieve. Consensus is very difficult for us to do. We can't even say the world's round anymore and have everybody agree with that, you know, so this is one of those things. Usually what I'm after is a thing called consent, which means no significant objection. That's how we're gonna operate this afternoon, means no significant objection. If you have a significant objection, I wanna hear it. If you have no significant objection, I want you to go ahead and recognize that it may not be the direction you wanna go, but we call this informed consent. So the idea here is that we recognize that not everything's gonna go our way, we're not all gonna be in total agreement, but we have to make decisions and move forward. So I usually advocate for us to be in a place of consent versus consensus, and I just wanted to clarify those terms, because you'll hear me come back to that throughout the day and be like, "Do we have consent on this?" We might not all agree on it, but if there's no significant objection, we need to move forward, and if there is a significant objection, we need to make sure that we know it and we deal with it. So that's it. Are we okay with these terms, if you, if I'm using these terms today, are you fine with that? Yep, yep, good with it. Yeah, all right, all right. Dig it. So look at this, all this progress, we're making, we're crushing it. Right out of the gate, we're rolling so fast here, let's get into some team building here. I've got a weird one for you out of the gate. So this one's a fun exercise, this is head, shoulders, knees, and cup. Now, it doesn't require you to stand up, if you wanna stay seated, you could do this with somebody, if you wanna stand up, that's a fun way to do it too. That's right, you're rolling your eyes, and I think that's great. I love the eye-rolling, because that says that I'm doing my job right, all right? So here's what it is, this is, you're gonna pair up with somebody here, you're gonna partner up, and we're gonna do a game called Head, Shoulders, Knees, and Cup. And staff's joining on this one or whatever, I've got some cups here, so we're gonna go ahead and have everybody participate in this one. Yeah, that's right, that's right. So let's hand out some cups, partner up with somebody, or if there's not enough cups, get three of you going at one time, and here's how this is gonna work.
I guess so.
Here's how this is gonna work. I'm gonna say, head, shoulders, knees, and then cup. So I have your head, shoulders, knees, head, shoulders, knees, however I go about this, you just touch whatever part I'm saying, and then, when I say cup, you grab the cup. Now here's the deal, the first person to grab the cup goes on to the next round, and you're taking it until we're down to one winner in the room, the head, shoulders, knees, and cup champion. Now, if somebody beats you, the other catch is, you have to cheer for them, they just became your champion. So my thing is, if somebody beats you, next round, I wanna hear you cheering loudly for them, I wanna hear you making some noise for somebody else, okay? And that's how it works, and then we're gonna get our final second round here, and we're gonna declare a winner. So, has everybody partnered up? Everybody got a cup? We ready to roll? That's right, we can, we can roll, let's see here. Sean, you wanna come up here and be a participant?
I can. Tim, you have the question.
That's exactly.
Sean's gonna come up here and pair up with, you got it? Three lots.
I got it.
Head, shoulders, knees, and cup. That's the game.
Don't touch the cup early, you touched the cup earlier, out, okay? Here we go, head, head, shoulders, head, knees, head, shoulders, cup. All right, if you got a cup, you move on to the next round. All right, find somebody else.
No, I'm gonna cheer you out.
Yes, that's right, here we go. All right, partner up with somebody who won, let's make some noise for your champion. Yeah.
Chelsea, go, Chelsea.
Here we go, shoulders, shoulders, head, knees, shoulders, head, shoulders, cup. Yeah. All right, who's still up? Who's still up? Rachel, you're here. You're still up, you got one, who's still up? Two. We got four, we got four?
She's going through the gap.
Oh, no.
Do we have our judges on, guys? Everybody good? All right, here we go, make some noise for your champions, we're gonna hear it now. Shoulders, knees, shoulders, cup.
Chelsea, Chelsea, Chelsea. Yeah.
We got a winner, we got a winner, turn up for it. Hey, no fair, you have your. Turn up for it, you're the winner. Who's the winner? Chelsea, come on up there. Chelsea, and Vicki. See that? Oh, Jones. Yes, okay, come on up here, you're the winner. We're gonna do a cup off, okay, but we're gonna do it. Can we just move this real quick? We're gonna sit that cup right here, okay? This is gonna be our final cup off with three people.
What do we do?
We're gonna have all three of you around it, okay? Or like, we got a stack of cups. Let's make some noise for your champions here. All right, here we go. Shoulders, head, shoulders, head, shoulders, knees, shoulders, cup.
Chelsea, go, Chelsea.
Nice work, thank you, thank you.
It's for cheerleader.
There we go.
Yeah. Good job. Yay.
And now you know. If Littleton comes talking smack about head, shoulders, knees, and cups, you know the champion you're rooting for. But I just wanna say that nothing should not be rewarded, so for a job well done, you get the trophy.
Nice, that was my best.
And my pants are sore from cheering.
While it's a little bit of a silly exercise, I do like getting people moving, it always helps on something like this, but there's a serious lesson inside of that rather silly endeavor, which is to say that sometimes, things don't always go our way, but we gotta cheer on people regardless. And that's part of it too, which is, things don't always go the way we want it to, but we gotta cheer on folks and we have a champion, and we know now, don't mess with Chelsea, she's got the fastest reaction time in the world.
Your staff let me win.
Yeah, you think it was, it wasn't rigged, it wasn't rigged. Last year, I just, you won one year, didn't you?
I think I won last year, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Staff, were you throwing it? Well, get it out there. Next round, I'm gonna be the staff winner, is all I'm getting at.
Strong recognition.
I love it. This is the next exercise I wanna run through, and this is, I think, a really interesting one as well. I wanna tell you the intention of this before we get into it, which is to say, the goal of this is to help us communicate about things where we might not have the same opinion. That's what we're after with this. And so here's what we're doing, which is, there are four corners to the room here, 1, 2, 3, 4. That is strongly agree, that is agree, that is disagree, and this is strongly disagree. So I'm going to introduce a series of controversial statements, and I just wanna know where you land. Now, with that, you're gonna talk with the folks in your group, so you're gonna answer the question, and this is everybody in the room, you're gonna answer that question, go to the corner of the room that best reflects your viewpoint on that particular topic, and you're gonna discuss with each other why you're so right. That's right, we get to bolster each other up, why we're so right, and then we're gonna And then we're gonna exchange that viewpoint with each other. Your goal is to make such a compelling case that you get others to migrate over to your point of view. So we'll have the chance to convince others of our point of view. So, that's what we're after with this. I'd love it if everybody can participate in this one. Yeah, that's right, I'm going with controversy. I told you, we're keeping it weird. This is good.
Where are the Switzerland?
Switzerland, oh no, oh no. I'm watching you for the rest of the day here, alright? Here's how we're gonna start it off. Number one is pineapple on pizza is amazing. Pineapple on pizza is amazing. What do you think? Strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. Wherever you're at. Pineapple on pizza is amazing. Get up, migrate.
Very strongly disagree.
It's got no place, right? Strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree over here.
Very passionate about it. Very passionate about it. Oh, it's just.
No Switzerland, no Switzerland. There we go. You got two minutes, two minutes. Why are you so right? Talk to each other, why are you so right? Oh, alrighty then. So, you talk amongst yourselves, you agree with each other. You're totally right, right? Let's find out. So here's my strongly disagrees. Pineapple on pizza, ridiculous, right? Why is that the case? Convince some others to come to your point of view. Anybody wanna represent the team here?
Anyone wanna say anything? No, so, two main reasons behind it.
Yeah.
The sweetness just doesn't go with pizza. So we're just not a fan of the sweetness. It's the only type of topping that you can add that is sweet that goes on pizza, just completely disagree with it. Uh, it's just, once you heat up the pineapple, there's a squishiness to it that just doesn't. And so, to us, it's just like, they're.
We got a texture issue, we got a sweetness issue, we got big things. Anybody?
Pineapple should be cold.
Yes.
Good pineapple is cold, and if put on pizza, it's hot, so that's disgusting.
Right, so it's, it's just gross.
In the morning, the next day, it's cold.
Oh, we've gotta call to the question, how many of you have had pineapple on pizza in this group? Once. One, one time. For the whole room. Anybody feeling it? Anybody wanna migrate over? Okay, okay, maybe you win some folks later on this. How about my strongly agrees? Why is this amazing? Why is it the right thing to do?
I would say, you know, first and foremost, it's a great conversation. Let's say they banned pineapple.
Nothing is new with taste.
To your argument, though, how many of you like coffee?
I'm drinking it right now.
Did you like coffee the first time you tried it?
It's still possible.
So I saw a lot of, once, I saw a lot of.
But why? Why continue to go?
Why did you have coffee that second time? Also, we would want you to consider, what would happen to the pineapple industry?
Strongly.
It's the sweet and savory.
Okay, sweet and savory, right.
It's the other toppings. What were the other toppings? You've got the jalapeno, the pineapple, so you've got the, you know, sweet with the spicy.
There's no barbecue pizza without pineapple. That would cease to exist.
How about my disagrees over here? Why, why is, why are we sort of, we disagree, we're leading that direction, why are we in that camp?
I think our disagreement is caused by our indifference to the word amazing.
Ah, okay, okay, so, so a, a, a word has changed the way we feel about this particular topic. If I had said a different word, acceptable, would you have been fine with it? You would have?
I would be, I'd probably be in the strongly agreeing camp.
Okay, okay. You'd be over here, so if we change it, but really, it's this amazing word that's got us most strongly disagreeing. Yeah. Yeah, you're half of the king, so do what you want. How about my agree folks over here? Why do we agree with this statement? Okay, beef is amazing.
There are lots of different kinds, and they're all amazing, and pineapple and ham is one of those kinds that is amazing. But if you give me pineapple and ham next to meat lovers, I'm gonna choose the meat lovers every time. So, I agree with it, but it's not my top choice.
Put pineapple on the meat?
Okay, anybody feel swayed? Meat feel firmly agree.
I wanna ask the strongly agrees, are you guys choosing pineapple and ham over meat lovers?
Oh yes, every time. Double pineapple.
She said put pineapple over meat lovers.
Tell the member owns, shares, or cares. Alright, alright, we didn't get a lot of movement out of that one, but an interesting discussion, and we have strong opinions about it. So our next statement is this, the Broncos will be better next year.
I don't care, so I don't care. I, I need to stand in the middle.
You can have, that's fine, if you don't wanna answer this one, that's fine. That's fine, if you don't wanna do it. The Broncos will be better next year, how do you feel about that one? The Broncos will be better next year. You got two minutes, talk amongst yourselves.
I can't be the only one over here.
You're gonna have to convince me to go somewhere, I don't.
Alright, alright, Broncos. We got folks that don't care. I'm a Bears fan, I don't care what happens to the Broncos next year, I'm just saying. Oh, oh, oh.
So we don't care, I'm coming to this part.
There you go. Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
I, I know there's a way.
I would just like you to know. Nobody strongly agrees that the Broncos are gonna be better next year. Why don't we agree, though? For those of us that agree, why do we think that? Can't get worse?
Their season got better.
It got better?
It got better.
Okay. There was glimmers of hope. And being an optimist, right? Why not? That's right, we're signing for it yet, right? We don't know. How about my disagrees over here? What are we thinking? So this is my, like, optimistic hopeful people, and you're my pessimistic hopeful people.
I'm just an optimist, right? They do worse than I write, or they do better, and I can celebrate their wins.
Okay.
You have to expect the worst.
Okay.
And then you're pleasantly surprised if they do better.
I mean, is she swaying you? That's pretty compelling, aren't you, right there? There you go, we got my question. Yes, yes. I love it, a persuasive argument is amazing. How about my strongly disagrees over here? What are we talking about?
Tough quarterback division, there's eight division games, they're not gonna be better.
Okay, it's just the hardest truth. It's like, here's the. Okay. We don't have money, we don't have the.
Yeah, just piggyback off of what you said. Russell Wilson's cap hit is going to prevent us from improving the team. It's not gonna happen, I'm so sorry, you guys.
She didn't have to pay him.
Okay, this is gonna bring us up. I don't wanna do this one anymore, okay? That's all my nation. This is, this is what you wanna see.
No.
I love it. Our third question. Our third question. This is what I wanna see, though. I love this migration, thank you for being open-minded enough to recognize that the Broncos probably won't do. Just kidding, just kidding. Let's try this one, responsiveness is more important than efficiency.
So my question to you is, what are the Bears gonna do then?
That's gonna break my spirit, and I don't wanna cry over y'all, okay?
Are they better than the Broncos?
Yeah.
But so is everybody. No, just kidding, I'm just kidding. No, 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 I'm just kidding.
Does he make it to the playoffs?
No, no, they're terrible. No, they're just bad, too. They're just bad also, yeah.
Responsiveness is more important than efficiency. Responsiveness is more important than efficiency. Strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. Responsiveness is more important than efficiency. I told you, it's gonna get more controversial. Yes, I know. That's the part, I want you to weigh in on this. We don't always agree on this stuff, so let's try it out. Responsiveness is more important than efficiency.
What is this quarter again?
We strongly disagree, this is strongly agree. Strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly responsiveness. Join somebody to be open-minded about being swayed to some other place. Join somebody and give it a shot.
Responsiveness is more important, because if you're not efficient, you're gonna be responding.
Alright, you got two minutes to talk amongst yourselves. Why are you right? Responsiveness is more important than efficiency.
You're not picking up the right immediately, you're in a vicious circle over and over again. You're a dog, chase your tail.
I, I can't wait till we make this argument and see if we can sway some others. This'll be interesting, because what I find is that most people tend to agree with each other, with the different emotions. I would bet even on it, that the reason is just, you know, strongly disagree, strongly agree, all actually feel the same way about this. The phrase, and the way that it functions. It's, it's an interesting one, I've only ever once seen it, one person just be like, oh, responsiveness, like, all the night, you know, and everybody's like, hey, we gotta pay for it.
Okay, interesting discussion here, a lot of discomfort with this one, I appreciate that. I'm gonna start with my disagrees over here. Why do we disagree with the statement? Responsiveness is more important than efficiency. Why do we, why do we feel that way? My disagrees.
So it doesn't take into effect the recount exactly what we're talking about here, each circumstance, whatever the question is. I agree. Gotta be context sensitive.
If we are efficient with our planning and our execution, we'll have less to respond to, and so we should focus on systemic solutions, not lack.
Okay, so the argument here is that by doing the right things in terms of laying out the groundwork, we're creating an environment where efficiency occurs and then displaces the need for responsiveness, because we're doing the right activities to begin with. Is that, am I doing okay encapsulating that? Okay, how do we feel about that argument? You liking that argument? It's feeling okay, I like that.
My argument that you're in is, just need your response means you didn't look at all options. If you immediately, like, went to a solution and respond, you did not look at all options, you probably made the wrong decision.
Okay. Fair. What do we think over here?
You don't think you have to have the solution itself, but at least acknowledging that you received the request and you're going to be looking into it. Brad, you made a really good point that public, it's hard for the public to see a matter of efficiency, but they can see a matter of how to get back to them.
That's an interesting argument right there, right? Because this is, obviously, this is a definitional thing, right? You have feelings about this in terms of the spectrum, and we see the spectrum represented. But what I'd offer up is, what does responsiveness mean? That's what you're saying, which is to say responsiveness might just be acknowledging that something came in the door, and that's actually being responsive. So I think that's a really compelling argument, which is, if we define responsiveness as just getting back to somebody, we can be responsive and actually be efficient, those aren't necessarily counterbalancing in that case. What does responsiveness mean? If it means going out and performing XYZ task, maybe that's not the most effective. And Sean, who's making this argument for you, has abandoned you all? Just made that known. How about, I'm gonna come over here to my strongly disagrees. In this category, why do we, why do we strongly disagree with that? What do we think?
Because responsiveness is equally important with efficiency. It depends on defining the terms and what we're talking about, which is what everybody has said. Because you cannot, if you're efficient and you don't respond, that's problematic, too.
Absolutely.
And I feel that you can almost end up in a position where a dog's chasing its tail if you are not responsive and efficient at the same time, and the issue's just over and over and over again. And I think we've seen that, let's use the, um, seagull, you know? We were responsive, but it wasn't efficient, and it just kept happening over and over again. So I think that's, that's an example, Paul, where we need to be responsive and efficient at the same time, so.
So it's situational. So it's situational and then, as well as, these are equally important terms to you, so we can't say one is better than or more important than the other.
They're, they're important.
Okay. I think that's, that's a fair viewpoint coming over here to the strongly agrees. Let's go.
I went to the wrong corner, I didn't want to.
Migrate, you'll migrate, migrate where you'd like to.
Thank you, bro. I do belong here.
Okay, there you go.
I'll sit on my island.
Stand on your island. Place your flag. Yeah, what, what were you thinking?
So I think that, uh, the reason why I said this is because results are what matter. And when we, when we, when we accomplish results, it's not always the most efficient way. A lot of the work that we do isn't necessarily, will never be the most efficient way to do it, because it takes too much time to develop and execute the most efficient way. So we do it in the most responsive way, because that's what the, the, the public sees, and we try to make it efficient, we try to optimize efficiency, but it's never the most efficient. So responsiveness always supersedes efficiency. Over time, you build towards more efficient. So results are what matter.
Wow, yeah, we got movement. Yeah, alright, alright. I, I, uh, I think this is a really great discussion, and I just want you to see that maybe you don't disagree with each other on this. You actually agree with, you end up in different places, and so it's one of those moments where perspective's an interesting thing on this, because I think we both, all, everybody in here recognizes, both of those are important. The question is how we weigh those out, and how we term those, and how we look at that. And over here, we're saying, I can't have one be more important than the other. And over here, we're saying, you know what, one has to be more important than the other, because that's how we generate results. And then we've got a bunch of folks in the middle that are just not sure where they're migrating to, but they love the answers as well. And I think it's really important that we have these discussions. They're not comfortable, they're just important. They're just important. Let's get into the next one here for a second. AI is bad. Strongly agree, strongly disagree, agree and disagree. AI is bad. AI is bad.
We think AI is good. Strongly disagree that. Oh, that's a good. But AI itself. That's how I get mixed up. Or write like that. It's, it depends on who's pulling the strings. Y'all seem determined. We use it every day. That's a really good point. AI. So it depends on. Who you're using, what you're using for. Yeah, humans turn AI bad, AI doesn't turn AI bad. Until it becomes it.
Alright, let's, let's talk about it for a second. I wanna start with my disagrees. We got a large group over here in the disagreed category. AI is bad, why do we disagree with that?
I think there's value with AI, uh, in, you know, productivity and efficiencies, if you use it correctly. So it's, it's not always bad. It can be bad in, in a lot of ways, but, but I do feel that has positive, if you provide value, if I would use it correctly.
Brad, tell yours.
Well, I analogize it to, when horses and buggies were replaced by cars, people were convinced that cars were just gonna be this enormous force for bad. And we're, I think we're kinda at that point with AI right now, we're still kind of at the beginning, the dawn of it. And over the course of time, regulation is gonna come through, obviously, and it'll hopefully even out that it's not the threat that a lot of people perceive it to be.
Yeah, it's been out for fifteen months. Uh, GPT came out in November of twenty-two, and so fifteen months later, we still haven't caught up to what the technology could do, so obviously there's some bad things that are happening with AI, that it's gonna get flushed out as it, you know, you know, matures as a technology.
Okay.
You know, when, when kids are using it to write their papers and read their homework, that's a problem.
Yeah.
I think the other thing that is a problem, um, is, I have heard that they can listen I have heard that they can listen to your voice recording, the message on your phone and regenerate your voice um, to use in for evil purposes. And I think that.
I think you're in our corner.
Yeah.
It's a lot more.
So maybe we can let them make their case and see if they speak. There's no freebies here. You gotta.
Yeah, you'll be back.
So over here in the agree category, AI is bad. Why do we agree with that statement?
We said that, we don't necessarily know if the word is bad, but we think the word could be dangerous. And I think that with new technology, we have a very significant opportunity to optimize this. We only see how this can go well. We do not specifically consider how it could go poorly. We do not think our federal government has the ability to regulate it appropriately at this point. And I think that the federal government is so far behind the private sector on this that it's gonna get so far ahead of us that we're not gonna be able to catch up. And so until we actually have, I think, the ability to regulate it well, I think it's deeply.
You're right.
And the bad actors are gonna find a way and that train has left the station. So we're gonna be chasing, regulation piece are gonna be chasing. It's already left the station.
You need to be over here.
Get ready to all come over here.
Let's build our case over here, yes.
I would note that they had to actually change the word in order to get to a place where they agree with this. AI is dangerous. I agree with that statement.
That's not a statement.
That is not the statement. The statement is AI is bad. And I don't believe that that's true. AI is neutral. AI is neither, neither good nor bad. It can be used for evil purposes. It can be used for good purposes. And that's the, that's the clear headed way of thinking about it because it's here to stay. And, yeah, we need to know how we can, how we can fight the bad uses and encourage the good uses. So come on over.
All of your examples were describing bad human behavior, not bad AI behavior. So.
I would like to point out that email can be dangerous.
It's true.
But it's not bad.
Now that tells me it's like AI, people are gonna stop using their brain and you compound that over time and that is bad.
That's a human behavior. See, AI is neutral. Humans are bad.
This entire job is a trust.
If we don't have a good way to regulate human behavior around something that's so potentially dangerous, then I have to say words.
But this is like saying, this is like saying fire is bad because somebody's house burned down.
Oh, yeah, that's a goal. See, that, that's beautiful.
This is like saying fire is bad because somebody's house burned down. We have fire departments, we have furnaces, we use fire. It's a tool. That's all it is.
The simplicity.
When the tool is used badly, it becomes dangerous. And I believe that's what they're saying.
What happens when the tool becomes self-aware?
Then everybody's over here.
Fire code is to ensure that fire, that we don't, uh, have unnecessary risk due to fire. There is no code or regulation right now that protects regular citizens or the future of this country around this intelligence, around this technology. And I think that it could be good. There's a lot of efficiencies with it, but when you look at the pros and the cons, we, the cons are outweighing the pros at this point until it can be considered good and not bad.
But that doesn't make the product bad. Even if we didn't have fire code, you would still need to cook your food.
Right, but this is a values question. Isn't it bad, right?
I would, I would, I would argue with that on the basis that we already have laws against a lot of the bad things you can do with AI. Right? It's already illegal to, you know, defamation and slander is illegal. Take somebody's voice and, and modify it and, and make it look as though they're saying something. That's already illegal because you're defaming them through the. You already have laws against bad human behavior. And, and AI is just another tool for bad humans to use.
I wanna, I wanna hear from Melissa for a second. She's been called out. What's, what's your point on this?
I mean, I think that people have thought the same thing, that like new technology is bad for forever. Every time there's a big advancement in technology, people always think that it's bad. So I think that this is just the initial fear and then once we regulate it, once it calms down, we might deal with our whole thing.
I mean, it could go poorly, but like I said, like.
I, I love it. I love it. Do you have some of my British friends on this issue? This is fascinating.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do self-driving cars use AI? Okay, look at all the problems that are being, you know, done with them that they're recalling because in, what is it, San Francisco or San Diego, where they are stopping and stuff like that. That is a problem in itself and it's been bad for the.
Just working out the.
It is bad for the people.
That's right. So we're gonna pause right here on this. This is a great discussion. Again, this is the point. This is a mildly controversial topic. We gotta talk about this though. If you're not having conversations about AI, you need to. Where do you need to weigh in? I have, I'm just gonna put this out there. When the communities that I travel to, I know personally great examples of how AI is being used to the success of the community. And I know how it has daunted certain communities with, uh, fake, uh, basically fake submissions and botting and those kinds of things. So I've seen the good and the bad. It exists both ways. And it can be used for either purpose. I think it's an interesting discussion that you better have some discussions around. If you're not actively talking about it, you're leaving yourselves open to it. So I'm just putting that out there that it exists. Now we gotta deal with what exists. That's the world we live in is what's real, right? So we gotta do that. Last question for us here is this one. Improving resident quality of life is the most valuable service we can provide. Improving resident quality of life is the most valuable service we can provide.
I don't think that's strongly.
This is strongly agreed, that's strongly disagreed.
And that's right. And the thing is.
Improving resident quality of life is the most valuable service we can provide. Why do we disagree?
Yes.
Improving resident quality of life is the most valuable service.
Delivering good water and sewer services is service.
Alrighty then, let's talk about it for a second. Talk amongst yourselves. You agree with yourselves. Let's find out how we do it over here. I'm gonna start with my strongly disagrees, my, my minority, but my vocal minority here. What do we have in this case? Why, why do we disagree?
I'm probably leaving.
I just, I believe that, uh, it's most valuable. It's not the most valuable thing, but there's lots and lots of valuable things a city needs to be doing. We need to provide, be providing all the services we've agreed to provide for our cities, maintaining the roads, providing sewer and water services, maintaining our parks. It's everything. It's not the most, most important. It's something that's built into all of them.
But that, isn't that improving the quality of life?
Everything you've mentioned.
Yes, I'm having a hard time over here.
That is the umbrella to everything you said.
So, so the argument over here, talk to us about it. They're, they're saying, you just heard the argument. What, what's the argument over here? Strongly agree.
The resident quality of life is the umbrella and everything you said are the children under. Are storm drains, the water, the roads, the police. Are the children, the parks are the children under the umbrella.
Quality of life.
Quality of life.
But that's not a service. I mean, improving quality of life just isn't a service. That's not a thing.
I feel like every vote you take, that's the goal to improve the quality of life.
I don't disagree with that. I just disagree that that's a service. That's just something that's built into all of the other services the city provides.
So let's hear from our, our disagrees over here. Why do we disagree with that statement? Really, the problem arguments.
The problem right on is that people may have mutually expressed emotions about it. We always need to provide good one. We always need to sense a agreement when somebody picks up the phone and calls nine one one. These are services that are the very reason why the city exists. Whereas quality of life is a subjective.
Oh, you got it.
It involves how fast that person walks. It involves, you know, whether or not your, your water tastes good. Um, you know, those kinds of things, which are vastly more subjective.
So, so there's a lot of subjectivity to the concept of quality of life that maybe is difficult for us to be able to deliver on if that's our role at all.
Correct. And to be able to have disagreement over what quality of life is. Though we still have a fundamental mission that we need. Yep.
Okay. That's an interesting case right there, right? If I'm a, maybe I, I, I need low taxes. That's something that I value more than I value parks. I make that decision. Quality of life, two different things to two different people if you're arguing.
My ring, my dog off leash may interrupt someone else's ability to throw the ball. They're kidding.
Okay.
I'm going back.
You actually belong over here.
I think that same thing only more strongly than you. He's not creating his golf, guys. Let's go back over here to this corner right here. Why do we agree with this statement?
I, I would have loved to be in the good feeling area up over there.
Okay.
But I strongly believe that in order to have good quality of life, you have to have good coverage. Governments, policies, you have to, have to have good budgeting strategies. As we, we have to have. And we have businesses, businesses, this on our. It's. To a good result, then you're not gonna provide a good quality of service to.
Interesting point she's bringing up here, which is to say that governance ends up becoming a part of this conversation. And is governance quality of life not inherently itself, but at the same time, if you don't have those strong policies, you can't do the rest of this, right? So yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so now, so, so I've got my argument now.
Okay.
So it's a word, it's a word improving and I'd like to thank Steve for this because one person's improvement in quality of life could be another person's damage to their quality of life. So our job is to balance or optimize quality of life for a collective as opposed to improve. So if you're always improving, you're, you're, you're often damaging. So the, the statement that improving resident quality of life is the most valuable service we can provide is not true. It's balancing quality of life is the most optimal thing. The balancing leads to improvement. Not necessarily. Not necessarily because some people can say my quality of life has gone downhill, but this other quality of life is improved. And so it's, it's balancing, it's, it's, it's maximizing the collective improvement of, of quality of life, not always improving. You're helping people find that middle ground.
I would add. Yeah. And so you could provide all the services at the highest possible level. Then everybody might feel like their life is, has a high quality except for the level of taxes they're paying. And that actually brings down their quality of life in many other areas. So it's a balancing.
It's balanced.
So we have a comment over here.
Sure, yeah. Um, so to the point about, you know, you wanna have good governance, yes, but you, but there's a why. And what's the always driving factor about why we wanna have all this? It's to improve the quality of rights for the city, for the benefits of the whole. I understand that there's the argument, well, you know, you wanna maximize, but you're always so chimes.
Twenty twenty-three, uh, during this retreat, we also made some, some revisions as well, but they were relatively minor compared to twenty-two. Um, to kind of show you how this strategic plan is organized, it starts with outcome areas. So those are the seven, I guess I would say bottom lines. They're the big thematic areas. They're things like safety, community well-being. Then within those, we have about forty-three goals. So as we move to the right, we start to get more specific. Um, so an outcome area may be focused on community well-being. Well, that's a big bucket. So within that, we have goals around affordability. We have goals around parks and recreation. We have lifelong learning goals that, um, tie to the library and other things that we do. And then within those goals, um, we get even more specific. And not every goal has all three. Some do. Um, but we have key projects. These are meant to be one-time initiatives, um, that are priorities of council that staff is really meant to focus on during the year. One thing we've tried to get better at is when we started the strategic plan in twenty twenty, a lot of them weren't really defined as like one-year or even two-year projects. They were more, I guess I would say aspirational statements. We definitely still have some of those, but really the aspirational statements are really supposed to be here, right? This is really the vision area. Key projects are meant to be basically how you carry that out. Um, projects in development, as I mentioned, was a new category two years ago. Um, and these are projects that we, um, per council direction, don't prioritize. So there's things like we want you to explore, we want you to consider. Um, we actually have made some decent progress on some of those and we'll talk about that later. And finally, performance metrics. Um, we were very lucky to find our management analyst, um, in, in, in fact, Liz, who actually did a lot of work in the city of Loveland as a graduate student intern there with a system, OpenGov. And so we do have a dashboard right now that shows our performance metrics, but thanks to Liz and Fletcher Johnson in the city manager's office, we've made a lot of progress and you'll be seeing in the next few months, um, a much better tracking system for those. But the metrics are really meant to mo, to monitor how well we're doing things that we're currently doing. So key projects and projects in development are supposed to be new initiatives. Whereas performance metrics are meant to be, okay, we did this thing, we built it. Now let's see if it's working to achieve efficiency and effectiveness and achieve our goals. And so that's where performance metrics come in. Um, just to kind of like dissect and do a diagram quickly of a sections, this is our, um, economy, um, outcome area. So business retention is a goal. Um, this term is what defines the goal. Um, how we know where we're gonna succeed, that's our term for performance metrics, our projects in development. And then under commercial quarter or vibrancy, we see, uh, key projects. This is just meant to kind of show you how it's organized. Um, one thing we also want to quickly mention here is we started in twenty twenty kind of overlaying data from our, uh, citizen survey that we do every two years into our strategic plan. So really, um, the, these are data points that we pulled directly from our survey. They really track to outcomes. Outcomes are the hardest, um, types of performance metrics to measure because they often, they're often subjective and they often take quite a bit of time to collect data on. So in a lot of ways, the data we collect from our community members through the survey ties directly to the outcomes, right? So do we have a safe community? Do we have a community that's focused on, uh, well-being? Do we have a community, a, a program that's focused on neighborhoods? Um, and so right now, what we're doing is really just displaying them. Eventually, we wanna get better at connecting these um, to, to the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. But we did wanna give you kind of an update that, um, thanks to Chris Hargith and the city attorney's office and finance, um, we've solidified our, our contract with Polco that we've been using for the last couple of years. Um, they do a national community survey, so I think there's about three hundred and sixty-five or so cities that participate. So when you're looking at benchmarks all the way on the right, it's compared to, um, to their benchmark cities, to other cities that participate. Um, so we will be doing it again. We typically do it in the summer. We will be doing a quick check-in with council probably in May or June because we do get, uh, three customized questions that generally council chooses. So we will be asking to choose those sometime in May or June. And then we'll launch the survey in June or July. Um, and typically, as we usually do in September or October, we'll have a consultant come in and do a full presentation for you. But we haven't really talked a lot at these retreats or my updates about the connection between the survey to the plan. So we just wanted to highlight that here. Um, and so here's our overview. So we have a hundred and forty-two total key projects. This does not include our projects in development. Uh, thirty-three percent were completed this year, fifteen percent, sorry, yeah, thirty-three percent were delayed. And thirty-three percent were completed, fifty, uh, eleven percent were delayed and then fifty-six percent are projects in progress. One of the things, not today, but we'll be asking you to weigh in on when you see the, the, the full draft of the updated strategic plan at the end of February or March. Um, we will be, staff will be working to, to carry over some of these projects. And so it'll be up to you to say, okay, this is a project that I hope will be completed. It wasn't completed. Yes, I wanna keep in the plan or no, we should move on. So you'll be seeing those at a later date. Alright, so I'm gonna turn it over to our director of Parks and Recreation, Library and Golf, Christina Underhill. And we do have it baked in. So, um, directors will be presenting for about four or five minutes on each of these. And then we do have a little bit of time, about one minute for each section if there are any questions.
Including you, Peter? Four to five minutes?
I'm going for a minute and eighteen seconds and zero.
Alright, so under the community well-being section, we have thirty-four total projects. Twelve projects were completed. And we'll talk about those. And then two were delayed. And then we also have twenty projects in progress that we're not gonna, gonna cover. So a couple of projects that were delayed, obviously the Parks and Recreation Bond has moved to twenty twenty-four and it's an item we'll bring to you. So a couple of projects that were delayed, obviously, the Parks and Recreation Bond has moved to twenty twenty-four, and it's an item we'll bring to you here in February to discuss, make sure it's an option, um, to put on the ballot in November. Uh, and then, uh, developing a budget of funds currently dedicated for place-making initiatives and, uh, different projects that we can do. And so that's something that Chris Hargith, Sean Lewis, and myself will be working on as we move forward. As far as completed projects, um, develop affordable housing task has been done, assisted with the launch of the ready-to-work site with Bridge House. Um, affordability of city fees and programs is something that, uh, from my department's perspective, we're constantly looking at making sure at a competitive and affordable rate, um, to participate in, whether it's renting a pavilion or actually participating in a program or just open swim, whatever it may be. Identifying funds for ongoing maintenance of public art. So, uh, we do have the one percent out of our capital budget for arts. Um, that's purchasing new art, as well as twenty-five percent of that budget goes to maintaining existing art that we've already put into our system. Uh, holding at least one homeless connect event currently is it's held in the fall. Uh, this last year in twenty twenty-three, we had a hundred and thirty-plus participants come to that event to get resources. Um, over thirty-five different, uh, for-profit and nonprofits were available to provide resources to those individuals. And that's something we look to continue here after year. And then implementing new childcare programs. We hired a new childcare director as well as an assistant to help out, uh, with summer, summer programming for, uh, and then after-school time, as well as, um, any holiday breaks our our kids may have in our community. Um, this last year, we had over a hundred, a hundred and ten participants in the summer, uh, camp program, which was up significantly from twenty twenty-two. And so we're looking at, uh, current recovery from COVID, bringing more and more kids into our programs, um, to do something productive in their summer hours as well as during holidays. And then, uh, completing the renovation of Jason Baker Cushing Centennial Parks. And so that was over three million dollars worth of renovations that we implemented, thanks to you, uh, allowing us to use unassigned fund balance to renovate some of those parks. Um, this was a big one, implementing the free social pass for Malle Recreation Center patrons over fifty-five. Um, we did that and had a great return over, uh, it looks like three hundred and twenty new participants came to Malle because of that free social pass. Uh, so that was up significantly. A total of four hundred and sixty-one social passes were given, given out, um, during last year. Uh, junior passes and programs for youth and teens here at Broken T. Uh, we partnered with Inglewood High School, uh, and their golf club. They had a boys' club, as well as now this year they have a girls' club. And so Broken T did a fundraiser, uh, to celebrate golf, and the proceeds went to Inglewood High School to help them form their team, to get the equipment and all those things that they need. Um, many high schools actually use this course, uh, for their home course, which is really exciting. That is the future of this course, getting kids involved. And also First T of Colorado has been very involved in offering junior camps during the summertime to get the little ones involved in golf. Uh, developing a plan for additional programming for teens. Teens are always hard to program for. We have volunteer opportunities in our library. We have an amazing teen program that meets after-hours in our library. Um, it's one of the best ones in the front range and well-attended. When I say thirteen kids on average come, that's actually a high number for teens at the library. Um, as well as, uh, we've done some teen after-hours at the recreation center as well, and has had, uh, decent turnout with those. Uh, and then, uh, creating strategies to improve outreach to seniors across, uh, this city. Uh, we do a lot of marketing. Uh, postcards are the best way to get to reach our seniors. We do social media, but we do hear a lot of them are not on social media or following it. Um, and so we're continuing to work with, uh, Director Hargith and his team on how do we market, um, and get the community involved. The social pass was epic for the senior center and getting those seniors to actually come out of their homes and get into the center and actually be active. And then reviewing programs that were in place at the Malle Center. Uh, before COVID broke out, um, we did see a massive decline in participation at Malle, but we are seeing recovery. And many of the programs that we once offered have returned. Um, we're now trying to get the participants to come back. Many went to virtual programming and really enjoyed that and stayed on virtual. So we're trying to see to get those virtual participants back into the center. So, uh, project in development is food systems. Can, uh, consider development of pilot of the garden and the box program. So that's something we're continuing to work at, uh, with. Mel with sustainability is part of that, um, program and developments. Uh, we use the community garden, which is right across the street from Cushing Park, um, and those gardeners, to get feedback from them as well of what may work in our community and what may not. So, any questions?
The homeless connect?
Yes.
Are we, that's normally held at Cushing Park, isn't it?
Correct.
Are we planning on still hosting it there? Are we taking advantage of possibly the navigation center?
We may move it to the navigation center. The the nice part about Cushing is, um, when we did the renovations, we, uh, put some inlets there for the shower truck and laundry truck to be able to actually come and hook up. However, that truck hasn't made it after any of the events because they've been vandalized multiple times. Um, so the reason we had it at the park was accessibility. We know we have a lot of homeless individuals near that area, um, that would come and utilize it. So it's it's nothing's out there. We can move it around. And we've also talked about maybe offering this twice a year, so maybe we'll have one at each location.
I think we've been talking about garden in a box for a few years now. It's 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 really complicated. Why?
That's a good question. I'm, Mel, if you have any input on garden in a box with that program?
Yes, we currently offer, we started offering it last year, but for this food systems one, what I flagged is that garden in a box doesn't provide food. It provides low-water land, eating, so that might just have to be rethought. And the name of Garden in a Box, since we already have that program.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, like, does it, does it take years?
Sure, and that's why I brought up the community gardens. The community garden actually donates a lot of food to Move It Fifty Two Eighty, um, and Cafe One Eighty, um.
As the season goes on, and so there might be ways to do, um, like a seed bank, a seed library, and at our library, we could come check out, literally, take your own carrot seeds and plant them in your own apartment or house, wherever it may be.
But also, you'll see this afternoon that there's consensus to take food out of the plant, so.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on.
I have, sorry, one more question.
Yes.
Um, for, and this applies to everything, but how, there's so many projects, right, under your section? How are you prioritizing them? Are they all equally important? Or how are you guys approaching, are we knocking off all the easy ones? And so the bigger ones are still there?
No, that's a good question. And that's always a challenge. I mean, we have technically five divisions in my department with events included. And so each division prioritizes each of these projects a little differently. Obviously, park renovations are pretty high up, um, knowing that we have some need there. Facility renovations, keeping, um, places interesting and accessible, um, those sort of things. And so some of the the easy ones to knock off quickly will get done earlier in the year, and the ones that are longer-based, like possibly the bonds, uh, that's an all-year program, and then it'll continue on for years to come. So that's a great question, and that's something we look at.
Are you going to have that question for every department?
I think it's important.
Yeah, it is.
If we say all these things are really important, then nothing's important, right? Think about it, turn it with your time.
So does the navigation center and working with them fall under your path also?
No, and I should point out, um, and Tim can take that question, but I should point out, uh, we just randomly, not randomly, but we selected a director to present each section, but this is their section. Most of Christina's stuff is in community well-being, but she was also presenting stuff that's in communications, that's in city manager's office. So I don't want anybody to think that this director owns it. Like, Peter's got dozens of projects, but Peter's presenting.
They crisscross each other, okay?
Yeah, and that was a really important thing for us, is to make sure that these are interdisciplinary areas. I mean, there are some, like, the economy is mostly Brad's department, um, safety is mostly Sam's department. But community well-being and infrastructure and transportation are really good examples of warrants that include a variety of different departments. And and to answer your question, uh, Tom, I'm right. Um, most of the coordination right now, homeless services, does come from the city manager's office. We do have an interdisciplinary group that meets monthly that includes a variety of different departments on it. Uh, but most of the the regional aspect of it is coordinated by Sean.
Perfect, thank you.
Good morning, all. I'll cover the economic development, or I can keep economy section. And one of the things I'd like to say before I lead off with a quick summary of some of the projects is, one of the things that we've done is tried to incorporate the elements of the economic development strategic plan into the broader city's, uh, economic development plan. Where we stand with that effort right now is we're moving from our short-term, zero-to-two-year goals of the relationship building with some of our partners into our midterm goals in the economic development strategic plan about maintaining those those relationships and actually expanding on them. So a couple of highlights, um, from, uh, last year. Obviously, the new development code, the new land use code has a pretty significant economic impact. And I would argue that in terms of the work effort, uh, citywide, and most especially part of department, from a land use project's perspective and from our code perspective, that was probably the biggest project that our group took on in the last twenty years. So obviously, that was a pretty significant accomplishment accomplishment. And then the other thing is we've, uh, worked pretty closely with the, with the community or the communications, uh, division to incorporate additional changes to our economic development Inglewood VES website, including, uh, our new business, uh, retention, uh, business, uh, development guide and our community profile. Both been updated, uh, recently. A few projects to see, attorney's office is working on vacant buildings, ordinance to try to disincentivize long-term vacancy, uh, in the community. So we've been working on that. We've amended our grants to allow more eligible expenses for both our startup grant and our continuation grant. So a couple of examples of that would be, we're now allowing fire suppression as part of the grant process, and also, uh, energy efficiency improvements to physical space as part of this as well. Uh, we're working with this SBA year in, year out. What we want to do is not try to do the same programs every year. So last year, we did a lender forum. And so this year, what we want to try to do is work with the SBA and maybe do a business development forum, uh, for our small business community, uh, to have access to some of the, um, the SBA programs as well. And then finally, in terms of job, job training and workforce development programs in Inglewood, we really try to concentrate on bringing groups into Inglewood to make sure our employee base has access to those services. So for instance, last year, we did four, uh, job, uh, training programs or job, uh, fairs. Uh, we did two for all-ability job folks. We did one for seniors, and we did a very specialized one in mid-December for the folks who were displaced by the closure of the URA sportswear, uh, group. That was, uh, very successful. So I'll just end and say, again, what we're really trying to do is link the city-wide econo- or city-wide economy section of the strategic plan to the specific things that we're trying to do to implement our economic development strategic plan that council approved in twenty twenty-two. And that's it.
Brad, one question. How close are you working with the DDA on, uh, on the grants that we're providing as a city versus the grants that the DDA potentially wants to provide to any incoming businesses?
Yeah, our staff met with DDA group, uh, just this week to start to think about some of the the DDA-specific business improvement grants that they're starting to think about. What we want to actually try to do is make sure that we're complementing, comploring each other and not competing. And not duplicating efforts. So I think there's a tremendous opportunity to take advantage within the DDA area and just leverage that extra opportunity for investment that the DDA could provide, the city could provide, so that there's a spectrum of services that people could access in that area.
For something like job training and workforce development, when does this, say, you, we've held these job fairs, we've accomplished this goal, and then it transitions from a goal to something like, this is just part of our program now? We just continue to do this? How do you think about that transition?
That's really a good question, because a lot of the, the way I look through the strategic plan every month, and I do those monthly updates, is kind of where we are. We are on a continuing one now, especially in the economy section, that what we try to do every year is we tweak things. We have our baseline programs that I think are very successful, and we have our baseline establishment that we have with our partners. But what we want to try to do is say, what, where are things going that we can do the next new thing? And that's what we try to concentrate on from year to year, year over year, is what is the next new thing that we can do? And I think one of the things that we tried to do during our COVID experience with those twelve different grants that we did, is kind of bring that into what we're doing now, not doing now, but we've kind of reverted to normal. What are we doing to try to, try to stay fresh, try to reach the the businesses that can leverage the most, um, effort that we could give to them? So that's what we look at. I think our baseline is in place in terms of our fundamental programs. What are we doing to leverage them every year?
I think that's helpful, and I think, you know, as we go through the rest of the day, it'd be helpful for me, you know, we look at our budget on like projects versus program, you know? We have that delineation is, as things just become part of our program and the things that we offer to the city, I think they come out of the plan. And then this is for like new projects that we're working on. And I think clarity sometimes I get a little hazy on some of this stuff would be, would be helpful to consider.
Yeah, we'd welcome your discussion around. I think, remember, if I could just ask that quickly, and I know it hasn't been done perfectly, but I think the idea originally behind adding performance metrics is that the metric would basically track ongoing things. And that key projects and projects in development would really be the one-time new initiatives. I think we're trying to get better at that. I think we've, you know, definitely moved a lot, like, originally, I think we were over two hundred projects, and so we definitely kind of winded that down. And we added about seventy-six metrics. But that is kind of the general idea is that the key projects are are really meant to focus, as you indicated, on kind of one-time new initiatives, whereas metrics are really meant to monitor ongoing programs and how we're doing this.
Yeah, and and just another example of that, the neighborhood section, we've basically checked all the boxes. So now those needs should, well, in our opinion, should move to metrics that we're measuring. Are we doing the grants? Are we doing the, but it's not going to be necessarily a project listed in the plan, is that right?
Yeah, that's actually, neighborhood is a great example where last year, your retreat, we basically moved, I think there's only three projects in the whole neighborhood section, the rest are performance metrics that are measuring ongoing work.
So would that be the case here with job training and workforce development, that this would be going to be just measure, are we doing these events versus like in the key project?
What your opinion is, Brad, and I. Could you?
Does this become a, a program, the, uh, like the job fairs or the events for workforce development, that we're just monitoring, like, yeah, we're doing these events versus like a new initiative that we're trying to start? Like, I just think clarity around, is this a metric thing that we're measuring, or is it a key project that we're trying to get off the ground?
Right, I I think a lot of what is in the economy sections, as I said earlier, is we build capacity that we didn't have five years ago. So I think the monitoring aspect is far stronger than try to to develop new programs at this point, because I think we have a pretty good roster of programs that we do, that we're doing. And we have that economic plan in place to guide our efforts with it. And there's a lot of great goals in that that are good for the next eight or ten years.
And how much do we let businesses know that we have these programs out there, since it's based on retention for a lot of these businesses?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's one of our chief challenges as well, and we really work closely with Chris's team to make sure that through all types of, um, media efforts that we're trying to do that. But Darren Hollingsworth is great at going to community events as well, to try to talk to people one-on-one. And also, you know, kind of have an ambassador effort with some of the folks that we've helped before. We try to enlist them to talk to their, to their neighbor businesses, to make sure that they know that these resources, resources are available, because one or two people doing it, there's just so much available to do that. But if we have a network of people who know what we try to do, that leverages our efforts.
I mean, that word and house is the best advertisement that we have. Thank you.
I'm curious about how close we are on the business retention, um, project goal, of having that draft ordinance to look at. Um, just thinking in terms of conversations around development or redevelopment in the city and that being a tool in our toolbox to use, um, so that we don't have dead areas within the city. Um, are we getting close to having that as a tool for, or, uh, the ordinance for us to start having the conversation as council to, um, consider whether we want to approve that and and be actively implementing that so that we don't have that some?
It's the first one, the guidance, or, you know, we can.
Yes, so we've got that drafted, and the staff is working on the plan for how we would implement that before we bring it to council. Because we know you're going to have lots of questions about how will this work?
Yes.
So we have actually drafted this.
Okay. And and when that comes to council, if we can have some really good information around other cities that have used this as a tool and how that has or has not worked out for them?
Great.
And along that lines, I'm going to bring up the elephant in the room, is the homelessness issue and how it is impacting businesses in Inglewood. Before we start penalizing the people, what are we going to do to resolve the problem that surrounds businesses leaving? I mean, in the last year, three big businesses in Inglewood. And it impacts you. The DDA knows that this is the same problem. Um, and so I think that we also not only need to create ordinances that will penalize businesses, but we need to make Inglewood have a, an atmosphere where businesses want to come here.
Yeah, that's a great conversation for this afternoon. We might want to add a goal around that, so. We'll write that, work that down. Thank you for your time. All right. Hello, everyone. Sean Wiskey, the HR director. And I'm going to be talking about governance today. So, uh, in total, we have nineteen projects in the area of governance. Um, we completed four of those, um, completed four of those. 14 of those projects are currently in progress. We have one that is delayed, and that is the establishment of Innovation Grant Program, which is an incentivizing program for employees to come up with new ideas to make things more efficient in the city. And so that's something that we have been delayed on. So going into the completed projects, I believe this first bullet point made you some assistance that was incorrect. Yeah, I think it was on the economy one or something. But so the one that is on here designated city stakeholder representative South Broadway Corridor Study, that was completed in quarter four. Develop a formal classification and compensation plan. So that was a big project that took my department about a year and a half to complete. We finally did get it implemented last month in December. And so we are currently in the post-implementation phase in which we're doing some cleanup and working on any deficiencies that we've identified since implementation. But so far, so good. We've developed a process to identify policies that are not accurately defined and educate staff. We've done that by having policies essentially located on the SharePoint site, having a policy committee, and also creating a policy in policies so that we have a structured way in which we develop and implement policies. So that was all done by the end of quarter three. And then finally, in our finance department, ensure financial reporting and compliance with Government Accounting Standards Board, generally accepted accounting principles, and federal grant requirements. And so I would defer to Kevin if he had any additional questions on those, those issues. All right, so going into project and development, so just highlighting this one, employee engagement is the goal area. So the project is a wellness program. So through Kaiser Permanente, which is the city's medical provider, we were provided $5,000 annually to develop a wellness program for our city staff. So our benefits experience coordinator, or partner, I should say, is working on that with Kaiser. Last year, we utilized some of those funds during our annual open enrollment and benefits fair. And so we're looking to expand that as well through this year. We also had meditation sessions and yoga for staff on their lunch breaks that we brought people in to help bring down the temperature, ease that stress, try to improve the overall wellbeing of the workforce. So we got some pretty good feedback on that. We'd like to expand that program more moving into 2024. And again, these are funds that we got from Kaiser. So these are city funds that we're using. So it's that additional bonus. Any questions? That's what we have in the governance area.
So Sean, did you say that there's a third party that implements the wellness programs with the city?
So.
So there's Kaiser, but then is there in between between Kaiser and ourselves, the city?
No, there's no intermediary. So we have the Wellness Committee, which is made up of city staff. And so we work with Kaiser on the funding for it, but our Wellness Committee are the ones who really help to allocate these, those resources for some staff.
Do we track our net promoter score for the player?
It's not, we don't have anything like.
Yeah, what? Net promoter score or like recruitment engagement?
No, we don't have anything that sophisticated right now as far as employee engagement tools or anything like that. But that would definitely be something I would love to see at a future date, but.
Yeah, I feel like so many of the goal areas, especially around staff engagement and development and recruitment could be captured with a metric like that. And I think retention, as I'm looking, maybe is something that we should consider.
Absolutely. That's something I've been working with our GIS team on, on developing metrics that we're able to capture out of our, out of UKG right now. Part of the challenge is the way that UKG is currently structured. And we're working with our IT department on fixing those deficiencies in our HRIS. Once we can fix those deficiencies and we're able to effectively pull out metrics like that, if we have turnover, things like that, then we definitely would be in a much better place. But it's just getting that foundation implemented and built, frankly.
$5,000 is a really small amount of money.
It is.
So can you talk to me a little bit about, is the wellness team working with other funding sources or resources to kind of combine efforts to get more impact out of, you know, to add on to this $5,000 to really truly get to anything meaningful?
Yeah, so we additionally have allocated $20,000 in addition to that of city funds for that $5,000. This $5,000 is dedicated to wellness. That $20,000, we have a little bit more leeway on what we can spend that on. So some of it was spent on employee appreciation during our employee awards ceremony that we had last year, things like that. So it's not just $5,000, but this $5,000 is only for wellness, whereas the other $20,000 that we have is used for wellness and then other employee engagement type of activities. But this money is specifically earmarked for only that.
So the folks that you were talking about, did you bring them into city center for, you know, yoga or meditation for the employees that wanted to take, you know, participate?
So we actually did, we had a virtual option. So people who were at home could do it, people who were in their offices could do it, or their cubes could do it. So that was the way that we were trying to engage as many people as possible, was to have a virtual session and be able to do that. Trying to get everyone to come into a single room in city center would have, I think, diminished participation as opposed to increasing participation. I would love to get into a space where we can have someone come in on-site and do these types of things. It's just we're not quite there yet.
Sean, should I save my questions for IT or infrastructure, or do they go here? And just the reason why I ask is you made that comment about UKG and just some of the deficiencies you have in terms of being able to use existing systems for existing processes that you want to implement. I do have concerns about this being kind of like a regular occurrence in terms of just some deficiencies around our systems and what we're planning to do about it. Some of the concerns kind of lie with the fact that the utility system billing, like we haven't been live with it for over, you know, we were supposed to go live two years ago. So it, it didn't, yeah, we still aren't live, but we're getting close. But then the same thing happened with the portal that legal put in place. We were hoping to go live in an earlier timeframe, was delayed about a year. So I guess my concerns there are just what are we doing about some of the IT challenges that we're having today? And what that's kind of costing us in terms of productivity, efficiencies, and getting us to where we need to be? And so, you know, it's a bigger conversation, but it's just like, what are our next steps in terms of just identifying what systems do we have in place? What is it that it should do? And yeah, I follow what you speak to.
Yeah, one of the, one of the problems has been in that project management, we're spread so thin in a lot of cases that we, we don't have adequate staff to manage the project. So what we're working on this year is improving that project management process from the, the idea until to the implementation and beyond, so that we're able to be involved in that decision-making at the beginning as far as is this application right for the city? Is it satisfying the functional requirements that are needed, security requirements, all those things? A lot of times, we get brought into the, the idea after they've already selected a solution and it puts us behind figuring out, okay, how does that really solve these problems? And, you know, how does it line up in terms of security? So it's really about getting that on our place when it's an idea so that we can help guide them through the process of selecting the appropriate solution.
Right.
And then build that out.
Yeah, I completely agree with that because if IT is not driving the conversation, if each individual department is stating they need specific software, but you have a greater idea of what's currently in place and how those systems are supposed to talk to each other. Yeah, we, that whole thing, yeah, I completely agree with that's the process that we should be taking. So.
Yeah, the other part of that is, is if I'm in utilities as an example, I don't, I don't necessarily implement a software package right over here. So we, as the experts, need to help guide them through that process when it does come.
Yeah, okay. We may be talking about that more in the afternoon. So, cool. Thanks, Joe.
Anything else?
And there was air commands used, IG something.
There was like UKG. I don't know what system that is, but yeah, it's a system that we have in place, but I'm not sure what, what's UKG?
It's our HR system that we use to track personnel actions. And that's what we onboard employees in, that's what we onboard employees in. So that's our main HRIS.
Resource information management system, right?
Right, yeah.
And there are issues with it itself?
So we've gone through a couple of processes. So we did a, an optimization exercise with UKG, which is the system. It, it looks like what the issue is, is that one, we have some outdated timekeeping modules that our system is just not being updated and for our needs. And the other one was that when the system was implemented, it wasn't implemented correctly. And so we have broken processes. And I think Joe can speak more to that, but that's my layman's understanding of not being a non-IT person of what the issues are with that system.
And Joe's department led, led that process of trying to optimize that. So we're in the process of implementing that now.
Okay. And then I guess Joe, you'll be able to answer then, is there any risk of gate breaches and stuff like that because of the implementation?
No specific risks in terms of security, no. It's really, it's really about efficiency.
Okay, because I've received three letters this week of breaches of my personal information through different things. It's a concern now. It seems to be happening everywhere.
At your city email or your type of?
Oh, no, personal.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Sean.
So that's, wrong way, sorry. So for Public Works, we have five projects completed, approximately 10 delayed, and then 13 in progress. We'll go through each, but one theme you'll see on the delay, there are two major themes there. It's a staffing resource challenge as well as some, some funding. I do believe in 2024, we're going to be addressing that staffing challenge with the initiatives approved in the 2024 budget. So a couple of the delayed projects, so we got 285 with Broadway. I think most folks are aware of that one. That is primarily a budget deficiency. So we have a grant for that. However, the project is underfunded and we are continuing to look for additional grant opportunities as well as partnerships to, to close that gap. We also have the Oxford Pet Bridge. That was partially development-driven. The development was contributing to that. So it's a funding gap on that project. Working towards completing the neighborhood traffic calming. So that is still in progress. We did present a draft of that to the Transportation Committee last year, and we'll continue to refine that. And then there'll be a budget asked coming in the 2025 budget for that project. And then looking at performing regular reviews of traffic fatality in high collision intersections. We do collaborate with PD on that information and then implementing safety solutions, whether through engineering, education, or enforcement. And then developing infrastructure policies to reduce traffic fatalities and safety injuries or serious injuries. Again, back to the staffing, the position that was approved in the 2024 budget was the city traffic engineer. We are actively recruiting. We've already started conducting interviews. So we're hopeful to onboard somebody here in the next month or so for that position, which will help with a number of these delayed projects. Last, finalize and implement scooter pilot program. Again, back to the staffing resources and having that traffic engineer and looking at implementing that program. Next, the continuing to develop bike and pedestrian-friendly transportation routes and options. We do have the walk-in wheel, but looking to further that and broaden that scope throughout the city. This one here is a little bit repetitive to the last one, but utilizing that crash data and other transportation data to evaluate intersections, looking for those safe speeds and promoting those. These are all a little intertwined also with the neighborhood traffic calming program, although that would be in neighborhoods, not necessarily arterial or collector roadways. Creating a culture of transportation safety throughout the community with communications. So that's something we're going to be looking to tackle. And then Vision Zero is another big program that we're looking to implement. And you'll notice most of these are around transportation. So we're very excited to get the position and hopefully build, like I said, shortly. Completed projects, completing asset inventory of at least three assets. So we've implemented that and got it into our Cartograph System, which helps staff track what's going on in our community within the right of way. Required green buffers between streets and sidewalks. This is a standards update. Implementing the South Platteford New Master Plan around the sewer infrastructure, a big one for the group, but dissolving EEF is a big accomplishment that was done this year, or excuse me, 2023. And then transparency with public information about the process in which we do certain enhancements. So our website's been updated to provide more, more information to the public so they can find out about the processes and things that we do when we're going in to evaluate stop signs and things of that nature. And then project in development, we have a number, but multimodal, working with the DDA on the Inglewood Trolley. That did come before council just recently and was approved. We're continuing to collaborate with the DDA on a number of projects that touch multimodal, whether it's the complete streets projects, making sure that the South Broadway ties into the vision for the DDA district area, the Hawk Signal, multimodal path, and I believe there's a walk-in wheel projects that are dedicated inside that project. And I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Was there a project related to walkability specifically? It seemed like we had one at one point in the plan for increasing the walk score throughout the city. I thought that would have been under multimodal. Did we, is that a project existing?
So we do have a, a project to enhance school safety and walkability. We applied for a couple of grants. Unfortunately, we're unsuccessful. So we are looking to resurrect that. But overall, walkability is a, is a goal for Public Works to increase that. And that's also done through our missing sidewalk connectivity projects and things like that that are underway.
I would like to potentially see that elevated in terms of priority.
Sure.
Could we go back to the first slide?
Yes.
Just a question on where we are with the delays. So I know where we're at with the Broadway interchange. That's the funding, CDOT or Dr. Cog or CDOT, one of the two is not going to provide enough funding in order to get closer to that gap. So we're still thinking that that's probably not going to happen at any point.
Yeah, we're continuing to evaluate that. We have looked at some additional grant opportunities. Unfortunately, our, that project did not fit into those buckets, so we weren't able to apply. We are continuing to turn over other rocks. We've met with CDOT. We've talked to the DDA about opportunities. CDOT has asked for additional conversation here by the end of Q1, end of Q2. They have matching dollars, so we're going to continue to pursue that.
The Pet Bridge? Was that, that was contentious, kind of like on the Sam's Automotive as well, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what's delaying it, just that kicking off?
Correct. And Sam's Automotive is contributing a decent amount of funding to that project.
What we were expecting in order to start the project.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we go to the next one? Second bullet, what do we mean by, mean by promote? Promote safe speeds?
So that's looking at appropriate speeds. So it's making sure that our speed limits are, are actually what we're seeing on the ground. So it's utilizing that crash data to determine are the, the things that we're seeing, the accidents, are they speed-driven or are there outside influences? And then there's also the perception of speeding. So it's utilizing all that data to determine if the actual crashes are speed-driven and then promoting safe speeds in the areas where appropriate. Think about school zones, arterial roadways. Do we have engineering opportunities? And what is the data telling us? And how do we address that?
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Is that the role of the city traffic engineer that you're onboarding?
Yes, that will be one of their strong first goals is to evaluate and move through these strategic projects that are out there.
Thanks. Dr. Do you have a question to bounce off, or pretend? The walkability of the sidewalks, is there any kind of requirement that they have to be in a condition where you have to be to walk on that? I know there's some areas in District One where they're almost nonexistent at this point. The way there was like Yale and Lincoln area, that there was that where I myself had walked the street because of the sidewalks and so on say.
Yeah, so this city, we have a concrete utility and we do buy zone. And of course, we can go outside of that. But the plan is that every year, we evaluate a certain zone. We look for trip hazards. We look for sidewalk conditions that need to be. We look for trip hazards, we look for sidewalk conditions that need to be repaired. So I think there's a couple of components there. We do, of course, take in requests if someone's got a heating sidewalk or a big crack, we get it into alert, and if staff hasn't already spotted it, we can jump on and address right-of-way. But to your point about overall walkability, one thing that we're working on right now is ADA transition plan, and there's multiple components there. So there's the facility side, there's the public right-of-way side, and so one of the things that we'll be looking at inside that plan is making sure that our sidewalks meet the minimum ADA width, and where they don't, what is the plan to get there? And we have to be sensitive and make sure we work through that, meeting the federal requirements, and we also have to be cognizant and making sure we're communicating, there's impacts on private property, there's discussions with homeowners and business owners about what exactly is right-of-way. I think one thing that is pretty prominent is a lot of folks don't have a concept of right-of-way lines versus yards, front yards and things like that. So all those will be taken into consideration through that process. Anybody else? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Tim scored.
Hi, everyone, Chris Hargit, Communications Director. I've just got the one slide, so I think we can get through this pretty quickly. Oh, I'm waiting for Tim to.
I can stop the slide? It's amazing.
Okay, so we've got five total projects. The first one is implement a neighborhood signage program. That's been completed, it's been implemented. In 2024, we did Forest Hill Neighborhood. And, oh, sorry, in 2023, we did Forest Hill. 2024, we'll be doing Old Town, Handan Hills, Cushing Park, and the Bellevue Park Neighborhood. Project Two, create a strategic plan for the Neighborhood Resources Program. That is nearly done, I'm saying it will be done in quarter one of this year, but it is almost complete. So I think within the next month, we'll have that completed. And Project Three, explore grant and other funding opportunities that focus on neighborhood beautification. That's in progress. We're looking at one grant in particular, it's the Keep America Beautiful Neighborhood Grant. The challenge for us is we only have one staff member in Neighborhood Resources, so the ability, it's going to depend on how comprehensive that application process is. Project Four was hold a recognition event for the reopening of Baker Park, that was done by Parks and Rec. They hosted a barbecue in 2023. And Project Five was to create a program to recognize and celebrate areas of the city, and we did that in a variety of ways. And primarily, that was the campaign Uniquely Inglewood. We also had the Made in Inglewood campaign, and of course, we've had the Eat, Enjoy, Explore has been one of our ongoing campaigns as well. So those are our five projects, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
For the neighborhood signage, where do you decide to put it? It's, I mean, I'd like it on my street, someone else might like it on theirs, so how is it decided?
So there's a variety of ways that we do that. So first, we have to work with Public Works to determine if an area, you know, a corner is appropriate for a sign. And then we work in neighborhood to actually get neighborhood signage, you have to have a group leader. So then we work with the group leader who works with their neighbors, and together they decide, you know, the most appropriate place for the sign, and then we'll get with Public Works.
Largely determined by the neighborhood themselves.
Exactly.
They apply for the grant, they have to identify this leader, but they have to be an organized neighborhood before they qualify.
You have to be a registered neighborhood, and you have to have a neighborhood group leader.
Just real quick on the Public Works side, so we're looking at permitting, and then we're also looking at safety, making sure it's not an obstruction for sight distance and then intersection and things like that.
And we also try to, we look at traffic counts, too. We want them to be in kind of high disability areas. That would be another factor.
So if we don't have any organization in a particular neighborhood, then they're just not in there, so.
Better start testing. We're really trying to get the neighborhood to connect. So we do a call for, you know, neighborhood group leaders regularly, we try to promote that. People are stepping up all over the city, but we don't have organized groups in every neighborhood yet.
Yeah, I think we have, yeah, we have, yeah, we have a lot of, I think we have 20 neighborhood group leaders, so I mean, about half. And I can't, I don't recall the exact number of registered neighborhood, but that's really the carrot, because we want to get those neighborhoods registered and we'd like to have them affiliated with a group leader.
We might have names in the other 20, right? Like if we only have half?
You all might?
Yeah.
Yeah, Council, yeah.
Like, you know which ones are kind of deficient in terms of identifying leaders?
We just had the conversation with Council member, right? In our one-on-one meeting, you're going to connect us with a group leader in your neighborhood.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you have main. Please send those our direction, yeah, we'd love to have those.
I have a question. In this strategic plan, you know, it says under like neighborhood connections, how we know we're succeeding, and it's the number of group leaders, number of group programs, number of grants, where is all of that data? And what's our benchmark? Because our benchmark, we want 100% of our neighborhoods to have a group leader and a group program, and then where are we tracking against it?
So we actually have two things we can share with you. We have our 2023 Neighborhood Resources Program Report, and we can get that out in a future weekly report. And we also did.
Just got finished, by the way.
Yeah, just got finished, yeah. And we also just got the results of our first annual Neighborhood Resources Program survey, so we will be sharing that with you all as well.
I think my question is specifically around the print, it's a great resource now that we're reviewing them, is, do we have, are we just tracking the metrics of what we have or we have goals of what we're trying to get to in those metrics that we're tracking against, like the benchmark?
Right, that's what's going to be in that neighborhood strategic communicate, or that neighborhood strategic plan that I spoke of earlier.
Okay. So we're not, we haven't even set the benchmark goal, like what we want it to be in, then the plan is how we get there?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Disagree.
Excuse me?
Mr. Disagree? You're disagreeing with everything, officer. Just disagreeing with everything.
I have an opinion. Real quick, Sam Watson, Police Chief, you got control here.
Other way.
Which am I going? Oh, there we go. Okay. Get in the back area to go forward. Nine completed projects. The first one is the Emergency Operations Center. In fact, we've had quite a bit of robust training in that, city staff have attended ICS training at different levels, depending on where they, where they sit in the organization to better equip us for an emergency and train our staff. We've also have our working agreement with the Rappel County Office of Emergency Management, so we continue to work with them on some programming on the emergency management and responding to emergencies. This next bullet I'm going to come back to, so I'll go to the third one, which is the Citizens Police Academy. We have an adult academy as well as a teen academy. We've implemented both of those, we intend to, I think we intend to do that next year as well. We also participate in Elevate Inglewood, Youth Advisory Board, we just did one of those, so kind of, kind of similar programs is that. The strategies for National Night Out, so we submitted, as you remember, as you remember, a thoughts for an adjustment, we decided to keep it as it was. Unfortunately, last year, we had the big rain event. This year, if we're moving forward, we'll have a backup plan for implement weather on that. The collecting data and make recommendations for policing, legitimizing the role of policing. So that came right out of the Police Reform Task Force, so we're continuing to track those recommendations and move those forward and monitor those on a regular basis, make sure that we're getting our marks on that. Strategies and focus on officer safety and well-being, we've done a lot of work in that area as far as scheduling, staffing, the impact that has on morale and burnout for the police officers. We've enhanced our peer support program within the Police Department, also the counseling services that we have available. We talked about yoga, another department talked about yoga earlier, we have a yoga for first responders that's at the PD, so that's a really good program. I'd like to highlight our reaccreditation through the Colorado Association Chiefs of Police, that's a significant accomplishment. It's a top-to-bottom look at the organization of all aspects, and we became reaccredited through that. Strategies for communications, we've enhanced our, but we have that position now, many of you know Crystal Esmond, and she was closely with Chris's team, with the city team, as well as our social media presence, and our relationship building with the media is important, and we'll continue that. And then the crime prevention through environmental design, I think we're going to talk about that in a minute with developing programs, but we'll, we have that as a city program, we also have that as a community program, and I believe we're also going to, we're talking about that as a, as a growth program, too, when new businesses and developing comes into the city. We'll talk about that. The one I wanted to highlight, which is bullet number two, which is the strategies to reduce crime prevention, so we have a, so we've done a lot of work in that area, and we have different programs that are data-driven, we have some that are resource-driven, we have some that are technology-driven, and we do a lot of work in this area, it's a very significant goal. I know it's significant for you all, I know during the election cycle and reelection cycle, you know, safety is on the forefront. And we do, at the end of every year, submit a community safety report, which we're going to put out at the end, probably within the next couple of weeks. It has lots of data, strategies and priorities and comparisons with other cities, and we'll put that out, that's a, it's a community report, it'll be on our website. And there's some really good, there'll be some really good data in there, crimes down in a couple of significant areas that we'll highlight, both property crime, persons crimes, vehicle thefts, arrest, or a lot of key areas, so we'll highlight those as well. So the, I do want to say, though, when we talk about safety, it's not just the police, I'm the one up here talking, but we, we work with the city attorney's office on a lot of programs with legislation and with the prosecutor's office, we work with the city manager's office on policy and emergency management, courts with restorative justice, Public Works with traffic safety, so it's a, it's a combined goal, you know, we just can't do that in a vacuum with the Police Department. So some in development are up here. The case manager position for All Health, we got that, and we're going to work on implementing that successfully as we move that forward. The SEPTED approach, I could talk about that, making that more of a community-driven program as well as an internal program.
Can I define that for them once again?
Oh, SEPTED, sorry, acronyms, yeah. Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, so it's looking at, looking at the structure of a location, so unique characteristics of a location, and how we can maybe structure it to be less desirable to crime. Basic, cutting back your bushes and better YD, but it's a lot more than that, it's a, it's a more robust program, but we're partnering with Parks and Public Works on that for the, for internal, so. Any questions?
So, go ahead. We listed SEPTED as a complete project, but I'm not clear on what we've actually done there.
Oh, yeah, so we completed an audit, we had a contract service that came in and looked at all city facilities within the City of Inglewood facilities, and the unique characteristics of those, and made a series of recommendations. Some of them were easy, we implemented the easiest ones first, some of them were more difficult, some of them create, are need funding for, and we're moving those along. That's not just a police program, we're working really close with Parks and Public Works on it, and so we're continuing that. Christina, you know, I think we're maybe 60, 70% through the recommendation checklist, so that's not about ready?
I have it, it was identified, yes.
Yeah, and we can share that with you if you might, I'm sure you already.
That would be helpful, especially as we go into the next budget cycle, looking at capital priorities, you know, the overall sense of safety, I know SEPTED does have a role to play there. It sounds like what we actually completed was an audit, as opposed to like.
No, it was implementation, too, as they said, 60, 70% has already been completed. A lot of what you've seen in the Civic Center is a result of that audit, where things we hadn't even thought about, like putting fences on all those stairwells so people couldn't hide and then jump out. The library, a lot of the improvements, that entrance at the library, moving that entrance to one, that was the SEPTED audit, and it's been a slew of projects done because of that audit.
Enhanced personnel, private security was in there, and it wasn't just for the Civic Center, there's other facilities.
Yeah, that audit identified that we had three security firms working at the Civic Center, I mean, we made a lot.
Yes, yeah. Oh, do include the Parks, too, the report also, probably Parks as well as the Civic Center.
So the case manager position, did we hire somebody full-time to work within the Police Department, or is it someone full-time from All Health, because we mentioned All Health?
Yes. Yeah, yes, well, so it's a new position, it's in the Police Department, that person was an All Health employee before, they are now a City of Inglewood employee working out of the Police Department. So the, this person's background came from All Health. As a co-responder, case manager, had some case manager responsibilities, and now this person is an Inglewood employee doing the same service, if you will, plus a lot more. And then we were able to reduce the All Health contract that previously held the, that case manager position by an amount that comes close to offsetting the position within the city.
And do you know the hours that that person will be working, or maybe more the hours that that All Health contract would have covered, or?
Well, yeah, so it just started January 1st, so it's in flux, but generally, it's a case manager position, it's a, you'll see her most, you know, Monday through Friday, although with the ability to.
My concern is eight to five would probably be an issue where, you know, a swing shift type of hours would probably be touching the people that she worked.
Yeah, we have to make sure we look at the difference between the case manager and the boarders, homeowners, which are out there on the street providing service, although they work closely together, there is a distinct separation of responsibilities.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a quick question, so on the SEPTED program, if I'm saying that correctly, can you go back to the slide on the Unified Development Code piece of it? Is there an intention to, to maybe not make it part, formally part of the code, but as we're approving projects, as the City Council, to like have that checklist implemented so that we know that we're taking into consideration the design and the safety of the design?
Yeah, so at the retreat last year, I believe it was Mayor Sierra that brought up, could we look at, which is why it's a private development, applying subject concepts to private companies and other spaces? And so our exploration of this is basically that we could consider a few different things. There's a group that meets monthly basis that kind of handles some of this work with businesses, and so we thought maybe it's just a prolongation of the checklist, that is kind of, as opposed to requiring, but kind of encouraging businesses and kind of coaching them through how to do it, is kind of where we landed as opposed to requiring it.
These are different, do it on the front end of a project than it is to circle back to them later and re-engineer, you know, a structure or landscape or something like that.
Yeah, I really like that idea, thank you for suggesting it. It would be helpful to me, you know, as we're discussing projects within the city, to know that the checklist has been implemented and that we look at those considerations and that, you know, some of the strengths or weaknesses around that are highlighted to us specifically and called out. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do have one left, we're running a little bit behind, so try to do this one in about 10 minutes and hopefully we'll catch up.
The mayor of the City Council members. I'll be covering the sustainability section with you all today, starting with the sustainability overview. So there are 34, not 36, I'll get into that in just a second. Total projects, key projects in here, 12 were completed, zero are actually delayed. So Peter let us know that this big Dry Creek diversion project was canceled last year, and then this investigative education outreach project is actually a project in development, not key project. It is delayed just due to capacity, and we have every intention of tackling that this year, and we have 22 projects in progress. So we accomplished a lot in 2023, some to highlight are. Some to highlight are we completed our community-wide municipal greenhouse gas last year. We held our annual household hazardous waste and electronic equipment recycling event. And one major accomplishment that I really wanted to highlight was the launching of the partnership with Nonprofit Resource Central to provide the turf replacement program for Englewood residents. This is a program that provides financial assistance to residents that want to remove water thirsty turf and put in low water native landscaping. And this was a project that was a direct request from Englewood residents. I'm sure some of you remember during public comment for city council, them coming to advocate for this program. So we were able to receive a Colorado Conservation Water Board grant to cover half of this program costs. And then hopefully you all received the annual report of the success of this program. If not, I'm happy to email it back out. But essentially we had 12 homes participate. We had eight thousand square feet of turf removed and approximately ninety thousand gallons of water saved. And to put that into perspective, your average swimming pool is ten to twenty thousand gallons. So when people were asked why they participated in this program, the, the main reasons were to conserve water and really make some conservation into action. And then we did receive testimonials from folks and I loved this one. They said, we loved everything about this. Our new yard already looks amazing just after one season. I've told everyone I know, so huge success. And I'm happy to say we're continuing this in 2024. We received yet another grant from Colorado Water Conservation Board to do this and serve thirty-one homes in 2024. Another success to highlight is, sorry, I was on the wrong slide. Another success to highlight is the utilization of organic fertilizers in our sports field, dog parks, turf for people play. The Parks Department has said that the organic fertilizer is just as efficient as the regular fertilizer. So going into highlighting just some of the projects and development statuses in 2023. One that's really nice is we had a project to investigate creating a climate change vulnerability index for the city of Englewood. Essentially this is a GIS map that looks at what census blocks in the cities are most vulnerable to climate change. Last year, the state did that for us. They did a whole GIS map of the entire state, very thorough, all the way down to the census block, which is what we wanted. It's great resources called the EnviroScreen, if anyone is interested in, in looking into it. Another project that we, that is in progress, these are kind of three projects. I like to lump into one. So that's evaluating the current AMERESCO contract, studying emission-free heating at all city buildings and conducting a water audit at all city buildings. All of those were in progress in 2023. All of them will be completed at or around the same time in 2024, because those are aspects of our energy performance audit that we're currently doing. And you all are going to receive an update on that project in the end of February during a study session from our contractor. Another one to highlight is we completed the project to increase the, to establish a plan to increase electric vehicles in the city fleet by establishing our electric vehicle action plan in 2023. And then the final thing I wanted to highlight is the one project for investigating requiring commercial and multifamily buildings to offer recycling. This one hasn't been started, that's true. But I do want to flag that in 2022, the state of Colorado passed the producer responsibility program. And this is going to make recycling for all Coloradans, including in multifamily, free in 2026. So that is a state level thing. I don't know of the nitty gritty details in there that's still getting worked out, but that is something just to keep on your radar for 2026. So I will end it there because I know I'm keeping you from lunch, but I am happy to answer any questions you want me to have.
You can lose it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if this is under sustainability or community wellbeing, but we have had conversations about moving landscaping, doing parks also to like native pollinators and not using as many annuals. Is that something that is under sustainability along with that fertilizer?
I feel like it would be. The one positive and negative with sustainability, sometimes it's so broad, it could go in so many categories. I would see that as appropriate to being under sustainability. And I know that that conversation is something that the Sustainability Commission themselves are very passionate about.
So I'll add real quick too with that. We updated our master plan for the parks in anticipation of the lawn and we did remove quite a bit of turf that stole up, allowed turf to play and moved to more native. So that's something you'll see in the near future of how that's going to change what the parks look like.
And is that included? I think the, the lot of the community feedback we got in there, especially on like flowers, some of our landscaping, is that?
That's the plan is, I mean, a lot of grasses, especially in the very passive areas that people will actually walk here and view. But yeah, flowers is a big piece of that as well.
Great, thanks.
So my question is on the, the completed project of the establishment to increase the percentage of electrical vehicles in the city. Do we just have the plan done or have we already purchased some electric vehicles?
We just have the plan done right now. So we have goals in there to reach twenty percent of non-emergency light duty city vehicles by 2030. So we have that time. It's very specific to certain ones. Police are not part of it. Heavy duty vehicles are not part of it. But yeah, we have not purchased them yet.
Okay, thank you.
How are we communicating to the public these grants available to, I don't know, zero, whatever it's called, their yards?
Yeah, great question. So we, this year we have a utility bill insert going out. Applications just opened this past week. So we have the utility bill and inserts. Communication has done a phenomenal job putting on social media. And then I do a quarter on the sustainability newsletter. The first one went out actually last November and it's going out in a few weeks now. And that's going to be in that sustainability newsletter too.
Is, I don't know how many people have subscribed to the text messaging that the city does now. Is that something that's possible to the people that subscribe to send a text out to that?
We can absolutely do that. I think the, I think it's like a hundred and sixty that have subscribed to that. Yeah, probably, yeah.
So maybe that's an idea.
Yeah, we just have to be careful not to overdo it on the text messaging because people will just have to stop and then they're gone forever.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure we're very judicious that we're giving people information that they've signed up to get and not, oh, the city's doing this thing or that thing.
It's a good point, but also, I mean, it's great that we're doing a sustainability newsletter. How do people know that we're doing it even to sign up? You know, like how do we just, to help awareness that that information exists?
I'm happy to say that in the next Englewood newsletter, the physical copy, there's a spread for sustainability and the Sustainability Commission really wanted to highlight the group. So they have a QR code that will go to the city website and it will, hopefully they look at the Englewood engaged page because that's how they sign up for it. But I can absolutely look into how to increase that.
That's in the magazine, right?
Yes, yeah, oh yeah, sorry.
Great, so we're ready, the next thing is lunch. So we'll take about until 12:05. We will unfortunately need to come back at 12:05, however, the food will still be out there, so we can kind of do a work in the woods after that, buffet style, those drinks and snacks are available.
We're going to take this in a different direction.
I'm going to do my best.
Bill is already coloring outside the lines.
Yeah, we gotta talk about the lines.
He's got his panties running in the kitchen.
In a manner of speaking.
Is this taking the place of thumbs up, thumbs down?
Nope, not in this case. I'll tell you what we're doing with these. I want to run through a little bit of what I'm going to attempt to get us to accomplish this afternoon. And I say that because I don't know where all conversations go. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to go ahead and you've had the opportunity to submit some comments related to the plan. You've had a chance to object to certain areas of the plan, make recommendations for improvement. Some folks ask to move certain things. So here's how I'd like to run this afternoon with your support. And this, and again, I recognize we may get off task on some of this, but my goal is to keep us on task as your facilitator and get us through at least a couple of the major decisions. So one, I want to recognize that there will be another opportunity for you to weigh in on the plan. This is not the final opportunity. That's coming again. We've got February, March timeframe. There will be another opportunity with more synthesized information coming back. But the goal here today is to get the thumbs up, thumbs down on the important decisions that we need to make in order to move forward. So that's my goal is to put us in this situation to do a thumbs up, thumbs down. Now with that said, back to that conversation on consensus versus consent. I have no illusions. You all will agree on everything that everybody says. So we just got to recognize that sometimes it's going to be majority rule. You're going to get outvoted and you're still going to make it into the plan. If it becomes a place of significant objection, we can do that either. Now here's where significant objection comes in. In this case, if there's no comments on an area of the strategic plan and no proposed modifications to it, we're going to say, yeah, that's making it into the plan and we can make wordsmithing changes. Any wordsmithing that needs to get done will be happening at another point in time. So this is again, big things we're going for the thumbs up, thumbs down on. If one council member suggested adding or deleting, that's not something we're necessarily going to address. We're going to focus on the areas where two or more council members suggested to add or delete items. That works out to eighteen items already, where we have multiple council objections up or down. So when it comes to that, we've got eighteen decisions that absolutely have to be made because we have folks that are saying, I want this out. I want this deleted or I want this moved in the plan. That's what the chess pieces are about. So I'm going to make this a game like The Voice. If you've seen The Voice before, they've got, it's a singing competition if you're not familiar with it, and they have a spot where the judges can either steal or save. So the idea here is you've got chess pieces sitting in front of you. The black pieces are your save pieces. So if you have an idea and you think to yourself, you know what, I really want to be heard on this idea. I really want to have my day in court. And you're the only person who wants to speak up on that, you've got one shot to put forward your save piece and to represent your interest for three minutes. We'll set the timer and you can make your impassioned pitch to your colleagues to get the support you need on the vote up or the vote down that you need. The other one is the steal. So the other piece, your white piece is going to be your steal piece. So if you like what somebody else is saying up here, but maybe it didn't have the votes and you want them to expand on what it is they're thinking, same thing. You put forward your white piece, I'll take that piece. And then we turn over our timer and you have three minutes to go ahead and make your case. Anytime you do a steal or a save, you're going to force an up or down vote. So there will always be a vote anytime a steal or a save is used on, is this in the plan? Do we agree with this or not? Do I need to run through any of that again?
Yeah, let me just ask a question since I haven't watched The Voice. So if I'm asking, so if, if Steve has something on there?
Yep.
And I want him to elaborate. I put down the piece, the white piece. And then Steve has to elaborate for three minutes on why or is it me?
He gets three, he gets up to three minutes. And I'll take your white piece because we get that shot once. Yep, I'll take your white piece and then you just, you know, then Steve has up to three minutes to explain why you're thinking is the way you're thinking is on that particular item. My goal here is to help these highest priority things that you've got come to life. And to also take the areas where we already have some consensuses, or some consent, I should say, and move them forward. Again, we've got a short window to do this piece of this in, and that's why I'm emphasizing too, that there will be other opportunities in February and March for staff to bring some other things back as well. Questions, comments, concerns, deep confessions before we begin, yes?
If we have larger feedback about the structure of the plan or the outcome areas themselves, when are we, is there opportunity to have a more high level conversation before we get into that next level detail?
Great, great question here. I think that, Sean, did you want to weigh in on that?
In terms of like prioritizing the outcome areas, which is an exercise we're going to do.
What the outcome areas are, is that?
Oh, and just, yeah, like adding an outcome area or deleting or, yeah.
I think, you know, we were just chatting here, we did our worksheets, you know, individually a few weeks ago. We've now read everyone else's feedback. We have other thoughts and response to that, Crystal, I have some things. So I just want to make sure there's a chance before we get into this structure, there's a reason like that.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, yeah, then I'm going to say we probably leave with that.
I agree.
Okay, and if we have some major objections to the overall structure, that needs to be noted and then that might change some outcomes in the February or March timeframe as well. So I think if we want to have that discussion, let's do that right now. And I'll just set a time limit on it and say, I'm going to limit the conversation to 10 minutes unless it really gets robust, just so that we're making sure we can get into some of the other decisions that we need to. Is that acceptable and fair?
Yeah.
Does Phil okay with that? Okay. So we got 10 minutes here. I'm going to get a timer. We're going to get that going, but please start us off. What are you, what are you thinking? You've got some comments to start us with.
Sure, I'm happy to start. Just after reading everyone else's thoughts, having some conversations with staff and some colleagues, I think we've made really great progress across the born and alive area. And one topic I think just continues to rise up for all of us and it's community engagement and communication. And how do we do a better job of making sure that citizens understand what we're doing, that they feel they have the information that they need, that they feel like they understand how the city is servicing them? And I wonder if we actually swap the outcome area neighborhoods, since we've made so much progress there and have a potentially a new outcome area called community engagement or, you know, we can wordsmith it, which would house things like the neighborhood program, the other work we want to do there, along with things like community identity, events, communication, some of the stuff that's kind of, we have community engagement as a project in several different outcome areas, but I, because it's been such a big theme, I want it to elevate it as a core function of this project plan. And then put more strategy around it. So things, I would like to see more strategy around community events and city events that are specifically geared at engaging and educating the community. So that feels like the thing that we're missing a little bit in the priority focus department.
Can we have that under community development?
No, I think it would be, instead of neighborhoods, neighborhoods would become something that would nest under community engagement broadly and it would capture neighborhood connections as well as broader community engagement with the city.
And what department are you asking us?
Probably all.
They're all multidisciplinary, right? So it would include parks, it would include community development, it would include sustainability, you know, all of it.
Can I ask a question? And this is not meant to be confrontational, but when you said you've had conversations with colleagues, does that mean other council members?
Um, I mean, I think just not about like the plan in general, but in general, you know, when we're chatting, whether, you know, I'm having breakfast with Steve or something like that, I think citizen communication just is like keeps coming up. When I had lunch, we were talking about how do we communicate better? How do we help citizens understand what the city's doing? And I think elevating it in this way could make a lot of sense for our vision of what the city wants.
So how do you feel that elevating in this way, you're going to communicate with citizens better where we haven't before? Because it is a big issue that I have and we did discuss.
Yeah, I think community engagement, like how do we build, we would need to then create projects and strategies. How do we build a stronger community engagement? Things like how do we utilize our neighborhood leaders to help talk about what happens in the city and how do we maybe have, do things we haven't thought of yet? But build a stronger set of goals around engagement for the community? Things like, you know, even the project of creating the video for how to attend a city council meeting, give public comment, like how do we create more inroads and onramps for citizens to engage in this process with us? Maybe goals around participation in boards and commissions or, you know, there's a volunteer program, there's tons of different ways, I think, to drive engagement. And it just feels like it's dispersed and not focused enough right now with the plan.
So the reasoning why you're bringing this up is that this would bring visibility, this would bring a goal for us to start tracking how exactly we're going to start doing these things. Because right now we're just basically saying, since there is no communication or community engagement goal, outcome, we're asking it, we're, we're asking that to be just part of each individual project, program or task.
No, we would elevate it as.
Well, no, that's what we do, but right now we're just basically allowing it to happen at all.
Or if I understand correctly, all these different things that we're doing in. Or if I understand correctly, all these different things that we're doing in different departments for the community, we pull them all together under one umbrella, under one heading.
That's one thing we can do, I think also we probably would desensitize adding new things that were not current.
Right, and I understand, but it would be under one title and everything would be pulled together opposed to parks and rec would have one thing, you know, there are things that they do, communication has their things that they do, community outreach has their things that they do, we pull it all together.
We would pull it together and I think by making it its own outcome area, it would elevate it as a higher priority in the city council vision for both staff and how we're communicating to the community. This is essentially a values document, right? These are the biggest outcome areas that we wanna spend time and resources on. And I think community engagement for me is rising to that level of something that we need to dedicate kind of more consistent focus to.
And would it fall under community well-being? Totally new heading for you.
I think it would replace neighborhoods. And neighborhoods would become projects underneath broader community engagement goals or outcomes.
And I'm not weighing in on this, but I would say that we have discussed eternally, does neighborhoods still need to be an outcome area?
Right, and I think, you know, because we saw we achieved so much there, if, you know, then neighborhoods become one piece of a larger community engagement. You're engaged in your neighborhood level, you're coming to city events, you're taking city council meetings, it goes broader.
And neighborhoods are like a garden. You've got to continuously, you know, take care of it and work that garden in order for it to be healthy and growing and stuff. And my opinion is the best way I could, you know.
I also think, you know, there's programs that we run, that we need to run because they're, they're important. And then there's also progress that we want to make. A strategic plan should be showing we are going from here to here. So as we get into the place now in our process of building this plan, we will establish baselines and then say, we want 20, you know, community neighborhood leaders to 30 this year. And then we'll start to build that. So I don't think we should just include everything we do in the plan, but it should really be about showing that we're making improvements.
So just to be clear, the proposal would be that neighborhoods would fall under this category, newly titled community engagement, where other strategies could be also elevated in terms of visibility as well? Is that a fair?
Yeah, I would say consolidated and added.
Consolidated and added. So we'll take that, that neighborhood section, move it under there if there's some things that no longer make sense. But, and then there's additional elements that we would include in that community engagement strategy beyond just what we have in neighborhoods currently existing. Okay? Thoughts around this? We've got about four minutes left to have the discussion. Any other thoughts around this? Do we like what's being proposed here?
I could get behind it. I agree that neighborhoods seem to be the one area that we have made a lot of strides in. And I also agree that it does continue to bubble up that, you know, how are we outreach to the community? How are community members being invited in to what our offerings are? It seems to be a consistent theme in what we're hearing, whether it be through how people are approaching their public comment, but also just one-on-one conversations out in the community. I mean, I'm not sure how many people know about, you know, the grants to, you know, change the token in your yard to more native plants. So, yeah, I also agree that having a strategic plan that takes us from one place to another is good. I struggled a little bit as I was reviewing the document in preparation. There are some areas that just feel like we're making a value statement. But what are we doing with that value statement? So I agree with the direction of like trying to get some more concise projects going under that goal so that we can track something instead of just saying, we just need this this year.
Strategic commentary, yes?
The one, the one risk I see here, you know, we have a neighborhood coordinator. What I would hate to see is for that program to like fizzle or shift or reorient towards community, like community engagement in general or something like that, rather than still being neighborhood focused. Like, I think we've had this discussion in the past, I've always, or something similar to it. And I've always objected to, you know, de-emphasizing neighborhoods. I'm, I'm more open to that now just because we've made so much progress. But I still have the concern that, oh, okay, now that we have a community engagement category, maybe, you know, maybe Madeline's new job is community engagement coordinator and neighborhoods get kind of de-emphasized or something like that. I don't wanna see that happen, I wanna, I wanna continue to see the neighborhoods. And I don't want her job to get eaten up by other responsibilities or anybody else's.
I would agree for, just to be clear, I would consider neighborhoods as one of the core planks of a broader community engagement strategy that she should continue to expand.
And we could put metrics in the plan that specifically make sure that those outcomes and neighborhoods keep happening.
Yeah, that's, that would be my main thing, as long as we have those guardrails built in and it doesn't just kind of fizzle.
So my question is, are we taking out neighborhoods and making community engagement another one of the eight outcome areas?
It would replace neighborhoods. And neighborhoods would be one plank of community engagement, but so would city events. And right now, city events, there's not like a strong strategy or goal in the strategic plan that I can see. And I think there's, we could do more, like why are we doing them? How many are we doing, for what purpose? As well as, you know, there's some, some community engagement I think in well-being and then there's some in governance, like I think we can just do a better job of having a more holistic strategy by seeing it consolidated on what are we doing broadly.
So are you saying that community engagement would be the overall, I don't know what the?
Outcome area.
Outcome area, and then all of the rest of these would fall under that?
Yeah, like for, no, 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 no. Sorry, for neighborhoods, and then underneath neighborhood. Instead of neighborhoods, it's like community engagement and then all of the things that are events and the neighborhood program and communications would fall under that.
I struggle a little bit with doing that and, and giving that focus there. Because all of these things are equally weighted. What I would like to see us do is actually shift the priorities of all of these. Because I think, I don't remember if it was in 2020 or 2022, where we prioritized and the number one priority was infrastructure and transportation. I feel like we're making progress on that. And so I would like to, I don't wanna change any of these things, but I would like to reevaluate the priority order that we have put these in from two years ago because I think we're weak in some areas.
And we do have that built into the schedule at the end of the date.
I'm both in, I think we should reevaluate the priorities and also like council member Gabe's suggestion.
Yeah, the only suggestion for what's that making is right here, it says neighborhoods changed that to community engagement. And then nothing would change, the neighborhood would just be nested under that and then we would add other strategies and goals around engaging and communicating to our citizens. That's the only thing that I'm proposing here.
Okay, and the part, the thing that I have is community engagement. I think that what the words communicate to me are different. Meaning, how are we gonna make sure, this is how I would interpret community engagement in my understanding. How are we gonna make sure we communicate with the citizens, which I mean, we need to be doing? And obviously, the neighborhoods has been doing that effectively, communicating with the neighborhoods. So if we did community engagement, would it make more, are you suggesting that it would make more, equal all the neighborhoods together instead of separating out the neighborhoods? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Not exactly. So how many neighborhoods do we have when they're all broken?
Forty.
Forty?
What I hear you saying is that we would keep exactly the same focus on neighborhoods as we have, but we change the outcome area to community engagement so we can add metrics for, and strategies for events, for, you know, magazine or other publications and the way that we are.
Ambassador for.
Meetings, yeah, the new ambassador for.
And, and, you know, you brought up some great points about like, you know, we talk a lot about putting things on the internet, but we have a very large, brilliant aging population. Like, we might need specific strategies and goals around how we reach that population. And we're not capturing that, I don't think in any legal way in this plan.
I agree.
Because our communications, all of our communications goals are under neighborhoods. We're not to say, no, neighborhoods are a huge part of what we have to focus on and there are also other things. I think we could elevate some other priorities. And for me too, what's important is this, this feels more fair to staff because we have, I think consistently given Sean and staff, like, we wish you were doing more community engagement, we wish you were doing more community engagement, more education. But we haven't really elevated that in the plan where we told them to spend their time. And so I think for us to be consistent with the feedback we've been giving for the last 18 months or so, this is a shift we should make.
If, so would some of these other things like perhaps community well-being move down under that? Also, could that, I'm not asking if that's what we wanna do, I'm just asking.
I think community well-being would still exist because it needs to cover things like parks and, you know, other things. But there might be some projects for the community well-being that make more sense.
Okay, all right.
So I'm gonna call the issue here because we're 15 minutes into the discussion and it's a great discussion to have. I just wanna see if we've got, I think we've got some general agreement around this particular concept and I just wanna check in on that real quick and just raise it for a vote for a second. The proposal's being put out there that we take housing or take that and put it underneath community engagement. We're not losing anything there necessarily, we're just changing a little bit of that so that we can add an additional, additional things related to community engagement and that's the proposal. I just wanna ask, do we like that proposal or do we need further discussion on it? If we like it, let's give a thumbs up, if we don't like it, let's give a thumbs down. So if we're in general, okay. Okay, all right, we're, so it sounds like we're gonna add a focus area, an outcome area, that is going to be called community engagement.
Change an outcome area. I have one.
Correction, thank you, yes, that's a correct edit, yes. Change an outcome area from housing where we currently have to neighborhoods that we currently have into, run it through the words, thank you, neighborhoods that we currently have up into community engagement. Okay, and so there may be some additional discussion about some things that can be added underneath that goal. I would recommend that, you know, we can look at areas that can be drug out of other goals, but let's also keep our focus on, we can add some things coming into that February, March timeframe if there's some other things that need that focus as well. So, great edit. Next, all right. In community well-being, this was probably the predominant major issue that we needed an up-down vote on in this one right here, which is consider moving homelessness services and mitigation to safety. So there were two comments related to this particular item. There was another one in this related to there's an element of economic component that maybe should be recognized or reflected in there. But this was the comment made here related to this. So let's just do, if there's three minutes, this is a particular thing and why we think that this should be moved, I would welcome either council member Ray or Russell to go ahead and speak on this. That's the proposal?
If they speak on it, do they lose their black pieces?
No, they don't, this is, this has been voted by. This is, anytime we got two votes, anytime we got two or more votes, there's a discussion. The thing on this page is we're gonna get an up-down vote on.
I was just trying to figure out where I needed to spend my time.
That's okay, two and a half minutes.
Actually, the reason I brought this up about moving it to safety is I believe that a lot of the situations around homelessness really do involve safety in the city. And it's generally the police department that addresses these issues more so than any other. Whether it's through all health network or, or things like that. I think it would fit better under safety services because of the issues that are created and where, where the help would be come from.
And I agree, and a perfect example is the cold snap we have. The police were out, you know, looking for the homeless and getting them to safe places. Police interact with the homeless every day, be it with the all health groups enforcing the law or making sure people are safe. They're the ones that are interacting every day, one-on-one. I don't know if there's any other group within the city that has face-to-face contact with the homeless population more than our police department that just makes sense for all under safety.
That's the proposal.
On the surface, that makes sense to me. Can anyone give me a sense of why Atlanta could be well-being to begin with?
Well, I guess I'll say it because to me, I, I think adding it to safety to me makes it sound like homelessness is a crime. I don't wanna give that perception that we're saying that homelessness is a crime because we have a lot of strategies in terms of what we're doing for the homeless that are about job training, like different services that we're providing. And to me, I, I just don't wanna give that visibility or at least that presence that that's what homelessness is. It's just crime or.
Who provides that information to them? Or who has that first contact to get that information?
I can speak to that a little bit, I mean, certainly police have a role there. The, we know that nonprofits are out there, nonprofits are coordinating with city manager's office. And then we have the parks, you know, parks department is doing the homeless connect. The library deals with homelessness, trying not to, you know, involve the police only when, when really necessary. So I think this is an example of, of an area that impacts multiple departments. And if we treated it simply as a safety concern, I think we would lose, lose the benefits of having all the other departments involved and seeing it holistically.
Yeah, the police are just one tool and one aspect of the larger homelessness plan.
Then why don't we put all health network out under community well-being instead of working with the police department?
We need a department to manage, it has to go under some, one of the departments.
Well, it's the same thing with what I'm asking. It needs, there are a lot of other things in here, not just that issue, that really do fall under safety. But safety in the city involves community well-being and every, all of these things fit together like a glove. And so.
Yeah, which is the argument why I would say it should remain in under community well-being since it's, it's really a holistic category.
So we're at three minutes and I wanna go ahead and just ask for the up-down vote. If we need to continue the conversation, we can, but I just, we have a proposal to move it to safety. If you're in support of moving it to safety, thumbs up, okay? Otherwise, it remains where it's at for now. So we'll keep it where it's at for now, which is under community well-being. Okay, moving along. Again, this right here, there's no proposed status change on this. So this is one of those items that we're moving into the plan, we have no significant objection to this. So we're just gonna move it on. Isn't this part of the job? Absolutely, it's also being called out for specific purpose here, so, so well said. And if we have questions, we can answer some of those. And again, the wordsmithing, that'll happen in that February, March timeframe. So specific subject, uh, uh, specific wording suggestions will, will fall under that particular thing.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please.
Does staff need any clarification on any of our questions that we asked? Or are we just gonna wait till February, March?
Not right now, there may be ones where we reach out to specific council members to clarify. And as we shared with Nick, if, so Tina, use you as an example, you had a few that were repeating. And so what I would say is, if it's reframing the direction of the goal, I think the discussion should be had today. If it's more of just rephrasing and better stating it, then we can take, you know, what was said by different council members and wordsmith it in the next month.
We had one for delete right here, council member Russell. I don't know whether you prefer to use your, use it on, use your thing right here for this, use your save for this. Feeling like that. Again, some, some suggestions on how it could be phrased better. Where is this offered, what are passive opportunities? Question to staff on that one and what that would like.
We'll hit those into council requests.
Okay, so, so we will take all of these questions that you've got and we will answer back the questions that came up through the survey. Unless there's anything that has to be answered in the room today, we'll make sure that you get answers back on these right here.
Yeah, can I just offer on that one? I, I'm not changing the direction of the goal, I just wanted to pull city staff specifically into that statement so that we're saying as a council, we are supportive of these actions, not only for our community members, but also for the people that work for us. So I just wanted to add it.
Physical and mental health, we're feeling okay about that with no significant objection there, we're not using an objection. Lifelong learning, the opportunities, again, possibly delete. Council member Russell wanna weigh in on that one, good, okay? Again, maintain current resources, support new developments. And so this was a little bit of some suggestions on how we could go about achieving that end. Great, great edits there. We're moving this into the plan, continuing. Homeless services, we had some discussion related to homeless services on this. We've had this discussion a little bit in terms of where it belongs and how it fits. And again, knowing that, knowing that police is a part of. And again, knowing that, knowing that police is a part of the overall delivery of homeless services and making sure that we're tying safety and appropriately the parts of this, but without calling it out for, for all kinds of different reasons on, on that. So homelessness services maintains itself under community well-being. Moving along, affordability, this had two objections as well to delete. Or two, I should say, comments to delete. I'd like to offer three minutes to council members Russell and Ward to be able to talk through this particular item here. And see if you have any statements you'd like to make related to this.
I think overall, my objection to this is, is that it's based upon the notion that the government controls the economy. You know, the city of Inglewood doesn't control how much groceries cost. The city of Inglewood doesn't control how much the gallon of gas costs. The city of Inglewood doesn't even control how much a house costs. So, as far as things that we can focus our priorities on as governing officials, affordability is, is not one of the deliverables that, that I care to focus on personally. I think that happens much more organically in, in, in the market and perhaps we can create conditions that, that assist it, but I, I would much rather focus on, on the things that we are directly responsible for, like, you know, the water and the drivability of our roads and what happens when you call that a button.
Okay.
And, and I agree with the things that council member Ward shared. The other thing, there are things we can do as a city council and it's not controlling all the things that council member Ward just initiated. We can subsidize housing. And we can create rules around that, but we cannot create affordable housing. And the bottom line is, I've lived long enough that in high inflationary periods, there is no such thing as affordable housing. Even the middle class are being priced out of affordable housing. So I think it's a waste of energy at this time. The market forces will address this at the proper time. I think it's not something police council can address.
Okay. Any comments or questions for the council members related to this proposal before you, you vote on it?
I think the, since we do have affordable housing category, I see Chelsea had a comment over there. I kind of agree with that. I don't know, we're talking about affordability outside of housing. I kind of tend to agree that there's a not, not a lot, not a huge place for government unless we're specifically causing problems in that area. The only kind of exception maybe I would have to bet is thinking about food affordability. We don't have any kind of food co-op or anything like that in Inglewood, which is something I would like to, to look into, but I'm not sure this would even be the best place for it, so. Unless there's other affordability questions, it makes sense to delete this one since we have housing.
Where is housing?
It's the same, it's the same community well-being as well.
So we, okay.
It's, here it is.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll talk about that one as well. It's got a delete question out there as well, related to that one. So I wanna start with this one first, which is this affordability. And we have affordable housing as a separate called-out item. So just wanna draw that out before we vote on this. So with that said, time's up, three minutes up on this. We okay with having an up-down vote on this? Okay, in this case, if you're in support of deleting this, give me a thumbs up. Okay, we've got that. That was your W. Savor it, it's gonna be delicious.
I can't have that reaction more than once today.
So affordability as listed here is out, moving on. Placemaking, we've got a suggestion to delete. Council member, you wanna? Okay.
I, I think I just didn't really understand the goal and so maybe wanted more clarification on it.
Okay, can we provide some more clarification on that?
What exactly is placemaking, define it?
Yeah, as this, as it relates to placemaking specifically, we did a wayfinding and placemaking master plan. And it's, you know, the wayfinding piece of that is welcome signs. It's turn here for Inglewood High School Stadium and we'll be, we're, we're developing those signs. It's the placemaking part of that plan, with things like public art. So the Arts Commission right now is finalizing designs for median art. We wanna do more of that as we do the streetscaping projects in downtown Old Hamden and Broadway. We wanna create placemaking, maybe it's a little game that's drawn into the sidewalk that, you know, you're creating such a place by creating something that's, you know, public can interact with or see.
Okay, I withdraw my delete comment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Art and culture, we have nothing here in the proposed status, but we do have questions and comments here. And again, add in the community identity, support initiatives and programs. And so again, some suggestions there about how we might go about doing that. And again, no suggestions on that, so moving along, that's in, art and culture is in. Community-wide identity, delete, we had two comments on this one right here. Three minutes for that discussion, if you'd care to, leave it either.
I would, I would just like to say that community-wide identity ties in a lot to our marketing, marketing ourselves. We've had two or three marketing or branding initiatives in the city of Inglewood since I've been on council. And I more see this as a branding issue. Fostering a community-wide identity is what we were, I was kinda talking about before, is focusing on Inglewood as a whole instead of just singling out the neighborhood. So it might make sense to go there.
I agree with that. I think it makes, this one could move to community, now that we have the community. That's a more appropriate place for it.
And it's a go-fan, right? We have to have strong neighborhood identities and, or Inglewood and how we foster pride that we live here.
Right, and you know, another thing that would fit into the community-wide identity is the national night out. Because that draws the neighborhood together as well as the entire city when we do it across the city.
Yeah, I, I like that idea of it moving into the newly identified category. And I, I just felt like, community-wide identity and neighborhood identity were kind of conflicting within the plan and so how do we get at both of those things together? And I think moving it under the new category would get at what my concern was.
I'm hearing a lot of consent on this, so let's just try a thumbs up, thumbs down vote on. Moving this instead of deleting it into the community, the newly adopted community engagement. Thumbs up if you want to do that. That's a yes on that, so that goes to community engagement now. Next, look at us zipping right along, I love it, here we go. Food system, access to that, we've got delete, we've got unsure, we have some discussion around this one right here. So we'll go ahead and start that discussion. Again, three minutes around the discussion here, so. Please let us know, what are your thoughts, what are your thoughts around this? We've got delete up here.
I will just share some things. I think this actually, affordable nutritious food was in the strategic plan when it first got on council before it was ever approved. The bottom line is, Inglewood is not a high-end community. Our median income is what, around sixty-five thousand, sixty-eight thousand a year? And I'm not saying we shouldn't have nutritious food, but I think that it's not, I think we should let the market drive the forces on the food that's available. And, I mean, because business is known, will my business succeed here or won't?
Okay.
My comment around this was just, yeah, we're, we're not controlling what type of food is available within the city itself, so. I, I didn't wanna have a goal where we don't have a say in it, affordable, affordable and nutritious. Like I, we're personally not doing anything about that. So me personally, I just saw this as just a goal that we're not really having a hand in, so.
I agree, I think that makes four, I'd say three no's.
Before we get to three, four no's, I wanna push back a little because this is, while I generally agree that this is not something, you know, we can't go in and tell grocery stores what their prices have to be, we can have an influence on more affordable food options by encouraging or fostering a food co-op or something like that. And that's, that's the one thing that I would like to see Inglewood have, is some kind of a, a unique alternative to, to just going to the grocery store and, and getting food. I'd like to see this stay in and have a goal specifically around encouraging or organizing a group to put together a nonprofit food co-op. Not something that the city would particularly, you know, fund over the long run. Those food co-ops are, tend to be independent of the government, but there have been, been times in different places where cities have helped get organized around that. That's why I would like to use this one.
You said the key word, independent of government.
Yeah, so our job would be to foster, to foster that.
So it wouldn't need to be in here. You know, city, neighborhoods start food co-ops and stuff like that. I mean, my neighborhood does it where they grow gardens and stuff like that and everyone trades their foods and canons and stuff like that. So, I don't think it belongs in here because neighborhoods start their own co-ops independently and stuff like that.
They can, but sometimes it helps to have some, you know.
Is, it's not illegal to start a food, food co-op in Inglewood, is it? I mean, I'm.
I don't know.
Well, a lot of times nonprofits, nonprofits can start those as well. Joe, are you in trouble? So.
So I kinda made my comment here, I'm almost wondering like whether or not we need to elaborate or, if we wanna go to that staff. The next goal to me is like kinda where it's under. Like, I, I'm good removing the, still the food system one, but I almost feel like what you're saying, you want us to possibly expand senior services to also include, not just senior services, but include those food options for just the population as a whole.
Well, couldn't that go under community development, your food co-op idea that something could be.
Like foster community.
Yeah, wouldn't that be another, you know.
I don't really care where it goes, as long as it goes.
It doesn't have to be its own thing.
Yeah, it could actually go, I mean, apart, the other, one of the other reasons I like this idea is because it would help with walkability depending on where that food co-op went because we do have a, kind of a food desert in the middle of Inglewood if we're thinking about fifteen-minute walkability, so. I, I could think of this, a specific strategy would, would go. So what's under goals is that there's certain, uh.
Projects.
Projects, key projects, yeah. I'm thinking specifically of a project around a food co-op that I would like to see go somewhere, but it doesn't have to go under food systems.
We're at three minutes, and so, one last comment and then we can go ahead and, and I'd like to suggest, go ahead.
I was just thinking my comment, that this is the third time I've been up here for one of these and this one is always just kinda like languish. I don't think we've ever really done anything on it. There's not like a clear focus or strategy around like how we get there and so.
Nobody on staff is championed. I mean, not, not being critical of staff, I'm just saying, there's nobody that this is their thing.
But that's what I, that's what I wanna say into that is like, because there's so many other things that are draining capacity. This need, while I agree is, is important, it doesn't feel as acute as some of the other needs right now and so I just wonder like, do we, do we have what it takes to prioritize this? It's a little unclear about what we should actually do.
Parking lot?
Yeah.
I, I wonder.
So I think it's a question, I think it's a question of keeping it in or getting rid of it and I think you've made a specific project level suggestion that is more actionable than maybe what we've got here. So it's like, okay, could that be as a part of the plan somewhere else? We make sure that that's noted and then we find the right spot in the plan in February or March to put the co-op concept in there somewhere with, by deleting this as well because maybe we have overburdened staff of things that we're not able to get accomplished here. That's part of this too, is we gotta make the tough choices.
It could go in the new projects under development section or whatever. Didn't that now a part of the thing? So, I'm happy to stick it there.
P I D.
So, so thumbs up if you would like to delete this goal.
Wait, is it?
Thumbs up if you wanna delete.
How does it develop it?
We're deleting the goal but adding the project under project.
If you want to delete the goal, thumbs up.
That's a different thing. Okay, I'm fine with deleting the goal as long as I do my second.
The goal is deleted. The goal is deleted with the master's comment. We have an interest in food. Alright, senior services. There are no proposed status or objections to this right here. It makes it into the plan. We've got some comments right here, again, Parks and Recs, we've got, we've got a few comments that we can respond to. Staff, in this case, this makes it into the plan. Next, affordable housing. We've got three in the delete category, again, different than affordability, which we already voted out of the plan, affordable housing. We got three people, we got three minutes, and go. Discussion around this one. If you wanted to delete it, talk to us about it, why?
I think it's the same thing that I said before, is there's no such thing as affordable housing available. Now the market forces will take care of that in due time.
Okay.
I think that might have been a snaffle on my part. I don't remember marking that as a.
Okay.
That's Nick's comment.
We're still at two.
The affordable housing, it doesn't exist. I mean, I've done water research over and over again and it's.
That's the problem.
Yeah, and, and that's the problem.
I respectfully disagree that like it doesn't exist and that we shouldn't do anything on this. We have an active affordable housing task force right now that are currently looking at strategies for what should Inglewood consider doing around affordable housing that fits the character and nature of our community and our needs. I really wanna elevate, we did an affordable, we did a housing assessment. We know we have gaps. For me to know that we have significant gaps and just to do nothing with that data feels like real malpractice of this role. And so, I want us to be responsive to go study that we did. And so I think that, I feel quite strongly that this should stay. And not only should we, you know, explode, I would like us to see an actual housing plan for in the long term, both how do we promote, are there to be naturally occurring affordable housing that the market does on its own? As well as what are the interventions around deeply affordable that we might need to make?
I would like to suggest we had affordable housing in Inglewood before we started it, before we started to tear it all down and build massive duplexes where they tore down a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house and built a duplex that sells for a million dollars a side. We had naturally occurring affordable housing. And the more government gets involved, the more we mess up the ability to have affordable housing. It just doesn't work.
I think the, my objection to taking this out would be that government has had a significant influence on affordable housing, mainly by having too restrictive of rules on what kinds of housing can be built. So, I think we made a lot of progress on that last year on the Title XVI revisions, but I think there's still more, more work to do. As long as there are affordable housing types that are illegal to build, we're gonna have an affordable housing problem. The market can't solve something that you say is illegal to build.
And I don't think the market will ever create deeply affordable housing just for people who are making below fifty percent of their income, you know, thirty, like. We, we need to have nonprofit partners or other strategies we need to consider that we're basically wanting to be in right now to meet those needs.
So we're gonna ask for the vote on this one. If you're in support of deleting it, give me a thumbs up. Okay, that does not carry the day. This is still on the plan. Moving forward, and again, objections noted and comments noted related to this. Moving on to the economy. Here we go. The proposal is to add a new goal, new business recruitment.
Can I just mention that we could do this as a goal or a project under an existing goal? Staff talked a little bit about this one. We actually agreed that it would be nice to have goals around recruitment. Sort of, it could be a project rather than a goal.
Would that be an acceptable edit to you, council member Russell, if there was something called out here related to new business recruitment as a, at the project level?
Yeah, I'm okay. We need to, we do need to recruit new businesses and, because Broadway is starting to look pretty blighted and some other areas of the city too. There's some other areas of the city that have been blighted for a long time, okay?
I have a question.
Sure.
Isn't this part of our economic development plan? And so, my question is, when we have something like a plan, are we implement, are we thinking of implementing the goals and those plans into the strategic plan and the overall for the outcome area? Are, are those things consistent?
I'd like to think that if they're not, they could be.
Yeah, that would be something that I think is important. So if we have a new strategic plan for economic development that we're integrating it fully with this that they're really speaking the same thing, we don't have duplicative or even counterproductive goals. So, if that's part of what we've already improved, then I think it would make sense to make sure it's here as well.
Is there a convenient existing goal that this can stay under? Do you have thoughts on that yet? And that can be answered at a later point in time too, I just wanna.
We'd have to think about it and see what council thinks, but off the top of my head, I'm either thinking maybe business fund it or business fund it right now.
If we included it at that level, council member Russell, are you okay with that? Making sure that this is specifically called out, new business recruitment?
Wherever it goes, we need to get new businesses in Inglewood, so.
What about, number one is business retention? What if it was business recruitment and retention?
Actually, that probably sounds good.
Yeah.
Let's do a thumbs up, thumbs down on that one. Let's do a thumbs up, thumbs down on that one. Thumbs up if you think that that would be a good addition into the plan, the new business recruitment as part of this business recruitment and retention. Is that what this would be? We've got a thumbs down, thumbs up, okay? The yeas have it. Business recruitment and retention. We have no changes to the proposed status, you know, we just changed that proposed status right here on the floor.
Can I just speak to this since I was the only down? I just think that business retention deserves its own thing, I'm afraid. Its own focus, I think it would be deleted if it were, but it looks like.
You mean business retention should have its own focus, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, business retention.
I wish you would have assured that.
I would.
You hope. I actually.
Come on.
Agree with that.
I actually agree with it.
We split it.
So let's try this again. Let's, let's do a reversal and try this again here, okay? How about a thumbs up, two separate goals. One is business retention and the other one is business recruitment.
That's better.
Does that work? Thumbs up on that? We're mostly the yeas on that one as well. So I've got, I've got the majority on that. We're going to go with that and add that in as an area. To the point of prioritization, and I just want to emphasize this, at the end of the day, we will be going through a dot exercise in order to help prioritize how some of this looks. So we'll have some sense of what that looks like as well in this. And again, more opportunities to weigh in. Commercial corridor vibrancy, no change in the proposed status. But again, some, some specific comments. Business climate, sure, pro-business climate, no significant objections, no proposed statuses. City center redevelopment. I know we've had already work sessions on this. I know this was a topic last year and I know that this is certainly a hot topic. I believe we have additional things coming up related to this, a work session or something related to the city center redevelopment.
We had an executive session last week. We're continued to have those.
Okay, so we have, we are having a lot of robust discussion around this particular item. We have this in the delete category here for Councilmembers Russell and Ward. So three minutes to go ahead and make your case on that.
Come on, Steve.
No, I recognize that I'm in the minority on this, so I'm not going to spend a lot of emotional or physical energy explaining my opinions. A dead room. I just, I, I. For me, it's, it's partly the language city center redevelopment, the assumption that it's a foregone conclusion. There are some aspects of, of the various redevelopment proposals that make me very uncomfortable, like the idea that regardless, you know, the intent is to abandon a paid for city hall. You know, that, that makes me somewhat uncomfortable. I just, I, as far as the things I want to execute on in the, in the coming years, this, this dish is getting colder and colder too. So I'm, I'm kind of over it at this point and I, whether it's redevelopment or reactivation, you know, I want to see that area thrive, but for me redevelopment is not a foregone conclusion.
Okay.
And, and I agree with that. I mean, I had been talking with a couple of different developers over the last three or four years and really the only thing and probably the, the worst the economic conditions get in America, this is probably even more true, that the only way to make money is to repurpose the building rather than to destroy it and, and redevelop that whole area.
So we have some comments, yes, please.
I'm hearing that a lot of specifics, like there's specific areas within the concept of redevelopment. But are you adverse to the idea of redevelopment or calling it reactivation or whatever we call it to continue to make progress and movement in that area? I don't, I don't see this goal as specific to just, you know, our current building that houses our library and our city offices. This is a broader vision than that.
These are, to answer your question, these are two very specific things, redevelop and densify. And if you took either one of those in a vacuum, I'm not sure that I would be interested in doing either one in particular. So that's why it's a, it's just an outright delete for me. You know, as far as activating the city center or turning the city center into a thriving part of town, you know, how you get to that would be a discussion, a strategic, a strategic discussion that we would have to have. But this goal as it is printed is not something that I am in alignment with, I don't.
A lot of discussion around this particular topic. We've had a lot already and we'll have a lot more, I'm sure.
Right, and has anybody saw the most recent school board speaker that in this entire council, I don't know if you could get them, or you just see the presentation, that he spoke about how Inglewood has densified and it is causing, because of the density, less and less children are in Inglewood because of that. And the more dense and the more multifamily Inglewood builds, the less children will be here. And because of that, I'm very concerned about the density of the city center. And that has made me really think after listening to that speaker, because we're in trouble. The more multifamily go up and potentially go up, we're losing children in Inglewood and that will continue.
Well, I appreciate that, but the land we're talking about right now doesn't have existing residential housing on it, so it wouldn't be displacing any families. So it would actually create a new housing for families. So I actually think it would help that problem, not work against it. And my response to you, Steve, is there are multiple site plans, right? There's one where we stay in that building or we repurpose it, there's one where we don't. Like we haven't made that decision yet. And so if you're feeling like it's getting cold, like I'd rather turn up the heat and make more progress on this than step back, because I think there's a real opportunity here.
Without disclosing what went on in executive session during this session, I respectfully disagree. I believe the ship has sailed in a certain specific direction.
And I think at this point, I'm going to call the question, because obviously there's been robust discussion and there will be more on this particular topic. And so I'm just going to ask, we have a question here to delete the city center redevelopment. If you agree with the deletion, give me a thumbs up. If not, thumbs down. Okay? The downs have it, it stays in. It stays in for now. Job training workforce and job training and workforce development supporting programs, no proposed status changes, no modifications or questions. It stays in as it currently is. That's economy, moving on to governance. No, again, no, no moves in this one that are really major. So we have a few objections and a few things. We have two comments here about deleting this. So one mission, I don't, if it feels like we're okay, then we can talk about it if you'd like to, to use your points.
It does. To me, that's common sense. Like I don't, you know, why we need to make that statement in our strategic plan.
Okay.
And at the time we did this, we didn't have a mission vision. So, so to your point, we have accomplished this.
I'd like to do an up-down vote on it then, and if we need to have additional questions, we can, because it's being put out there.
Before we vote, kind of, as a thing, like I think we need to have a broader conversation and sort of up-down voting on all of this. About like, do completed projects need to still live in the plan? I think that's just a general conversation. I mean, we can group all those to one decision later. And if they do still in the plan, because we're still trying to meet a certain benchmark, if you look in the actual plan itself, there are benchmarks about, you know, under this that we might want to track progress towards. Because again, strategic plan should be tracking improvement progress. Then I think that's a different conversation. But I, I'm hesitant to make these votes now, and I think like that's a broader decision that we have to make. Because there's a lot of completed projects that are technically still in the plan right now.
And so Sean and Tim, I'm going to go ahead and say that this discussion being something, you know, your, your point is spot on, the, the larger question needs to be answered of do things that have been sunsetted stay in the plan or not? And that's, that's a question that needs to probably be addressed on another time on another scale. Because at this point, we don't have that time for robust discussion on that.
If I could just add, in a really general sense, I think strategic plan should be really about what priorities are. And so, so Sarah kind of talked about it at lunch, for, for projects, they really should be, in theory, like new initiatives. We can still track ongoing things though as performance metrics. This goal is kind of unique, as City Manager Lewis mentioned, because it was put in because we didn't have permission vision about this statement. And in the last few years, we built them. So that's really a council decision. If you want to declare success on this, or if you think there's other things that we need to work on and we need to keep it, it's up to council to decide.
I think the daily focus and drive on this in particular is very important. One of the pieces of feedback that I've gotten from citizens over the years is that the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing. And that they get run around in circles. And when everybody is working towards accomplishing the same goal, which is delivering the service that the citizen needs to the citizen, regardless of whose responsibility it is, that is a low run government. And that's why I would like this goal to remain.
I'm going to call it as an up-down vote now, because we have one person supporting this. If you'd like to keep this in, give me a thumbs up if you would like to keep this goal in for now. We have the yes on that, the goal stays in for now. But again, a question that needs to be addressed also in terms of items here. Policies and procedures, again, we've got one, one vote on the delete here, so we're going to move on. That stays in the plan. Employee engagement, develop and sustain programs to engage employees, proposed status, no changes to this. Some comments here. And so again, some, some edits and some comments there from Councilmember Prang on that. Internal communication, strong, frequent and meaningful communications with all staff, proposed status, nothing there. I just want to call this one out for a second, because we started with community engagement. I don't believe this falls under that, but it would be a good time to consider whether that kind of thing needs to move. I don't believe it does in this case, but this is internal communication. We're okay with keeping where it's at? Okay, head nods will count on this one. Staff training and development, again, no proposed status changes. This one right here, one, to move it to economy revenue and finances, very sustainable approaches to revenue. And so we did have a comment about moving this to, to the economy section.
I mean, I'm not entirely went to it, just seems to fit better there in my mind.
Okay.
But I'm not adverse to having that under governance. I understand that as a value of governance. I don't have a strong.
I think what's hard about sometimes when we looked at just the goals, we didn't see all the projects underneath in the worksheet unless you went back. All of the projects are quite like governance and nature. And so I think if we cross reference back, that's why I think it should stay here, but that's, that's where it can get a little wonky.
Well, when we didn't have this as a guide, when we were going there.
Right, you would have to pull it out separately and, yeah.
Well, and I don't think we have to attend it.
Right, this is for, for, for an eye, yeah.
We probably should have given you specific directions, like we did send you the strategic plan, but to say, oh, here's what you can reference back at your answering. We should have been more explicit on that.
I had that same comment, like you. Yeah, because some of my comments are kind of like geared toward what are the individual projects underneath them, so.
Okay. So in this one, moving along, same with this one, proposed status, again, some suggestions about how we might phrase this, you know, that could, that could help us. Safe and inviting workspaces. And again, some, some language there. So thanks for those specific edits, because I think there's some really good word, wordsmithing in that right there.
Can we go back just real quick? I'm just going to make a quick comment, because my earlier comment that I made to you, Joe, or at least to Steve overall, I think it does fall under tools and technology. And I guess I was talking to, at least from my point of view, I was talking about specific things that we need to start doing under tools and technology. But yeah.
I would also just offer, and Prang's last one, that is a bit of a redirect. And I, I think all of us in this room and staff would agree that we have made a real focus on recognition and appreciation, but maybe adding some metrics around that, if that's your point, Prang.
Yeah.
I think since governance is kind of like the staff's section, we would support that.
Yeah, I, I think aside from a safe and inviting workplace.
How are we?
Being able, yeah, how are we recognizing and how often are we doing it? Are we soliciting any feedback from the staff on whether it feels meaningful?
The only, we have it as a known goal.
You're right.
Is employee recognition is number eleven.
Yeah, sorry.
The second time you said number.
Is that okay for you?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So Phil on that one, community engage, so we're, we're okay in that, we've got the, that recognized.
Yes, it is the.
Okay. Community engagement right here, again, no proposed status changes, but we've got this now fits under our new focus area, our new outcome area. So this is under that. Would, I'm sorry, that's an assumption I'm making. Would you, would we agree that this would fit in under our new strategy? Getting a lot of head nods, generally speaking, okay. Sort of side thumbs, getting some nice side thumb in here. This is good. The diversity and inclusion, we've got three in the delete category. We've got three minutes for that discussion. If you're one of the council members, like to delete it, please.
Yeah, I could, I could speak to this. I think we should have a policy of non-discrimination, that anyone, you know, within, within the city we work with and employ people of all backgrounds and, and all of that. Of course, it's, you know, illegal to discriminate in employment anyway. But I think diversity and inclusion is ideologically charged for, for one thing. And I think it creates a sense of, of division and especially among those who aren't in agreement with that approach. And finally, it contributes to organizational bloat, it's not focused, it's focused internally, not externally. So I think this is one that we can, we, we've, we've done well without having a big emphasis here. And I think moving this out of, of the plan is would be good for the city.
I personally believe everybody should treat each other with respect. And if there's something that happens or there's any friction, then, you know, people need to be adult and work whatever out and move on. Everyone just needs to treat each other as they want to be treated. That's the bottom line.
And I think the mayor approach, Tim, put it very well.
Yes.
There are already laws out there, so.
We'll call them, yeah, please.
I don't want to call them out. I would like to have more discussion. I think that this is an important area to maintain. While it may feel uncomfortable to some, there are laws that are out there that protect people, but not everyone is treated with respect. And I think that as a city council, keeping focus on recognizing the ills that are done to certain members within our community is important and showing that we're continuing to keep an open mind to welcome everyone, no matter how you show up today in our community is a really important message to continue to put out there. I would like to see more people such as, I think it was Lynn Peterson, who came into our boards and commissions interviews the other day and felt very comfortable to say multiple times, I'm part of the queer community. I want everybody in our community, or if you wanted to walk in and say you're part of the hetero community, like I just want people to be able to show up and feel a sense of pride of who they are and what they're about and that they want to show up and be part of our community versus shutting down. I think it sends a really strong message, similar to when we got rid of what days that we were going to commemorate in the city or not. You're sending a strong message saying that we don't honor diversity and inclusion in our community and I would very much like to maintain this here. I have family members that, you know, fit into communities that are not treated well and have felt safe growing up in Inglewood. And I want to continue to give that message outwardly. This isn't just about, you know, us that are here now, but this is also about our kids that are coming up. And I think that this is an important area of recognition within our future generations that are going to be the decision makers of our, our community.
I guess what we're moving at, you know, governance is around the organization that we're running and, and for our employees. I think this is an important element of being an employer in 2024 and recruiting and retaining staff as part of creating a workplace where people can feel that they're respected. And this would give a focus in, in programmatic direction. So I support keeping it as part of the way that we run the organization.
Well, one of my concerns with this specific goal, and I'm guessing that I probably have a swing vote here, is when I look at the goals under governance, there's, there's one for diversity and inclusion. The key project is listed as implement the diversity, equity and inclusion plan. And I don't believe this council is actually seeing that plan. So I, well, I'm not in a place where I'm ready to take this off. Would, I, I do believe that it would be appropriate for us to have a discussion of what that plan is, especially considering this is one of the key governance areas that we, I don't, I could be wrong, but I don't think we've seen it. And I don't think the discussion went all that great the last time we did have a discussion on D E I. So that's, that's where I'm at. I think we can keep it now, but we definitely need to have further discussion on this specific to and perhaps even prior to the implementation of, of the listed goal.
So would you agree maybe a parking lot for this then and tell further discussion?
I'm prepared to leave it on the strategic plan. I'm prepared to leave it on the strategic plan right now, um, as, as, as it's, it's written. But I, you know, I, I just, I think, you know, midterm, you may end up changing course on this.
Just have some in mind, I, I have a child that's also, um, is in the community.
This is a, this is a personal topic to many of us, and I recognize that. And, and I also know that this is one where we're gonna have some disagreement as a group. Um, in this case, I do need to call it to a vote, cuz there's obviously more robust discussion that needs to occur on this, and there's some work that needs to be done by staff to bring some materials forward on this. For now, I'd like to say, if you'd like it deleted, give me a thumbs up, if you'd like it deleted. Okay, it stays in the plan for now, with some very important caveats associated with it. We'd like to see the plan, we'd like to have some input on that. And I'm gonna move on, cuz I know that this is a tough topic for us, so.
Sorry, we'll talk about the.
Yeah, one of the other two.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm moving along here, um, employee recognition, no. Well, both of these have no objections in the proposed status necessarily, um, but we do have some recommendations.
I wanna do to raise under recruitment, an addition that I wanna propose from today, that wasn't on my worksheet, is, uh, we're talking about recruitment, we're not talking about retention of existing employees. And I've seen that come up as a challenge over the last couple of years, both in, uh, people leaving, we can't do projects, or, you know, we've seen this in the library as a big challenge. I'd like to see an increased focus maybe to recruitment and retention. Um, and then maybe some of the projects are things like better data, so that we can track turnover rates, we can track net promoter score, like that's a really basic HR function I think we need. So I'd like to see people support for adding retention.
We'd like, you're proposing the change of this to recruitment and retention.
Yes, if, if that's the easiest way to do it, we could also add it.
Or should we do a separate one, like we did business recruitment and then retention as a, a separate?
I don't have a strong perspective on it, I just would like to see employee retention as part of our focus under governance.
Okay. Recruitment and retention, I'd like to offer up as the edit in this case, we can come back and separate things out later. But for the sake of voting, I think it will keep it easier, is that okay? Recruitment and retention, thumbs up if you're okay with that edit, recruitment and retention for this right here, yes, we got that, okay. And now I'm moving on. Infrastructure and transportation, this should be easy. Just kidding. Um, so here we go, proposal, so we've got a few things going on here. Um, proposal to merge some existing goals, multimodal and transportation infrastructure. Proposal to move the goal, move transportation safety over to safety. And proposal to restructure the outcome, consider breaking out infrastructure and transportation into two separate outcomes. So lots of proposals around how we're tackling transportation and infrastructure in general. I want you to take a second and absorb those. So when it comes to this right here, we've got, we've got the, I'm gonna start with this one right here, consider breaking out infrastructure and transportation into two separate outcome areas. Did you wanna comment on that, council member?
I think that, um, infrastructure, some of the infrastructure includes transportation, but there is other infrastructure that does not. And so I think that transportation should be in its own, um, in its own.
Focus area.
Separate focus area, yes.
Rita, would that make transportation a purity? Cuz I'm thinking, are you thinking like RTV, the, uh, the trolley, like, I, I'm, I'm trying to.
Well, transportation, I guess what I was thinking about when I looked at transportation was, uh, E-TAC, um, Transportation Advisory Committee, things that they do, uh, about, um, that, and I think multimodal fits with transportation and the transportation infrastructure. But infrastructure itself doesn't only include roads and bridges.
Utility.
Yeah, it's always different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what's hard is you can have infrastructure without transportation, but I don't know if you can have transportation without infrastructure, in the sense of all, all.
That's what I was thinking of.
All the transportation projects we do require some sort of infrastructure public works, they have like component. And so, yeah, that's why it still makes sense for me to have them together. But I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna start this with an up-down vote on separating them out into separate functions, cuz again, that would be a separate focus area for us, if that were the case. So to separate this into a separate focus area, give me a thumbs up if you would like to do that.
Actually, I'm kinda wondering, can we delay that vote and move on to the other two, cuz I'm still thinking.
Okay.
Unless I don't have the votes, I, I don't know how I'm gonna vote on that.
Edit taken, mayor, let's, let's try that out for a second here, and try these out, okay? Um, so proposal to merge the existing goals, merge multimodal and transportation infrastructure goals.
I, it, I think I would do, you know, do this slightly different, I think I'd keep them separate, but change transportation infrastructure to auto, you know, auto infrastructure, cuz right now, it's transportation infrastructure should include, you know, as a, as a lot broader category, I think would include multimodal and car-oriented infrastructure, but I think it's important to separate those out as well. So, um, I think if I was gonna make a proposal, it'd be just, be changed transportation infrastructure to automobile infrastructure.
The challenge though is that like oxygen pedestrian bridges are project under transportation infrastructure, would you like that?
I would, I would move that to multimodal. Yeah.
Okay, so the edit comes up. Multimodal, but also automobile infrastructure, or auto-based infrastructure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want us to start thinking that transportation infrastructure naturally means cars, you know, those are two separate categories.
Okay. Okay. What about a thumbs up, thumbs down, okay, comments?
Sorry, can I?
Go ahead, jump in.
But what if it was utility infrastructure and transportation multimodal? That would capture the auto multimodal, but then it would also emphasize the infrastructure we're talking about, kinda that utility arm, water, sewer, things of that nature.
I think we're mixing levels now, you know, I think the, the question is what, you know, whether or not they go under a new outcome area or not, it's gonna separate from whether transportation infrastructure should be renamed to automobile.
Good, noted. Yep. Thanks for the offer, I like it. Let's talk about this one real quick, move transportation safety to safety.
There's one on here, it's just through collaboration and thoughtful investment, a strategic planning aiming for a goal of zero transportation-related facilities and serious injuries. I don't know how that's ever gonna happen. It's almost a safety.
It does.
And when, it's, it's both, yeah, it is.
It, it does.
It goes to both, actually, I think.
And, and when Chief was up here, he was up, I think addressing some of that too, which is there's a lot of coordination that happens on that particular item.
I think it needs to be in both.
Well, and then when, when we get to that, I, we're gonna go through a list, again, like the, the things you read, correct? About, um, net zero.
Yeah.
It, I, I actually think we should have a discussion about that when we get to.
Yeah, exactly, there are several that could delete and change, so I don't think it should even be discussed right now.
I'm gonna table these discussions then for a minute, and we're gonna go through on the specific goals that you've got. Deal with that first, we'll come back to the up-down votes on these particular items, just cuz that may change how we feel as we go through these specific goals. Okay? Um, working into this, again, no proposed status changes, lots of different kinds of comments, and that is true of many of these types, many of the transportation infrastructure projects, you're gonna see that with, with these. Again, some, some comments, invested maintaining transportation infrastructure, modding it, and that was the, the comment related to multimodal. Um, can we go ahead and make sure that that's multimodal? Uh, two-wordy redefine, roads and bridges, where are those at? Um, keep but remove protecting, so again, some very specific edits that we need in there. I don't know that any of those require an up-down vote yet, cuz we've got one of those at the beginning, and so we'll come back to that multimodal part. Moving through this. Um, we have one for the sustainable infrastructure funding, um, one to delete. Um, and again, some comments here, mission accomplished for tax increase, plan for long-term funding for infrastructure, create a three- to five-year plan. Again, some specific worries about how we might go about addressing that particular topic. One proposed status change, uh, in this case, related to deleting that. Don't know if that's, that's worth the, that's worth it, it's not worth it, okay. Moving on.
Which, which one anymore?
The first one.
This one right here, this is the one that we wanna use our save on. Um, effectively manage assets, develop and implement processes and plans to strategically track and maintain assets. Uh, so again, some of this was, can we move some of this to sustainability, should this be in finance? Is that where this correctly falls? In this case.
That's, that, that falls under public works, or that falls there.
It falls here, yeah.
They're, they're maintaining and everything, yeah.
Yep. So, so no proposed status, multimodal transportation. Uh, and then we've got some comments here, again, multimodal transportation, and this was, again, that comment at the beginning too, which is should these be combined? Um, or called out? So I think if we can come back to that one, cuz that's one of the, the initial ones that we had there, we'll come back to this discussion. Unless we need to have more discussion right here, while you can see the goal.
I would like to speak to this one just a little more broadly if I can, the, um, the, I don't know what the, I don't, I don't even know where to find the individual projects under these.
It's on the actual project page, I don't think it yet.
Uh, I'm just on the agenda here, but something I.
Okay.
And then these are the projects for.
Okay. Can you go back a little time?
Well, this may be a kind of a, more of a project level thing, but I just, I recently saw an article that Inglewood is, is tied with Denver for having the highest walk score in Colorado. I would like to beat them. So, I don't, this may be.
Beat Denver.
Beat, like, increase our walk score such that we have the best walk score in Colorado. I mean, that, I think that becomes both a, kind of a marketing tool and something, you know, bragging rights, and also, um, also improves the city in a meaningful way, so, um, like, I don't know whether, whether this is adding a new project in around that, or, um, or, uh, like, you know, analyze walk score and see what we need to do to increase that to sixty-two, instead of sixty-one, you know, just edge that up a little bit. Like, but this is, I saw, an area I would like to see prioritized, cuz I think we have a lot going for us on walkability in the metro area, in the whole state. And if we lean into this a little bit, we can be, you know, we can be a really special place. I think it really, really would make us unique, so this is one I'd really like to lean into, and maybe change the wording of to, you know, to emphasize that, or just, just put a priority level on it.
Interest in understanding metrics around the, the walk score and how we can go ahead and beat Denver. She doesn't love to beat Denver, let's go do that, right? Okay. So again, we'll come back to this as well, because this was one of those initial proposals in terms of separating it out, so we'll do an up-down vote on that. Um, but the, the comment about walk stories received and understood and, and noted. Uh, in this case, transportation safety, we've got, uh, some, some proposed status issues here as well, so how this looks great, should it be moved to safety, net zero does not work. Um, you know, through collaboration and thoughtful investments, strategic plan, continually reduce transportation-related fatalities, so again, some, some thoughts related to that. Anybody in proposed status, I'm gonna give you the three minutes to go ahead and talk about what this looks like. Transportation safety.
I've said this before, so I'll give the reader's digest version. I hate goals that are impossible to achieve. If you give me a goal to achieve that I can't hit, I'm not even gonna try. So that's what I don't like about Vision Zero. There is absolutely no way on God's green earth for us to go a single year with zero traffic fatalities in our city. That is an impossible goal, and I don't believe that it's realistic for us to put, or, or good for us to put impossible goals on our, on our strategic plans.
And I agree, look at the motorcycle riders, just this last summer, they drive like a bunch of idiots in the, in the.
And interesting statistics, Denver has implemented net zero, and their fatalities went up after they completed all of it. It just, it doesn't work, that's why I put that we need to design and maintain safe passage through, through Inglewood. Net zero, zero cannot do what we want it to do.
So is there a realistic goal that we can put up there on, you know, encouraging seat belts and helmets and stuff to reduce serious injuries and possible death?
Continuous reduction is possible.
And, and that's, I think we.
Net zero's the name, right?
Vision Zero.
Or Vision Zero, yeah.
Vision Zero. I think the, the reason they call it Vision Zero is to capture the imagination, that yes, someday maybe it's possible. It's a vision, it's not a, we're gonna do this next year, but we're looking long-term. And I actually do think it's, it's possible to reach for a city like Inglewood, to eventually reach a place of zero traffic fatalities. Think you, you know, if you build in all the traffic calming measures, slow traffic down on all of the major corridors, I think you could get, um, I think you could get there over the long run, maybe it's twenty, thirty years away. But I don't think we need to accept the status quo that moving around through our built environment just means people gotta die every once in a while, you know? Um, that's just a, that's a mentality that we have kind of accepted, and I don't think we should. I mean, we had several people, bikers, pedestrians and bikers get hit on Broadway and killed. The last year, I had a neighbor, one block over, his husband got hit in my neighborhood and killed. Um, this happens all the time, and we just kinda go, well, it's the cost of doing business, that's the cost of getting around in Inglewood. And Vision Zero, I think it captures my imagination, that someday we could get to the place where, where we don't have to live with that mentality anymore.
I think I would like to suggest that you are wrong in saying that we all think that's just the cost of doing business. A lot of times, they call accidents accidents for a reason, nobody planned to do it. But the, the issue with Denver, Denver has slowed all of the speed limits in Denver, and it has, the fatalities have increased, not decreased.
That's cuz lowering the speed limits doesn't actually slow people down. This is transportation, that's why it's in the transportation, infrastructure category, is because we have to actually do the, it's more hard infrastructure work to slow traffic down.
And I hope you're correct, I hope that happens. And until you get people to not drink and drive, until a whole lot of things happen, unfortunately. I, I don't know if it's called accidents, because people's poor choices are going to call crashes.
I think it's built into our language, that, the, the language, that we call them accidents every time.
And I don't, don't crashes a lot of times.
I don't think that's an appropriate thing to call a lot of.
No, there, there are, there are two accidents, and then I call them crashes, because people do things that they shouldn't have.
And, and also part of it's because our infrastructure encourage is going fast. And when your infrastructure encourages going fast, you're going to get it, that's not, maybe it's an accident from the point of view of the drivers, but it's, uh, it's what our infrastructure demands of people.
There's also the enhanced benefit of the infrastructure doing what it's fundamentally designed to do, which is get you from point A to point B in reasonably time manner.
Yeah, I agree.
And there is another thing that enforcement a lot of times will slow down traffic too.
Really?
Is this one that we could potentially delay a vote on? I, I tend to agree with remember Ward's initial comments on this. Um, appreciating other sentiment at the table. But I'm wondering if the, didn't we say earlier that we have a new transportation safety FTE that was just hired? And is this a goal that we could have that person listen to this conversation?
Actually, many of the projects in this area were delayed throughout the year because we don't, we didn't have a traffic engineer, and so, if you want to address it.
Yeah, so the, the position was approved in the 2024 budget, uh, we had it posted, uh, first week of January, and, and we're currently interviewing now. Uh, we have two candidates that are, are qualified to interview one, we have one, another interview next week. Uh, if we don't get any other applicants, then we'll move forward into the next phase of making an offer and onboarding. So we're, we're hopeful by the end of February, we've got a traffic engineer on board.
And then when, um, Chief, when you come and speak to us, I think you said in February, will part of the information you give us be the amount of tickets received and accidents and fatalities and stuff? Be part of that information, or is it just overall crime stats?
Yeah, we, we, Victor and I are, they're on February 12th again? That's correct, yeah, that's.
Okay, and will that information be part of it that we're discussing?
I'll, I'll have that.
Fantastic, thank you, so.
I'm gonna call the question and bring it to the vote here for a second.
I'll, I'll say one last thing, just because I've been spoken upon this, but I, I definitely wanna see this kept in. Keep in mind that we've had citizens come and speak, and they say that they want us to start looking at traffic, uh, uh, slowing measures within town and doing the infrastructure that's needed in order to get to, in order to improve getting around in the city without, uh, you know, having any additional fatalities. What, the hard part here is whether or not we're able to fund what the infrastructure. The hard part here is whether or not we're able to fund what the infrastructure projects that we need to do in order to improve the safety. That's gonna be the hard part, but I want us to focus on this as a goal, so I'll be voting against it.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanna weigh in as well. I think that this needs to stay. If you're not familiar with the Vision Zero, first of all, I don't think we should use Denver as our example for anything. We're doing what we've been here, but Vision Zero is a strategy, and it's a network, and it's based on best practices of improvement. And it does, the vision is that you go from thinking that traffic deaths are inevitable, to believing that they are preventable. And it's a systems-based approach that doesn't rely just on individual responsibility, but actually on design and, and app creation. And I think we can do a lot here, and I think removing a strategy and network approach would be a pretty significant step back at the exact moment when our citizens are asking us to do more, not less on this.
I'm gonna call the question to vote here, because we're.
Can I cash you in one last? You can cash him, I'm gonna take a vote here.
Take a vote.
Take a vote.
He's turning both of them.
I need, yeah, I want one final rant. Thank you. You know, we had a death because of a flood five years ago now, and we decided this was a big enough deal that we wanted to invest thirty million dollars to prevent that, to prevent a death, a one death like that from ever happening again in Inglewood. We get death after death after death in Inglewood. If we invested thirty million dollars in traffic calming measures, I guarantee you, we would prevent more than one death. So if you wanna talk about the best bang for your buck in order for saving lives, investment in slowing traffic down, traffic calming measures is, and I wanna say I'm very supportive of the investment in our flood reduction projects, too, so I'm not, you know, I voted yes on all of that. I'm saying if we wanna be consistent and say that we want to prevent deaths, accidental or, you know, preventable deaths from happening in our city, a massive investment in our transportation safety is the best place to put money. Thank you for the rant.
Absolutely, thanks for both your pieces.
That's a good rant.
Yeah, that was a good rant. So I'm gonna call it to a vote here. If you would like to delete, please give me a thumbs up if you're looking to delete, okay? We have another one in terms of modify. If you'd like to modify this goal as it currently exists, give me a thumbs up on that. Okay, we've got three that did not carry the votes. It stays as is for now. If we need to have further discussion, obviously. Let's make no passionate topic, we certainly had a lot of discussion around this one. Drinking water infrastructure, and so again, we've got this, the question came up, didn't we, didn't the previous council vote to put millions into our drinking water?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So yes.
Doesn't taste better yet, so we're working towards that.
It's working, we're getting closer.
I didn't think you were here, Peter. Just because Peter's quiet doesn't mean he's going. Let's not kick the beast here, little.
So, so I wanna limit this discussion, and I just wanna have this real quick so that we can keep going here, Tim?
I suggested everybody's okay with, do we do a break built in? Are we okay doing maybe one more, and then taking the quick break and then coming back to the last two? I'm good for one more.
Okay. Rolling. Let's see here, so breaking out this into two separate outcome areas. That's, that's the proposal on the table. Would you like it as two separate outcome areas? I wanna go ahead and do a thumbs up, thumbs down, and see if we're in the ballpark on this, because we've got three proposals we gotta work through. You're thoughtful on it, we've got two, we've got three.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm going for it.
Four, okay, so we have a discussion that we need to have on this, okay? Consider breaking out infrastructure and transportation into two separate outcome areas, that has gotten two thumbs up, or that's got three or four thumbs up here, so let's go ahead and have the discussion. You wanna weigh in?
Can I just offer a quick context of this? So the three enterprise funds, water, sewer, and storm, in twenty twenty-four, the total budget is a hundred and seven million dollars. And so as it looks, as it's a funding priority, it's a huge funded priority, those three enterprise funds.
Okay. Good context for it. So let's have this discussion again, I'm gonna limit it to three minutes, we're trying my best to, because we gotta keep going. We've got some other areas to cover here.
I'm gonna cash in your chips next.
I mean, we're separating it out, but let's recognize the implications of separating it out. This becomes a focus area, and this becomes the next focus area. You shifted one, now you're adding one, which means that that becomes funding priorities, staff, you know, there's other things associated with that. So just wanna call out us being very careful as we add an area in that that all of a sudden.
I'll give my two cents on why I think it's probably beneficial for us to break them apart. It's like, infrastructure or transportation is a massive. And when you combine the two, it just becomes a massive outcome, or outcome area. Earlier today, when I was kinda talking about IT, I was like, does it go under infrastructure? So I was just trying to, for me, like, if any citizen's looking into this, like, if we could delineate what infrastructure is versus what transportation would be, I think that that would make a lot more sense for anyone that is not involved in council, that has, that works on the strategic plan, they would have a better idea of where some of these things were at. So that's the reasoning why I wanna break it up, and thank you for.
And it helps new council members, or for those that are learning also, it just, yes, it, it helps, you know, I've used the umbrella analogy, it helps when you have the children to spread out a little bit to identify and understand, so.
And I'm probably going back to this, the next one I'm probably gonna say, well, it might have to be like transportation infrastructure as the outcome area or something along those lines, but I need, that's the reason behind why, yes, vote on that.
Okay.
I think the, agreeing with Mayor here, too, but also the idea that we have a funding, we have a nice funding stream for water, sewer, stormwater, and South Platte Renew, we have, you know, since they're enterprise funds. Transportation infrastructure doesn't have a funding stream like that, am I right?
Except for the sales tax for the street.
Okay, we have, we have a few million there for self-tax for streets, and we also have our capital, you know, capital improvement files, whatever, but to really think through how are we, if we're going to invest money in our transportation infrastructure, we'd be thinking about funding streams specifically for those things.
Okay. I, I feel like we've got it, so let's go ahead and try this out for a second here and do this vote again. Two separate goals, two separate outcome areas. I was on, I was on, just working. Two separate outcome areas for this, infrastructure, transportation. If you agree with that, thumbs up. The yeas have it, that will be two separate outcome areas as we do it, and we'll have to go through and parse out the different projects under each one of those with that. This one right here, proposal to merge existing goals, Mayor made a comment on that, did we, does this change as a result of what we just did right here?
It's a foregone conclusion now, those can't merge.
That's.
No, 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 no. Those are outcome areas.
Yeah, those are goals.
Those are goals.
One of them would be auto infrastructure, and one would be multimodal infrastructure, so this would be two goals under.
Are we okay with that? So it's an adjustment to wording, really, right? Instead of transportation, this becomes auto infrastructure, and this becomes multimodal infrastructure.
Vehicular.
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 That's like.
Are we, yeah, are we okay with that clarification right there, that we're separating those words out so that we're?
So are we counting bicycles and scooters and things like that?
Under multimodal.
They get more of. Or they're multimodal.
Yeah, multimodal. Yep, so we got a yes on that, so we'll separate those out, and that's vehicular, infrastructure versus, yep, and then move transportation safety to safety, up-down vote on that one.
I think, I think we're doing, breaking it out where it would be under transportation safety and under safety, isn't that what we discussed? It would be under both.
I think, I think there's still, I think it stays, the way that I understood it, it stays where it is, and it's worded the same way, but there's different.
And we were.
Department that are.
Safety also, yes.
No, not necessarily, did we?
I just made the comment, it is both, but we need to decide which one it goes to.
It has to go in one or the other.
Well, kinda going back to our earlier comment, so if we're gonna talk about this, I'm gonna keep it where it is, just because I think infrastructure, transportation infrastructure leads to better safety, and so that's the reason why I'm gonna keep it where it is.
That's where I went to, yeah.
And that makes sense to me, now that I understand it a little bit better.
We do have a table in the back of the plan, though, that cross-references, so we could cross-reference it in the back and say that it also ties into safety. Want us to do that?
Okay, and then I would like that.
Nick, can I just, just to make sure, I wasn't, I captured it correctly, so I have two separate outcome areas. The infrastructure outcome area now has five goals, reduce the risk of flooding, sewer infrastructure, sustainable infrastructure funding, effectively manage assets, and drinking water infrastructure resiliency, and the new transportation outcome area has three goals, vehicular infrastructure, multimodal. So be the infrastructure, transportation, infrastructure, and then transportation safety.
It's a goal under need.
Yeah, so those are the three goals under the new transportation.
Okay, yeah.
But should it be multimodal transportation or multimodal infrastructure?
Multimodal infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
The actual description of the goal is ensure access and increased opportunities for multimodal transportation. So that also includes things like weight finding, I don't know if we would consider infrastructure?
No, it is infrastructure, yeah, kinda.
You could also just call it multimodal, now it's under transportation, we don't have to say multimodal transportation.
Yeah.
I leave the extra word off and just go with multimodal for now, and then we can figure out if there needs to be an additional word to that. Because like you said, it's under it already.
Do we have to decide what the little logo's gonna be for? Can we talk about that? It's gonna be a like and a.
We're gonna do one more section here, and then we're gonna call that break, and then we're gonna, alright, do what we can here to keep moving. So again, we moved the entire goal, neighborhoods, which is now under our new header of community engagement, so we've got a different section for this now. So we've got a, we've got a comment here by both council members Wright and Russell to move neighborhood aesthetics to safety. Did you wanna comment on that?
Well, I don't know if it matters now, since we have a whole new.
Since it's under the community engagement part now?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, this was because of code enforcement, right?
That's right, this was, this was the code enforcement. Because code enforcement is responsible for a lot of things that impact neighborhood aesthetics.
Aesthetics, yeah.
Okay.
It can also form our community well-being, right? Because if, if it's broader things related to beautification generally, I agree, I don't think it makes sense under community engagement anymore, but.
I think I like community well-being for it, I think that makes sense. Since it's multi, you know, yes, it, you know, part of it is code enforcement, but part of it is these, the neighborhood resources grant, you know, beautification grants, and, and, you know, community gardens, I think it, there's a lot that is under here and that is associated with.
Code enforcement's one part of it, right?
Well, code enforcement wasn't listed anywhere on there, that was a question I asked. Where is code enforcement, so?
So, so let's just try and up-down on safety for a second here. Should this be moved to safety? If you agree it should be moved to safety, thumbs up. Okay, we've got one for the yes. So moving along, the now question is, there were some other suggestions of should this be moved to another area?
Community well-being, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's try an up-down vote on community well-being. If you agree it moves to community well-being, give me a thumbs up. Community well-being, that's four on community well-being, this goal moves to community well-being. Okay? Alright. Again, single council members proposing the status to delete here. Driven by constituents, not the city provide opportunities for neighbors to connect, so neighbor-to-neighbor connections. And related to that, driven by constituents, did you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, I just didn't know how much control over or charge the city actually has in making that happen.
Okay.
That seems to me, I feel like the intent behind that could live somewhere else, and we want to like foster that, but how much are we as a city directly impacting?
I think we're doing a lot of that.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's madly.
That neighborhood resources program, really, and I mean, the, the grants for parties, the community block, you know, block party trailer.
Okay.
I mean, we're not making it happen, but we're facilitating.
Yeah.
Facilitating rather, yeah.
Nick?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to mention some of these, you know, that you might not be familiar with, but here, to get to know your neighborhood grant, neighborhood improvement grant projects, the block party trailer reservations, the backyard movie ticket reservations, the snow buddy pairing, where residents will help.
I, I think it was a matter of me needing to understand it better, so I'm happy with deleting mine.
We're moving along, sounds great, and thank you.
One thing really cool on that, though, that I do think is, because the two key projects under this have been completed, I would love to see new projects based on a new strategic plan for neighborhoods, I think, as we move forward.
Okay, noted, yep. And this right here, community engagement just became its own focus area, so I think I'd like to just move on from this one if we're okay with that. Again, some comments there that might inform what we do with that community engagement piece. The move to safety discussion of neighborhood aesthetics, again, we just did some up-down voting, we moved this one, so this has been moved. Communication, no proposed status changes, again, this gets elevated to the community engagement focus area now, as a result of this as well. And then the comment here to delete this, neighborhood equity. So we've got two in the delete category, three minutes, go ahead and, if you'd like to see your piece on this right here.
How are we getting the equity across neighborhoods? I just didn't understand how we were getting at that. And also, based on our prior discussions, we have a system in place where neighborhoods have to decide to unite together and create a neighborhood group just to get signage, so seems a little contradictory to me, but again, I, it might just be a matter of me understanding this one better.
I think this means that we have neighborhood program activities across the city, that they're not concentrated just in like a blockier areas or the downtown, but that we are activating, it says, celebrating it across the city, it's equity across, you know, the, we're paying just as much attention to people on the hill as we would to people on the alleyway, or something.
But how are we actually doing that?
I mean, leaving the neighborhoods to themselves to like promote themselves and bring themselves up, I guess that's where I get a little stuck.
Part of the strategic plan to say that like, we're trying to, like, recruit more neighborhood leaders, and I would like to see a goal that every neighborhood in the city has a neighborhood program, like that's how, that's where I think we're going, because key projects underneath this.
And what those are in the plan, did you just say this, hope recognition events for the reopening of Baker Park was one? Because again, that's been an underserved neighborhood of the city, create a program to recognize and celebrate different areas of the city. So those were the projects under that one.
Under neighborhood equity?
Right.
I think there's definitely more we can do here that I'm hopeful we can hear more about in the neighborhood strategic plan.
But also, I think Chrissy could probably talk to it, right, in terms of what, because we're up to twenty now, but what was it originally? Was it there only like three or four? Well, no, like early on, I think it was only three or four neighborhoods that had.
So when we first turned up the neighborhood group leader.
Yeah.
So when we first adopted the map, I, yeah, we, we were stuck out three for quite some time, and, you know, with her networking and the neighborhood nights events, I know that's been one of the primary places which she's been able, been able to identify new group leaders. Again, connecting with council member Wright recommending, you know, a neighborhood group leader, so again, I think we are at that point.
Yeah. Because originally, yeah, it was like pushing forward still.
So it sounds like we're, okay. I'm gonna do the up-down vote on this, whatever, if you think it should be deleted, give me a thumbs up, otherwise, thumbs down, or no thumbs, that'll be fine. We're gonna leave it in, with recognition and understanding that we wanna be more specific about some of the items and how we're going about that, for sure.
I, I think some neighborhoods can have to be kept ordered to members to.
To be able to build that.
This is our break, so we're gonna go ahead and take a, Tim, Tim, did you want some?
Yeah, just before we take a break, so this, the neighborhood section is now per council direction, community engagement. So the three goals that we, that I have captured are neighbor-to-neighbor connections, communication, and neighborhood equity. Is that correct, and were there any others that we wanna?
So there's a couple that we talked about moving, right, so community engagement in other places, I would like to see communications been built out a little bit more, and like other activities, like municipal council, or like, the other, and the ambassador program, like consolidating certain things, and like, how were, how were we reaching out? The thing that we don't have yet that I would like to see added is an events strategy, a little bit more like holistic. Right now, we do a lot of events, and I think the events team does a really wonderful job, and there's a decision point about like, are we doing twenty, like, okay, events a year, or should we be doing like seven incredible events a year, right? And like, I think that's, those are unclear to me if we're spending that kind of time in the right places. And I've heard some recent feedback from some citizens who have said, yeah, I think every city event I go to is like, just businesses asking me to spend money, like, what are we doing for communities that's maintaining free and activities for children, and I just think like, things that tie in, the national night out, and all the other events we're doing, how are we thinking more strategically about, because as engagement opportunities, like what we've done to celebrate Inglewood is incredible, what are the other things that we're not thinking about? So I think that this probably, since it's a new area, will need some work, and to think about what are the right projects and goals under it.
I think to that point, a study session on this new section, it will put everything that you've moved into there,
Yes.
but then also have a study session focused on what additional goals do you want to stick with that work?
And is there, is there an events-specific out, uh, goal?
Not really.
I mean, okay, so I mean, I think that's one we can settle on today, is we need an events. I mean, okay, so I mean, I think that's one we can settle on today, is we need an events goal.
Oh, yeah, and you know, um so, let me ask. The things like the Eaglewood block party, and then the, um is it neighborhood nights at the different parks, are those already scheduled for the year? What about sending like a magnetic calendar that could go on everyone's?
Did you have magnet?
Yeah, so magnet on your fridge, where everybody knows ahead of time for the year, that it's right there, that could go out, come down to them.
That's a great project.
You know, something like that, where they can kind of head, and there's our events, I mean, just something to think about.
And I'd love to see metrics really around are we engaging a community, and how many community members or citizens attend into an event, or feel like they're interested, are they, they're engaged in that way? Because like one of the metrics right now around community events is that a hundred percent of the events are on the city website, like, yeah, but that, we should be doing that too. Um I, I'd like to see kind of push the envelope a little bit more on that.
So, we're at ten minutes for break here, fifteen after, we're fourteen after, we will reconvene, so stretch it out here for a minute.
Ten minutes?
So what's that one?
Fourteen after.
Fourteen after. Ten minute break. You know what, I want twenty.
I think like eight.
You said seven, so February, that is, I want twenty. I want twenty.
Twenty seven.
Uh, you want twenty seven? I don't know. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna give my, she came up with that. Theory. Well, it's, yeah. Having a very better way to play. Yes, he had notes. Those are the, so, I agree with this. But I think they want it to be celebrated, and what am I, be a beauty of transportation, because you're like normal. They, they want it separated. I agree with that still. But there were some safety programs in there, but, well, just like there's conservation programs. So you're right. Yeah. Interestingly, this is the way it was though, it, it, this plan started with the transportation, it's like. So. I, I agree with what you're saying. Like you, you understand what they're saying, it's so gay. And I think, you can't blame community, it's so all the fuckers. But then you would have subdivisions with some divisions, and our, our legislature doesn't have that. That was a good point. It's one of those where we might disagree with council, but it's their plan, so.
But I don't know if they really follow the. That's, if you present that to them, we. Just as an option, don't worry. Maybe, but I'm gonna say, if they say no, we want. Cause that's what I think people get hung on, because even, even hearing them say, we, well, we gotta drop the word infrastructure, but I'm saying transportation is infrastructure. Because we're trying to, um. Two different types of infrastructure, which is all infrastructure, which is real version.
Thoughts on that, man? I mean, I agree, it's all infrastructure. They seem to have one of our real focus on transportation. As it's an outcome very high, but. I mean, I agree with you.
From a confusion perspective, even in the discussion, transportation and water and all the utilities. And fiber is all infrastructure. It's just different subcategories of infrastructure.
Sure.
So the, so the big community, so the big overarching. What it, what it focuses on.
Uh but infrastructure also includes things like IT?
No, I mean, that's a third category.
Right.
You have water, transportation, and all these other subcategories, like IT, and fiber, and infrastructure buildings, and things like that. Cause we have, we have a whole set of roles, dude.
That's right, and that should be part of the new infrastructure section as well, though, is taking into consideration, you know, those other parts.
And right now.
Yeah, so right now you have transportation out by itself, but it's still infrastructure, it's just now, it is. And that's why it was confusing even when it was being talked about, is because it's a form of infrastructure, it's just called transportation. And so, so what we're, what we're trying to say is, is transportation, we were trying to drop the word infrastructure, because we're trying to be fit with this new category of infrastructure. We create this new category of infrastructure, but transportation is infrastructure. So the category is infrastructure, and it's all these subsets of it, basically water transportation, and all the buildings, IT, all these other smaller things. Just seems like, I think that's the, I think that's the.
You think that it might even others?
I think it may even lead to waters, well.
Why is that working out?
Well, I, I mean.
Sorry.
Hey, you know what, I'll, I'll do it, whatever you say.
Strongly, as we're in the middle of it. Because I, I, I don't like, I don't know the new laws or the work that, so we don't have that expertise.
Which of, because it, I mean, is it that transportation will give more emphasis than say water, infrastructure?
Or less, or?
It's that, it's that somehow people think of transportation as not infrastructure.
You're not, you're, you're right.
Because we just created something that's called infrastructure, and then we call it something that's transportation.
No, I think it should be utilities and, uh, and, uh, transportation, you're in the word infrastructure.
Me too.
Oh.
Oh.
But then, but then you've got fiber and buildings, right?
We don't have an IT section.
But we don't have that.
So we didn't divide them out by departments?
So, no, and we don't want to do that.
No, no, I'm not suggesting we do that. Because if we divided them out by department, we would say the stormwater was under transportation. What I'm saying is, water, so with water, there's transportation, so that. So that, it's just, and, and the reason why I didn't speak up in the moment is because, it took that discussion as a simple, Victor is like, well, wait a minute. The issue is it's all infrastructure.
Because we can also, one, I think that's on transportation, and if it makes it easier for them to keep up with that, it's its own section.
You all can sort it out, right?
So if you wanna fall, then you're not, it's a grant, it's a, yeah. And then, yeah, everything else.
He's saying there's to be infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, water infrastructure, stormwater infrastructure.
Yeah, but then we had, we had all over another level.
Let's flip format.
Higher, higher, higher. Now, we're just starting.
No, I, I just, I, in this question. And so that's where, that's what.
I think it is, but.
That's good for your health.
Yes, it's great.
Just don't forget that.
I don't disagree at all.
For some reason, I can't do this much.
So you take, so you take the, the federal infrastructure bill.
My knees.
It's predominantly transportation infrastructure.
Okay, one minute.
Oh, so. I think I've done that.
Yeah, I'm working here. Alright. Alright, now that we're working on wind, everything.
What I do?
I'm gonna apologize. For what? For my comment earlier? Yeah. The water one. I felt bad, that's what I meant.
Do not feel bad, we get it.
He took, he took it first, man.
I know he did, I know he did.
Oh, I did not.
That's all, right, immediately after, did you see how he was like, counting down on his teeth, trying to, maybe even worse. Yeah, they're like, mm, mm, mm.
That's just normal typing.
Alright, Joe, I appreciate you.
But I tried to.
I was gonna say, I see you typing like that during city council meetings too, so.
Yeah, I got these, I got these big like gorilla claws.
So, moving into the safety section here, we're gonna be a little over time today, I'm doing my best to get us through where we need to go, but we're having some great discussion.
Yeah, moving on over time?
Well, I can, I can shorten it if you want. Good, 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 next, okay?
I'm the only one that used my chips.
You use all your chips, like, I'm just taking everything here. I'm taking chips, like, I got, I got three pawns up here, I got a bishop, I'm rolling. Safety, proposal to add the new goal of effective patrol execution. So I'll, I'll let you take that in for a second here, and I want, uh, council member Anderson to go ahead and have a moment, so tell us about what they're thinking.
Um, yeah, I'm trying to remember, I think it was, yeah, it was an idea I had. It seemed like a missing piece in the section that we're, you know, are we actually executing on our. You know, the patrol policing aspect, I don't know, I have anything else I wanna say, that it looked like something that was missing in the plan.
Can you not misunderstand how that's a new goal versus just something that we should be doing?
Well, because of our goals, right?
So you, so you mean, just.
I think the, you know.
Proactively, um enforcing the laws as they are on the streets, patrols on the streets?
Yeah, I've, you know, noticed, but, but it seems like we have, I don't, the. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but this is my perception, is that we have areas around the city that grow and become problem areas when there's clear violations of laws going on. And we're not, you know, effectively just nipping it right when we start to see those problems crop up. So that's why I thought this is something that could use a little more emphasis.
I, I hesitate a little bit, because when I read this, it gives me. Then the negative feeling about our police department not doing what they need to be doing around this. Where did, yeah, the goal that you want?
I don't wanna be, I'm not trying to be critical of the police department, but I do think that that's in the background, I think there's, there's room for improvement here, you know? That's why I put it in there.
So, can I ask a question, cause I actually agree with that. Does that mean like when they're driving around the city on patrol, they may see things that need to be addressed? And they need to address those rather than just going on calls proactively?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Proactively enforcing, not so reactive.
When they see a law, when they see a law being broken, they, you know, as long as they're not actively responding to another call, they pull over and, and, and enforce it, you know?
I feel like this would probably be part of your conversation around like funding, headcount, priorities. Uh, what would the projects and the metrics under this be? I'm not opposed to it, it being increased, but I, before I add it, I'd want to understand. More about what we'd be doing, so I'd be open to another conversation about it, and then potentially adding it.
Oh, I would like, I mean, to me, that's, I run over to staff, what are the appropriate projects that would go, go into this, I don't know that, I don't have enough knowledge to be able to understand. This, at a high level, city council level, this is something I think could be improved.
And my question would be, Chelsea, where would funding fall into not proactively? Um enforcing the law, if you're, you know, you're patrolling or whatever, and you're seeing laws being broken and not enforcing them?
Right, that is already an expectation I have of our policy toward, and so, for me to understand why that's not happening, and we would add it, I would wanna understand. The root causes of that, and then be clear about what, what the goal would associate, if the goals are headcount or something else, and like that, or the, the root clauses. I would have that conversation, I guess I'd advise you that's not here, so, I just not ready for this just yet.
Chief, do you mind if I ask you to like weigh in on this, or no? Do you have anything to add here, or any comments on what you've heard?
Yeah, there, there's a lot of layers to discuss, the discussion staff, staff, and certainly a lot of the, uh, the call out, the not available or unobligated things. That officers have during their shift, be proactive versus reactive, so there's a lot of, uh, a lot of layers to that, there's, you know, the law book is this thick. So, you know, when you say proactive for laws, you know.
Which laws?
Prioritize which ones you're looking for, cause there's certain, there are a lot, I think I have a pretty good understanding, you know, meeting the community, meeting the guys, what, what you're looking for, but. You know, there's better to find those as well, so there's a lot, a lot of layers to it, I don't disagree with that. I think, uh, you know, there's room for that, and, and, you guys are interested.
Okay. I'd like to take us to a vote here on this one, of whether to include this as one of our safety goals. So if you would like to have this added as a safety goal listed under this?
Actually, one question, chief, you're gonna be coming in front of council soon, right, talking about policing strategies, or no?
Uh, traffic safety comes up, uh, February twelfth.
Okay. So, okay.
Victor, yeah, it's actually, uh.
And, and just for my viewpoint, I'm gonna vote no on this, but it's gonna be contingent on this meeting that we have on the twelfth, okay? And then maybe I changed my mind at that point.
Just a quick, the meeting on the twelfth is gonna be really focused on transportation, traffic, yeah.
I'd be open to having, I think we need to have a conversation about this, yeah, cause it, it does come up.
Okay, so maybe this is a discussion to be had another time as a potential addition to this? Cause it seems like that might be the way to, so, council member Russell.
I would, I'm just gonna say, I, I think that, that this is important. And if there are issues with, we need to increase the amount of police officers, then that's something that council has to address. But I think this is something that we could proactive ready to, and, and then address the other issues.
I mean, for me, this, this, uh, it, it captures one of the fundamental reasons why we have a police department, right? Like, we, when, when I look at the safety goals, I see a lot of nice to haves and a lot of interesting things, and there's not. There doesn't seem to be a ton of emphasis on reason why we have a police department, which is the most important part of having a police department. You know, it's the, it's the, I know I keep going to this well, but the, what happens when you call nine one one aspect, it's that, how safe do people, people feel when they travel through our town? It's the, how often do you see something happening in broad daylight, like the, you know, the drug deal on the corner of Broadway and Tuffs? Because people know that they can get away with it, right? Um, you know, that kind of thing. The, the more we can sort of craft the goals around safety to tamp those things down. I think the better off we are, and the closer we are to what the citizens actually expect us to do.
And just to be clear, I a hundred percent agree with you, I'm just not confident that this is the right goal. Is the goal, increase the feeling of safety in the city, and then there's projects underneath that that include effective patrol, that might be what we do it.
I concur.
That's why I think I, I need a conversation before I'm writing my best.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm gonna call this specific item to a vote, recognizing that there may be additional discussions or other things that we should add in potentially, but. This was the one put out there, effective patrol execution, if you would like it included in the plan, thumbs up. Yeah, one, two, three, that doesn't have it, we're gonna leave it out for now, recognizing there may be further discussion about some of these items being added, and certainly a great discussion on this. Moving forward, um, we have single delete, single delete right here, um, we have some questions related to this right here, um, and some suggestions, best practices. Uh, we need to do what's best for, for, for us in Eaglewood. What does reviewing actually get us, these best practices, so what's the practical implementation of reviewing best practices, and how does that actually show up and manifest itself?
When did that actually, when do we take an action?
Right, what's the action behind the research here?
Yeah, that was my comment.
And that's a little more of the, okay, let's talk about those details behind this particular item right here. In this one right here, we've got, uh, building in place, safety, ensure the safety of public buildings and spaces. No comments, a proposed status of deletion, strong things?
I, I don't feel super strongly about it, just for me, again, was a no winner, that that's what we should be doing, and so I'm not sure why it. Is stated specifically as a law.
Okay.
Is this part of what, um, she did with parks and rags, and with, um, Victor, you know, um, perfect examples, putting those gates. In the parking structure, so people can't jump at you, so it, it was what, sixty to seventy percent completed, is this?
Exactly, in fact, it says, they, the only project under building in place safety is implement the recommendations of the seventh ed audit with available funding and staffing resources. So it's all those things. with available funding and staffing resources, so it's all those things that are trying to make this building safer.
Okay, so, can we put like a side note on this, that, you know, in progress, you know, and whatever percent, um, complete?
Yeah, we can make some reflections on that, I'm sure, um, on that, but absolutely, that is what this one is about, is, is making that, the, the changes that you're already going through right now, and in the process of doing. Public safety services, invest in high quality policing on the public safety services, some comments here, um, distinguish between policing and other services, what happens if we don't, what, what happens if we don't hit our goal? So some things for staff to answer related to that particular item, but no objections or movements that we're asking for on that one. Um, again, goal, policing policies and legitimacy, uh, collect data, and then again, some proposed modifications of questions. You know, what are we doing, what we are doing is not working, uh, I don't like the legitimizing the role comment, so there's some comments related to how this is specifically worded that may need to be addressed.
Do you mind if I ask that question, because chief, you, you have that as part of your science as well, is that just standard boilerplate legitimizing the role of police?
Yeah, it, it's, uh, language in the industry for legitimacy, so, I mean, we can, I could recraft that if it's.
No, it's fine, I just.
A little awkward, I, I agree, it's a tad awkward trying to understand that, I could get, um, change that.
Okay.
I think some of that is, I mean, in 2020, it was, police got really delegitimized, and then I think there's been a recovery since then, so maybe it's.
It, it came out of the police force task force, that was very, that they used.
Okay.
And that, that, um, that task force, is it even around anymore?
No, it's not, it was just for that repair and, and.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and, and responding to emergencies, effectively prepare for and respond to emergencies, reevaluate response times, and establish policies that were lower the response times. So again, some real specifics that we're interested in around that.
And, and I think that is a very important goal, I know that there are several of us that are concerned, and it's not so much the response times of police, and I guess it is under safety, but it would be the, um, and I don't know if it's another goal or category that we need to look at, maybe this is something that I need to wait on, the, um, response times when you call 911, and we have, it goes to Denver, um, so I don't know if that.
That's for fire, urban, yeah.
Yeah, fire, urban, and that, so it's probably something I need to put in the parking lot. Now, it's, so.
Okay.
And, and I guess.
In terms of prioritization, I do wanna get to that part of the exercise today, because I do think that's really valuable for us to do some voting in terms of priorities related to what's being crafted right here, because it'll help us really highlight and emphasize some of those things that we feel are top of the list out of all these goals. So I definitely wanna make sure that we get that chance to do that today. Communication, uh, communication and community engagement, so now we have a community engagement focus area, we have a community engagement safety goal as well. Does this need to move? I know it doesn't have a proposed status, but given that we have.
Sorry, this was somehow inadvertently left off of their worksheets, that's why you don't see any comments.
Oh, okay. Would you like to comment? But, but we do have an area related to this specific topic, now the question is, does it make sense to keep where it's at? Move it, potentially, to the community engagement newly developed outcome area?
And this is specifically to the police's engagement with the community, I assume?
Yeah.
It does seem to be that way, yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
I kinda like it where it's at.
Yeah, it's important.
I disagree, I think it should be under, since we're aiming for that interdisciplinary thing, you know? Safety should be a part, safety should be a part of community engagement, and so, I think it should be subsumed under that, and place that Crystal can work with communications department to communicate throughout the engagement.
But if it's specifically coming from the police, shouldn't it be under safety if the police are communicating it?
But is it increasing safety, or is it a new community area?
I think if it was coming from the police, and the police are communicating it, it would increase safety. If the police are saying, give in tips on how to prevent your car from being broken into, and they're communicating at, let's say, neighborhood nights, you know, make sure that you don't make valuables in your car, make sure that you're walking your car, maybe keeping your porch light on, and these are the tips, would the community be likely to take those tips? Use them from the police, or from another group within the city?
Yeah, the police would still be executing the program, it's just, it's just where it lives on the paper, really.
Yeah, I think it, uh, we have a whole outcome areas specifically for community engagement, why wouldn't we?
I'm trying to think of it from a citizen's point of view, if they were looking at this document, where would they expect to see? Communication and communication, community engagement.
Well, I know, but I'm just thinking, but if they were, where would you expect to see it?
I just, I mean, to me, this is more of like an emergent, like, urgent situation type.
Right.
Communication versus communication and community engagement. Maybe the name of the goal, or what it's called?
Can I, can I ask the chief to weigh in for that?
He's put it up in also.
Chris, I can add a sidebar, but there's actually two parts of there, if you look at it, one is reporting on incidents, real time road closures, you know, from car accidents. That's immediate, I think that should come from the police quite possibly. The second part is more about strategy, informational stuff, and, and, uh, Chris and I, you know, things like that, and, and, you know, both of us have a city team.
But that's national, right now, COVID.
We're thinking of separating those out?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, I would be on board with that.
But what about, um, like the incident at Felby Park, and the shooting? The police did run that whole community engagement down there, um, which was about an incident that occurred, and to prepare for the neighbor, or prepare the neighbors for what went on, I think that's definitely.
That is right, it's also part of a lot of pulling those neighborhood meetings together, it's a collaboration with the neighbors.
She and Crystal did that for the building, that one?
I think so.
And the, and the drug counter one?
Oh, it's just Crystal now, you're right.
It was just Crystal on the building?
Is she in PD, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the police department facilitated that there.
I think it does need to stand or save.
So I think there were two different things, we were separating was one thing, and then.
We have two suggestions that you're just bringing up, which is, you know, they were suggesting back here to separate this out potentially as an item, there's an element of this that is the more community focused side of this, and then there is the safety communication during events, and road closures, those kinds of emergency events, those could be separated out, because we've got them merged together here, so we can separate out the community side, that's more of the proactive and, and more community engagement. Can I get a, if, if we feel okay about the separation of those two, the safety piece can stay under here, the direct safety piece, then we can move that other piece. Can I get a thumbs up vote on that, if that feels okay?
On separating?
On separating them out?
Okay.
Okay, feeling okay about that, that got the ayes.
The two separate goals in safety, one that's.
No, no, one goal in safety that encompasses just the.
Incident.
Incident communication.
Yes.
Yep.
Community engagement piece goes in that, too.
Yep, and then the community piece of.
Proactive.
Yes. Proactive safety messaging, and those messages will go under, yeah. So we'll separate out the function, recognizing that those, the people doing the functions are still gonna be safe, it's just where they live, it's where they live at. Um, and sustainability. Yeah, see?
People are your kids, you're fair.
I'd just like to say, how about that picture?
You love that picture?
Peter's actually who you are.
That water looks like it's getting sprayed.
This is the new wastewater treatment plant, uh, no.
Hey, you came out, you met, your glasses match your best.
Well, no, I have to, all blue, it's always blue.
Uh, sustainability has got a lot of comments on it here, I'm gonna do my best to effectively facilitate this as we can, but I'll say this, lots of individual single comments related to specific items underneath the overall plan. So I'll say that there's a lot going on inside the sustainability space that is evident, um, in terms of this. Um, I'm gonna move this for a second here and say there were some suggestions listed for me to go ahead and put out to you, these were the sustainability commission suggestions, and so I just want you to have a moment to review those, um, I know it was part of the packet, but take a second to take a look at those if you'd like, um, and review those, and then we'll go to the suggestions of the major proposals, um, in the section here itself. So I just, we've had some discussion about several of these items already, so that's good, multimodal transportation being one of those things, and now we're connecting. And so these were, consider moving the existing goals, built environment and infrastructure should move to infrastructure, which is now infrastructure, so we've got that one. This is a question that was brought up by two council members, um, comments around that, three minutes on that. The built environment and infrastructure goal, let me pull it up here real quick, here it is right here. Can you take a read of what it looks like?
This, for me, I'll say, this, and again, as a late listen, felt like it would make more sense under infrastructure than the program that we run under our sustainability program, uh, which they just don't have as much oversight over.
Okay. Do we need to have any other discussion about this before we're doing a vote related to?
I almost think the goal needs to be rewritten.
Okay.
Because the individual projects themselves are a sustainability component, should be, should live under the outcome. Because I don't see these actually falling under utility infrastructure or vehicular transportation.
So it's not under transportation, it's not under infrastructure, or two focus areas, it is under, the projects underneath this are specific to sustainability?
Right.
You know, the one thing that I see here now under the built environment and, and infrastructure, a community that can perceive, withstand, adapt to, and recover from adversity, that, that goal says to me, it probably belongs under safety and emergency management plan, um, because it's, well, I guess it can mean several different things, it can be.
Community engagement, or?
That was community resilience, not built environment infrastructure.
Right.
Oh, there was a typo in there.
It was, the same description was included for two of those.
Ah.
Okay, so what is this one supposed to do?
Uh, it's on the screen.
Okay. Okay, that is different than this.
Yeah, it is.
I think the mayor's point is correct, I, I did go back and look at the projects when I was putting in my comments, so I'm gonna have to pull my, you know, comment out, and I think he's right, maybe infrastructure is just the wrong word here.
Yeah. So maybe we need a rephrasing of this particular goal, so that it reflects more accurately what's happening in terms of the sustainability projects underneath it, as opposed to moving it to infrastructure or something like that, or some, some rephrasing might help us clarify the sustainability nature of this versus the infrastructure nature of this.
Correct.
Okay. Um, in that case, do we need to vote on this, or is that an acceptable edit for us?
Yeah.
Does that feel okay? I'm getting general assention, we'll go with that. This one right here, um, so in this case, they're, if, we're gonna leave it as built environment and infrastructure under sustainability for now, recognizing that we're gonna change some of the language around it, so that it's more obvious that it's sustainability related and not infrastructure related. So, feeling okay there? Okay. Air quality, we've got three on the delete category, so I wanna have three minutes of discussion around this particular topic, why should this be deleted?
Personally, there's not a whole lot I think we can do for the air quality, we're using somebody else's measurements, correct? It's not, um, we haven't put the measurements in our city, is that?
And so in terms of what we're doing around air quality, so this encompasses both indoor and outdoor, so indoor, a lot of that can be accounted for, for through programs with just like the materials that we're using, and then, um, outdoor, we have partnered with other local governments to join Clean, which is the Colorado Local Entity Air Network, and these are specific, um, air sensors throughout the community that the residents can actually tap into to see what the air quality is specific near some of their parks, so we have them near, um, the Griselda and near Christian Park, kind of based on high congestion areas. So a lot of this deals with education and outreach, because I totally agree, we can't do anything about ozone, that's, that's a front range issue, so mainly education.
And then indoor air quality, are we doing it for city buildings, or, um, is it for planning for future development, or what is it?
So right now, the project in the plan, the project in development, it's broad, it doesn't specify, it just says investigate education and outreach around bad indoor air quality, so it could be both, you all wanna focus on what that's still in, but it's just general right now.
Okay, and it wouldn't necessarily be private homes, as far as indoor air quality, would be more like city hall, or?
Well, the education could be for private residents to consider, right, like, these are some hazards that you might want to consider, but it wouldn't be anything of folks going in their home, or anything just purely education.
Right, I mean, I guarantee to you, people that have allergies have already done that in their own home, and so, um, okay, well, is there really very much control other than education that we have on this?
So I can give one example, this is an education piece, but for the city of Sheridan, we just launched a, um, uh, loan program for air quality monitors that, um, residents can check out, it was kind of a citizen science of putting that empowerment in their hands, so that's an actionable project, but again, that's education.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So could it be wording, maybe, you know, improve public health outcomes through better air quality? There's.
Air quality education?
Right.
Yes, I mean, there's nothing that we can to give everybody a plan to improve that air in their homes, you know?
Plans are supposed to help, I guess.
Yeah, now, obviously, I was a little bit confused based on the fact that I was asking for more actions, in terms of like my comments, so I think that wording on it probably is what we need to change.
I mean, it just, most of the high winds are all the time to blow, you know, the warm cloud out during the winter, there's not a whole lot we could do, so it's either we need to get rid of it, because there isn't anything we could do, um, or different wording.
I'm fine adding just the word education at the end.
So I'm gonna start with that edit, and then we'll come to the delete edit, if that one doesn't pass. If you agree that this should just be changed to, uh, through better air quality education, that would be the addition there?
Yep.
If we're thumbs up for that, let's do that, and we've got four on the education piece, so let's add in that clarification, education's the word we need there, and we'll leave the goal in as it stands with that one modification to it.
And, and can I, before we do this, can I, I don't know, but before we walk off this and don't delete it completely, can anyone spit off how much through mailings or education, um, it could potentially cost the city? If we're doing mailings or, um, the, do you know how shit, how much Sheridan is spending in this, and it was, um, smaller than us now?
Do you think their education in total?
Yeah, their materials and stuff like that, just average.
So, what helps is leveraging the clean cohort, because they supply funding for the communities to, about seventeen hundred each year to do outreach, um, and then for me, at least with the air quality education, I really lean into communications and the rec center to kind of promote education through there. So at least what I found, it doesn't cost much at all, um, but that's just my own experience.
It's something we're not doing to rec mail pieces for that, so social media, city facility, posters. We have quality monitors on the screens of the rec center, and it's also on the city website, that's how we've been doing it.
Okay, all right, that's what I need to do, thank you.
We've handled both of these, moving on to community resilience. We've got many comments related to this, um, so again, a, a delete comments, um, and we've got what community resilience means, we're defining what that looks like here as well. Um, I want you to take a second to read through, because there's a variety of comments there, related to this one, and I just wanna have three minutes of discussion around it based on the number of comments that we have. So, we certainly have a number of them, and does anybody wanna sort of maybe speak to, this could be, we've got moved to safety.
Well, to me, I'll, I'll just speak up, uh, mine's more of a communication piece to it, so I'm almost wondering that this need to go under wellbeing? I, to me, this is, yeah, this is all encompassing for not only residents, but also businesses, so I, I'm not sure if it really falls under sustainability.
I can, I can see it moving to wellbeing.
I'm looking at the individual projects, and I understand why it stays here, but it almost feels like there needs to be a rewording of the goal then, potentially.
Did you wanna comment?
Yeah, I just one comment, so this is the only section where we address climate change mitigation. Yeah, I just one comment, so this is the only section where we address climate change mitigation and adaptation projects, um, so I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I might get here.
But just reword what this goal is? Because is it really, if I'm looking at the key projects, is it really a community that can foresee, withstand, adapt to, and recover from adversity?
Maybe it's climate resilience, which may be community resilience, I don't know, like we can. Again, like.
I almost feel like we need to have that goal, so. So, I almost feel like we should have that goal, a community that can foresee, withstand, adapt to, and recover from adversity, but have different projects under that? And have that fit under community wellbeing. Because.
And then the thing is, it's, I think we should be more specific.
Yeah.
It's not, we need more city, we're talking about climate.
Climate.
So like, they just is, it's not specific.
Cause when I, I didn't have this, when I was reading it, I was thinking so much more than climate. I mean, I, I was thinking other emergencies like a flood or a lizard, you know? Which I guess would be climate, yes, so, which makes me think now, where's all that fall under? That's further discussion, so this would be more climate, the wording needs to be changed, because as a citizen, that's confusing.
I, I will also just say, like, in general, all of our goals, I think, could be more specific, more measurable, have better time, like, bounds on them. Um, I think that's just like, we're on this journey of a strategic plan in our city, and I think we've been walking and we're ready to start running. Um, we're not word switching all of them today, but I would like to see, like, by this date, we will accomplish this, you know, a little bit more specific. And I think they're, they're pretty broad right now, which I don't think sets us up for success always.
Right, and, and, and I agree, it needs to be, if you were first day new resident to Inglewood, coming on the website, tweeting stuff. You need to be able to read and understand what all of it means, and even myself, who's been in Inglewood for a long time, reading some of this, I was like, huh? So, um, I think it needs to be, um, much more, uh, for your first time, I guess, the best way to put it is, other words, words in my mind, I don't know.
And really, the granularity in terms of what you all are talking about is in the projects, so these goals are intentionally broad, so that we can then put projects under them. But to Chelsea, your point, I think we can add some of those timeframes better. But to Rita and Kim's point about emergency management, we do have a goal in safety around emerg- developing, you know, our emergency management system, so.
What's a little tricky about resilience is that for several years, there's been a national movement for resiliency to kind of be almost interchangeable with emergency management at the local level. However, in the state of Colorado, their resiliency office is explicitly related to climate change, which is really why, I think it ended up here and why we kind of focused on that. So it's really up to you to decide how you determine, how you define resiliency.
Yes, the wording, yeah, the wording for that needs to be changed.
So with that, with that understanding, there's some wordsmithing that needs to be done here, some editing in order to make sure that it's clear that this is climate resiliency or climate-based resiliency or something to that effect. Are we okay to, can I get a thumbs up to keep this goal? Okay, we've got the votes to carry it with some edits, potential suggested edits related to this.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, economic resilience, um, uh, again, a local economy that can foresee with, with, withstand, adapt to, and recover from adversity. Same comments, so a lot of similar comments here related to, to what it is we're thinking.
Sorry.
Um, but again, we've got a number of different comments, uh, a proposal to delete, so we'll go ahead and do three minutes on this real quick.
Is this related to climate change also?
Not necessarily. Some of it is.
Green insi- green business program.
Okay.
Provide assistance to local businesses in meeting state mandates such as a ban on single-use plastic bags and, um, pending ban on styrofoam containers.
Yeah, so it is specific to sustainability.
So these are all sustainable. It's another word, um.
So my question on this would be, how much does it cost businesses in Inglewood to implement the things that I know?
We actually created, so some of the, mostly the other state mandates, but we'd like to create a local grant program.
Yeah, so for the one about the, uh, styrofoam and plastic bag ban, that is a state ban, that's not city mandated. So we actually launched the polystyrene transition funds that helps small businesses with that ban, so that was one of it. And then for the Colorado Green Business Network, that is completely and totally free, and it actually allows, um, the businesses to get free technical support, be part of a community, and ask questions about policies like that, and receive a lot of, like, one-on-one attention, but it is absolutely free program.
Okay, thank you.
Jay Mel, how many businesses are impacted by the single-use plastic in Inglewood?
Yeah, that's a great question, so the single-use plastic bag really is for large retailers, things like Walmart, Target.
Yeah.
King Supers, no restaurant is impacted by that, the Colorado.
You have to have more than three locations, right?
But no restaurant, no matter what sector or.
Oh, really?
Is impacted by that for health reasons. Um, the styrofoam, polystyrene ban impacts every single restaurant, no matter how big or small you are.
Okay, but even the single-use bag, I think it's mandated if you're more than three busi- you own more than three businesses with the same name.
Around forty-two, forty-three, right?
Forty-two or forty-three businesses in Inglewood?
I thought so.
Roughly in forty areas, what we heard more.
Okay.
More, and they were able to use the rest of their stock, correct?
Yeah, so for styrofoam, um, they're able to extinguish their stock, um, throughout this year, they just can't find any ones. And, um, the same with the plastic bag, although most places that I've been into in Inglewood, I think have already extinguished them.
So I'm not hearing a significant objection to this one?
I think it's just.
Probably just a rewording.
It's the wording.
Little wording on this, let's leave it in?
And, yeah, just as a time check, Nick, it's two fifty.
Yep.
So I know we're supposed to end at three, um, are we okay staying a little bit later?
Just a little.
Yeah.
Sorry, dude.
It's based on.
In this case, I'm gonna do this then, we have no proposed status changes, we have no proposed status changes, we have some questions and comments.
Right.
Related to those, but those are in. This one right here, single comment to move right here, um, clean and contac- and again, here we are with clean and connected transportation. Does this need to go under our transportation header, does it stay where it's at under sustainability?
All right, that's, that's under transportation. Multi-modal.
Yeah, let's talk about multi-modal.
It's under under multi-modal and transportation.
We had to create the transportation area to utilize that area to its fullest capacity.
Let's try a vote on this then. Okay, thumbs up to move it to transportation. That's got it, the yeas have it, this is under transportation, the other two are in, again, natural, environment, energy are in.
Give me your pieces.
Okay.
Why?
This is the last of the major discussions, I'm gonna say water protection, no comments, no objections, nothing there. The last one is waste and recycling, we have three in the objection category, we're gonna do three minutes, and then we're gonna get to voting.
So part of my questions is the ways to increase recycling and composting efforts for who? I know that the city already, uh, Christine is at the Inglewood Rec Center, is doing composting for, for employees. So are we increasing the composting for employees or for everyone in the city? It's not clear on that.
And I'll weigh in, I, I, of course, I'm fine with keep, I'm sorry, uh, I'm fine keeping it in now. Part of it, part of the project is about single hauler, but obviously that's no longer in, but the city is looking at other ways to, uh, increase recycling, uh, the electronic waste thing we're doing, the composting thing we're doing. We're looking to private business to kind of help us get to this goal without the city actually, uh, capturing the, the run of it, so.
Okay.
And then provide it for citizens, or provide it for like our parks or?
Well, see, that, that's the next step, like, I, I personally would like to see the city look to increase waste recycling at our, or at our parks and our events. We're not doing that today, but I'm not, I'm not looking to have another conversation about single haulers, so I'm just thinking, like, we can, for, for the city itself, like, I would be happy to, like, to do more, but, yeah.
So would this also be included in what, uh, keep Inglewood Beautiful did, like the, you know, at the service center, we would take, um, hazardous waste? So is that included under this goal?
Yeah, well, we're doing hazardous waste now, Mel, you can kind of speak to it, but we, we, we do it due to the doorstep, they'll come to your house to pick up hazardous waste.
Yeah, so starting January first of this year, we're doing a new program, um, I will say that most calls hands down against residents are about how to dispose of household trash and waste, and they are not happy when they're told that they have to wait until September. So we started a new program, it's an at-your-door program, um, if someone has hazardous waste or electronics that they wanna get rid of, they go onto, um, the waste management website, fill out the form, and they come directly to their house. It increases, um, equity for those who are elderly or disabled to participate. And it's still twenty dollars, so at the event, it was twenty dollars for hazardous waste and extra twenty for TVs, it's a flat twenty for hazardous waste.
I utilized this service this last week, it was.
You did?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good.
I might pick up on, yeah, Friday, I could use yesterday.
So, um, will we still do it at the service center in September or no?
So no, now that we have that at-your-door service center after the event.
Okay, you did it, you made it through, thank you for all of the input, this is the last vote that we have here. Thumbs up to delete this goal. We got two, that doesn't, it carries, the goal stays in for now. We're gonna go ahead and put up there what your revised goals and outcome areas look like, the last step of today is to ask for your vote. So this is my chance to ask for your vote, we have some voting stickers here, and what I'd like for you to do is to take three stickers. What?
We had to change that.
Yeah, so we changed it a little bit.
Okay.
You weren't told.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm on the audible side.
We figured out the flags, we had a new area, um, so, yeah, so you'll each get fifty-six, uh, color-coded stickers.
Fifty-six?
Yeah, so fifty-six, but hold, hold on. It's taught, you get six per area, plus one to ring all the outcome areas against one another. So for each area, you'll have six, so our ask is that you would put three dots for your number one, two dots for your number two, and one dot for your number three. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Got it.
And so they're color-coded, so Liz is gonna come around and give you, uh, the colors, and then.
Why did it be fifty-four though, right? Shouldn't it be fifty-four?
Fifty-four, yeah.
And it's not, it's not really voting, correct? It's.
No.
It's prioritization, yeah, we're not voting, we're not voting. Be very clear about that, we're not voting yet.
Okay, so Rita's red.
It's an elite.
Steve is orange.
Yeah.
It's eleven more than three.
And it's purple.
How can you keep this?
And, oh, and there's a light pink too.
Because we got a different.
Daniel is lightened. Thank you so much.
Three, it's fifty-six.
No, it's fifty-four, it's next time.
Now all I have is pretty neat, so.
Yeah, you can just draw one.
Yep.
Don't ever gotta make the comment. What? Don't gotta make the comment, it's, he wanted, he brought up Reader's Digest. I was like, what is Reader's Digest?
That's what we wanted, but I don't think we got that now.
What, what is Reader, what is Reader's Digest? No, I know what it is, but I was gonna make that comment earlier.
Are you making?
Yeah, because we do get a, a frame of reference that is known in.
Or it will make me, all make me really old, like in Orange Crank.
I'm gonna spread these around the room, do you? Because it doesn't exist anymore, does it? Reader's Digest. It does? Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes, so these are.
Three is number one, two is what?
The goal of this is, go ahead, three votes for your. Yep, we're gonna do it, we're giving you one vote. Three for your item one, two for your item two, one for your item three.
And it's all on each one of them.
Yes. So all you need is one sticker for your top. And then you.
Okay, so three, three is your number one, three is the top.
Three dots for your number one, so your guts for your number two.
Okay, but I prioritize the outcome.
Yeah.
There's one page where you're gonna do that, or is that?
This one, right here.
Oh. All right, now I got it.
And so we'll do the same voting on the outcome.
Three for number one, two for number two, and one for number three.
Yeah, so the listeners are easier. We're talking about it as short-term, wait.
Yeah, just keep them like it's every set. I didn't hear anything else, like.
You didn't send me the information.
I did see a little touch coming in, so, it was in March yesterday, there was one toilet.
Are you going okay?
I feel like having a cocktail or something. Don't even start, it'll be so late. I, I make crack.
Tell somebody about that.
Uh, no.
I agree with that.
Maybe.
You need to hear it real well.
So I guess the start, the, um, sounds it down, do you wanna go in trial? They don't have it tomorrow.
Even if we had.
Well, he said he hopes that enough, he goes to the safety all week.
I put all my, my.
There's six here, wicked.